Good afternoon and welcome to the March 10, 2021 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence a call over our calendar, a copy of which can be found on the meeting webpage of the Board of Zoning Appeals on the town of Brookhaven website. As noticed, this is a virtual hearing conducted on the Zoom platform. Applicants and other interested parties may participate by utilizing the interactive Zoom hearing link found on our meeting webpage or by utilizing the address www.brokehavenny.gov/join. When attending, please be sure to identify yourself by name and case number so that we may be able to determine which application you wish to speak on. The Q and A and chat functions on the Zoom platform can be utilized. Should you have any questions? And those questions will be answered by our staff. Again, thank you for attending this virtual hearing. Applications before the board will consist of three parts: the presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant limited to those issues brought up by persons speaking in opposition. At the conclusion of each of the presentations, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the application today by a motion to grant or to deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place a matter on our decision calendar. Finally, we can hold the hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to grant the application, what this means in part is that the relief that you seek from the board has been granted, a grant that will issue from the Board of Appeals Office within seven to 10 business days. That grant that will be sent directly to the applicant, that is the document that you return to the building department with to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on our decision calendar, what this means is that your public hearing was held today and the record is now closed. Under the code, the board has 62 days to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a copy of the decision can do so by accessing it off of the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals, once that decision is filed with the town clerk. I want to acknowledge receipt of the notice documents for each of the applications pending today, I believe, except for case number seven, and will inquire with the applicant when we reach case number seven, and those have been made part of the record and our files. In the course of your presentation as an applicant, provide this board with any testimony you wish to be made part of the record for the board's consideration. Any exhibits previously provided to the Office of the Board of Appeals via drop box or email have been made part of the record if they were received in a timely manner. If you are not the applicant here today but someone wishing to speak on the applicant, on an application, we will promote you as soon as a participant at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation. Opposition testimony before the board will have the same opportunity to provide the board with testimony and exhibits for the board's consideration. We ask only where there's more than one neighbor or person speaking on an application that you do not repeat what someone before you have said, just please indicate to us that you agree with a prior point or testimony and then move on to issues not yet covered by prior speakers. In so doing, we can ensure that everyone wishing to speak will have that opportunity. I want to thank you for your attention and ask you to please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Good afternoon again and welcome to the March 10, 2021 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. May we have roll call.
Board members James Mazzarella.
Present.
Charles Lazaru.
Present.
Rick Cunha.
Present.
Ronald Lindsay.
Present.
Howard Berksen.
Present.
Deputy Chair James Wisdom.
President.
Chairman Paul DeChance.
Present, and as I understand it, there are two postponements from today's calendar. We'll take those motions down.
Case number two, in the name of Ruprage Realty LLC, and case number three, Michael LaRusso, both requesting March 24th.
Does the board have that motion?
Almost.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that, then we will commence this virtual hearing with case number one.
Karen and Mark Diebel, 113 Village Lane Satake, located on the north side of 3 Village Lane, 90 feet east of Satake Place, Satake. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for proposed reconstruction of sunroom.
Mr. Chair, I have Lou Gallo for the applicant.
Thank you.
I also have the applicant Karen Diebel as a bar and attendee.
You can promote Ms. Diebel, and we'll look for Mr. Gallo first. Mr. Gallo, we can see you if you can unmute yourself, that would be helpful.
Give me now.
We can. Mr. Gallo, very good to see you.
Good to see you.
Let's start with having you give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Let's start with your appearance for the record then.
Lou Gallo Expediting Incorporated, 218 Harrison Avenue, Miller Place, New York, 11764.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. What would you like to tell us about this application?
Okay, the story, gentlemen, regarding this case is all in the pictures. It asks Anthony to start scrolling my pictures. Okay, start from number, keep going back, and keep going, keep going. I want to start from the beginning. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, right there. Okay, we'll scroll up. This is 3 Village Lane in Satake, the home in question. Next picture. Okay, what you see here is the reconstructed sunroom in the back, all right? You can see it's very well screened with very tall plantings, and of course, this vinyl fence, you could hardly see the particular home next door because of this being so well screened. Next picture. Okay, what you see is the reconstructed, reconstructed sunroom, and you can see it's a concrete foundation, and you will see in the next set of pictures that the particular fascia of this particular reconstructed sunroom will have been changed. As you can see, this is what it looks like now in 2020. Notice that you will see in previous pictures that this has been somewhat changed. As you can see, this is squared off to the corner, all right? And from here to the property line, and the property line goes one foot beyond, that's six-foot stockade fence, is we're holding 11.4. Okay, next picture. Okay, this is it looking northward, and you can see a better idea of what this particular structure looks like. Again, I call your attention to the fact that there is a six-foot stockade fence as well as Alba Vita, okay? Well, spruce trees beyond that as well. Next picture. Now, this is what it looked like in 92, all right? It's a poor picture, but that's what it looks like. You can see the face has changed. Next picture. Yeah, that's good. All right, that's what it looks like then in 1992. All right, next picture. Okay, switch that around. Okay, again, turn it around, oh, the other way. Keep going, one more. All right, now, what you're looking at, this is taken in 1992. Notice the indentation here, and you can see also that it has been squared off since in 2020. This no longer exists, the fascia has changed, you've seen it already before. Notice it's really a sunroom on a concrete, on a deck foundation. From this wall to the property line, we were holding 12.5, and on October 28, 1992, this board, the zoning board of appeals, actually granted a variance for this particular sunroom. Next picture. That's looking east, this is looking west, you could see it's kind of a scattered side, all right? And you can see from the previous pictures that this is now all squared off, and next picture. Next picture, Anthony. Okay, there's a closer look at what the old foundation looked like. Next picture. Okay, and that's also in the backyard, it's a swimming pool, and next picture. Next picture. Okay, now, what I want to show you, just a quick review. So back in October 28, 1992, we were holding 20.5, which was a variance granted by the board. Presently, we are now asking for, as you can see from the survey, with a squared-off reconstructed sunroom in 2020, we are now holding 11.4. So what we did is quote-unquote "move" the sunroom a little closer to the property line, 1.1 feet. I'm showing you here, this is, they show you the character of the neighborhood. The next street west is Settle Cut Place. This is number six, Settle Cut Place. You can see there's a sunroom here. Next picture, please. And finally, obliquely down the block on Settle Cut Place, number three, Settle Cut Place also has a sunroom. So conclusively, we can say that the character of the neighborhood has been set. These two pictures are within the 500-foot radius, where simply, again, I repeat, moving the sunroom 1.1 feet so that we are now holding 11.4 instead of back in 92, 12.5, and we respectfully request that the board grant a relief.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Questions on the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berksen.
So, hiya, Lou.
How you doing?
So, just a real quick question, was the original sunroom built pursuant to a permit? Or not?
I don't have that information because the Diebels have hired a, an architect who's handling the permit. I'm just handling the variance.
No, I understand, but there was, the sunroom didn't have a variance, the old sunroom wasn't there pursuant to a variance, was it?
No.
Okay, fine. What is the, so you're going to be holding 11.4 feet on one side, why is the survey indicate highlighted distances on the other side of the house?
Because we are going for a variance for total side yard, so.
Okay.
The 11.4 and the 30, and I think it's 34.7 on this.
Okay, I understand, I, okay, fair enough. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, just to clarify, I will state from town records that that was a BZA grant in 1992 for 12.5-foot side yard before the, before the structure was modified. So there was, that did exist, and then it was modified with a different setback.
So looking at a foot reduction, approximately?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo, was there anything further?
That's it.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker on the application?
Mr. Chair, I believe I have a speaker on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a Sandra Krolik.
Hi, that's, I'm Sandra Krolik, I just unmuted.
All right, no, we can hear you now.
Okay, very good. I just have a question.
If you could just bear with me a moment, I was trying to find your audio. You do look like you're muted. Are you?
I just unmuted myself.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, I see, I see the applicant Karen Diebel, but ma'am, I'm looking for your video, just bear with me.
Oh, I have my, my video is off, do you need to see me?
Yes, please.
All right. I just put it back on, but I don't know if you can see me.
Yes, we can. Very good. Good afternoon, thank you for attending. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good, and may we start with your name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm Sandra Krolik. I'm the next property over where the, where the addition is facing, I'm number nine.
Are you a corner, the corner lot?
Yeah, the corner, number nine, 3 Village, front thing on Settle Cut. I just have a question, I, first of all, the attorney alluded to the screening, the shrubbery and whatever, that's mine, that's not theirs, and if it were not there, this sunroom would be quite close and quite visible to my backyard, and I just saw it going up and I thought it was very large, and obviously, there's nothing I'm going to ask to be done about it now, but I want to raise a question about the distance to the property line because the, the survey shows the property line going beyond the stockade fence, and that is not something I'm aware of, so.
I see your question, Ms. Krolik, we have before us, that was filed with us, a certified survey that was prepared by a surveyor. If there is any reason that you want to question it, that certainly would be something that you're entitled to by, I guess, retaining your own surveyor and having them survey the parcel, and that issue then would be a matter between you and your neighbor civil matter, not involving the town. I have no, no other reason than to follow what, what is shown to us as certified on this survey, and it does show in that area, not at the most rear portion of the stockade fence, but as it approaches this structure, it appears to be off of the property line. I will tell you that, the survey does show, you know, a slight distance, you can see the survey yourself, Anthony, if you could just bring that up a little bit better for us.
No, I can see it, and my survey, I will, I will dig out my survey because I bought this house in 2014. Mr. Diebel and I did have some discussion about the fence line. I did not put in that fence, but one that is perpendicular to that one, the one that faces the street, and he and I had a discussion, and I had to jog a piece of the fence to make, to adhere to what he said the property line was, so I'm a little confused about it. I will look at my survey, if I need to hire somebody to discuss it, I will. All right, it just makes it that much closer, though, to, to the property, in my mind. All right, I have no remedy here, I have no recourse, correct?
Well, thank you, I want to thank you for coming out to speak to the board concerning the application. You were here for the entire hearing, so you were aware that there was previously a sunroom structure with a BZA grant allowing for a 12.5-foot side yard, I believe it was, so this is a foot difference when they reconstructed, and that's the difference between the two. I do appreciate you coming out, if you would like, you can certainly request from us a copy of the survey that you're seeing, we'll be happy to accommodate you, okay?
That'd be wonderful, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this application?
Mr. Chair, I have no other speakers.
Thank you. Do we have anything in writing? All right, then, I understand from the review of the records that the applicant, I'm sorry, that HDAC is taking no position on the application. With that, I'll ask the board for a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the application submitted type two.
Seconded by Mr. Berksen, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number four, Thomas and Wendy Romanello. 46 Old Selden Stage Road, Selden Properties located on the west side of Old Selden Stage Road, 754 feet north of Hawkins Road, Selden. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool, height variance for proposed six-foot high fence, and existing six-foot high fence located in the front yard. Also, permission for existing shed located in the front yard not permitted.
Mr. Chair, I have a Diana Laspisa for the applicant. I also have the applicant Wendy Romanello.
Thank you, you can promote them both, we'll hear from Ms. Laspisa first. Then I can see, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
All right, but we're promoting the applicant, I'm assuming they're here to monitor, you'll, you'll let, or they'll let us know, otherwise, let me just ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your clear right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right, then, thank you, your appearance for the record.
Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, 2938 Hempstead Turnpike, Suite 212, Levittown, New York, 11756. Here on behalf of the property owner, Thomas and Wendy Romanello.
Thank you, and Ms. Laspisa, I want you to know the board is familiar with the application in that we are aware that it is a flag lot, and as a result of being configured that way, it would be the eastern property line would be considered the front yard by code. Is that correct?
Cool.
All right, so talk to us about what you hear.
We're proposing to install an in-ground swimming pool in the rear of the property, and we're requesting a rear yard setback of eight feet as opposed to the 15 feet. We're also requesting to install a six-foot fence, which would be located in the front yard, as you said, along the easterly property line, and maintaining the six-foot fence along the driveway, which is just a gate. The reason for the pool needing the eight-foot setback is they're hoping to be able to maintain the patio, so the closer that they bring it to the house, it, any closer wood damage, you know, they wouldn't be able to maintain the patio, but it isn't a regular-shaped pool, so it's really at its closest point is eight feet, and it does get further and further away. In regards to the fencing along the driveway, it doesn't hinder any traffic, you know, they're the only ones who go up and down the driveway, it's really just for the purpose that the children could be outside, ride their bike in the driveway, and they could close the gate, not have to worry about them venturing down into the street. Regarding the proposed six-foot fence on the survey that's along the easterly property line, if it wasn't a flag lot, this would be permitted because it's standard for it to line up, you know, next to the house, and the neighbor along that, that abuts them actually has, they have a fence there currently, so it really wouldn't affect any neighboring properties, they have spoken with their neighbors, and nobody expressed any concern. I don't know if the board has any questions?
Thank you, questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Yes, good afternoon, Diana.
Good afternoon.
So, the, the, let's start with the fence. The proposed stockade, is that your typical wooden stockade fence, is it vinyl, or what kind of fence is it in detail?
So, right now, it's stockade, I do have some photos of the property, if you wanted to see, right now, it's stockade, but it's actually the neighbor's fence right now, but they have to, by law, install their own fencing because you can't use somebody else's fence as a barrier for your pool. So it will be replaced, oh, well, no, sorry, not replaced, but they'll be installing a fence in front of it. I don't know that it's officially, if they've decided whether it's going to be stockade or PVC yet, I didn't get that information, I just know that it definitely will be six feet high, so it did require the variance.
I'm a bit confused, I guess, so, so what you're saying is where the proposed fence that runs from the corner of the house, right, and then back towards the shed?
Yes.
So that proposed fence is going in, not going to go in front of the neighbor's shed, in front of the neighbor's fence, or are you saying there's a proposed, there's a fence there already?
They already have a fence that divides their property and the neighboring property. I don't know if Anthony can let me share screen, I'll show you a picture that kind of aims towards the shed, so you could see that area, but.
Dana, your survey is showing us a six-foot chain link fence at the adjoining property owner's parcel. I think that Mr. Mazzarella was asking you specifically about the fencing in the front yard of the eastern property line, and we're only seeing stockade there. I believe that when you were answering the question, you were talking about the fence in the vicinity of the pool.
Well, I'm talking about the portion of the fence that needs the variance. You're not talking about the fence by the driveway, right?
No, I am referring.
Okay.
It comes off the corner of the house, and obviously, it's a proposed fence, but my question was, or I guess what your statement was, is that there's already a fence there and it belongs to the neighbors, and you're putting one in front of it or behind it? That's where I'm confused.
Yes, there already is a fence in that location, that's the neighbor's fence, which is stockade, which is why it's called out six-foot stockade, but that's not my client's fence, so my client will be installing his own fence, which will be, I'm saying in front of it, but it's going to be on his property, you know.
So, so there's going to be a fence and then another fence in a short distance?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't know if it's approximately a few feet away, is that accurate?
Well, the fence that's currently there now, I mean, he's not asking his neighbors to move any of their fences.
My question is, how far is the new fence going to be away from the existing fence?
I think it's going to butt right up to it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think it's going to butt right up to.
And they're both six feet high?
They both, yes, what's there now is six feet, and.
And the proposed is six feet?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is only, you know, just to be clear, I mean, if, if he could use, you know, if people could use a neighbor's fence as a barrier for their own pool, they probably would, in this case, you can, so.
I understand, okay, no, that clears that up, and, and then as it wraps around, I guess it's going to be stockade to your client's side and chain link to the other neighbor.
Um, he's.
As it wraps to the back, then it looks like six-foot chain link, and then your client is looking for six-foot stockade on the other side of, of the chain link.
Yes, I don't know if he's doing stockade or PVC, though, but he's definitely doing a solid fence.
Solid fence.
Okay.
Understood, okay, fine.
Also, we did forget to mention, as far as the shed, because we are also here for the shed in the front yard, it, the shed was there when they purchased the house in 2016, I did forget to mention that as well.
Okay, well, that would have been my next question, so thank you for providing that, and obviously, the shed looks like a reasonable size shed, and I'm assuming that the shed more or less holds yard equipment and/or pool equipment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to the pool, I see, I see what you're saying in that it's a regular shape, and I realize there needs to be some spacing, but, you know, are you saying that the contractor and/or in conjunction with your client, there's, there's no way at all, they could have gotten it a few feet, maybe further to that 19-foot distance over on the other side of the yard to grab a few more feet from behind?
You know.
To increase that eight foot, you know, maybe to 10?
The, over in that area of the yard is a swing set, so I think they were trying to kind of maintain a little bit of, you know, a little setback off of there for the children, to have like a little area to play and not have the yard, but they don't essentially want the kids not seen, you know, in that other side that abuts, which is the front yard, that abuts the neighbor that we were just talking about, their fence, I mean, anywhere in that area of the yard, they wouldn't be able to see the children from inside the house, so it's kind of important to have them, if they're outside playing, in an area that they can just look out the window from the kitchen or something and see, so that really is, is the purpose of, of it, and then just the way the patio is already set up.
Okay. All right, and we're not here for the six-foot stockade on the other side of the driveway, are we?
No, because that's, that, believe it or not, that's actually the neighbor's stockade fence, that's not theirs, but we are here for the six-foot metal fence that goes across the driveway. Do you see that?
Okay, the.
Kind of at the end of the pole on the flag, I should say.
It's not highlighted on the survey that we have, but it's under the word gate when you see the straight section that comes up from the driveway. Is that where you're talking?
Yes.
So, that short distance where it says 19.9, that 20-foot distance off the corner, is it, or am I?
No, I believe.
Oh, I see, I see where it says metal, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's, so it's more or less a gate?
Correct.
I see it, I see it, okay, and that's six foot, that's six foot in height as well, all right, and, so that about does it, right? We've addressed everything. I, can I just ask a quick question? I mean, there's a lot of fencing going on here, right, between your client, the neighbors existing, and has there been any talk or coordination with the neighbors at all?
They have spoken with the neighbors, the neighbors are aware of the project and what they're looking to do, but nobody had any questions or concerns, you know, they were excited for them.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzarella. Mrs. Spies, Mr. Mazzarella inquired as to whether or not the applicant considered that they could hold a greater side yard setback for, for that pool from eight feet to 10 feet. Could you tell us, did the applicant consider the alternatives to that, and what, what, if they did, what were they?
Again, the, the, really, the only issue with that is that that's kind of the area where the children play in the backyard, they have their swing set kind of set up in that back corner, so that's really the only reason why they were trying to shift it over, you know, over slightly, and it's. And it's really, it's just that the one point that it's eight feet. Majority of the pool will probably end up being ten feet, you know, when, when, I'll scale it out. But it's just that one corner, that one point, which is kind of the purpose of why they went with the free form too.
And what was the reason why it could not be closer to the patio?
Just they want to be able to maintain the patio. It is a nice patio, you know, very rarely do you have a nice patio before you do a pool. And they kind of were hoping.
I, I know that the pool is drawn in, but what is the distance that is being shown to us from the patio to the pool?
At its closest point is.
Mr. Chair, I have the applicant willing to speak, raising their hand.
All right, Mrs. Spies, so let me just take that answer from you, then we'll have the applicant sworn.
It's between, so scaling it out, it's between four or five feet.
All right, previously, you mentioned the term gate on the driveway, where another section of six-foot fences. I'd like to, for clarification purposes, I think with these going through the building department again, ask you to request an amendment to the application to include the word and gate with, when we're referencing the six-foot high fence. Could you, would you make that request, please?
Just to amend the application.
To include a six-foot gate.
Okay. Can you please amend the application?
Does the board have that motion? Motion made, seconded all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then, Mrs. Spies, we have your, the applicant here, your client. I was going to promote them and swear them in.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, I have Wendy Romanello.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, I'm getting a little bit of background noise.
I'm sorry, I'm in my car. Sorry about that.
Do you have us on Bluetooth?
Yes.
Right, that may be the problem.
Right, that may be the problem.
Okay, hold on. Is that better?
That is much better, thank you.
Okay, great, sorry.
Please, I'm going to ask you just please to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Let's start with your name, please, and your address.
My name is Wendy Romanello. I'm at forty-six Old Southern Stage Road, Selden, one-one-seventy-four.
Thank you. Ma'am, you, you have listened to the hearing thus far. Your representative has spoken in support of the request for variance for the pool and the fencing in the shed. What did you want to add to the discussion? And specifically, if you could, to the side yard request of eight feet for the pool?
So I was just going to speak in reference to, you know, the shape of the pool and why we, you know, decided to go with that. And the contractor suggested that we did want to save a little bit of property for the children to play. The backyard is very small. And it was already stated that our patio is, is there and we, we really didn't want to have to adjust it. I think the, a lot of this stuff I wanted to speak on was already answered. And what was, what was the other question?
It mostly pertained to the fencing and the side yard setback of the pool.
Okay, the fencing, it was explained, that's, that's my neighbor's. And we know we have to put our own fence in, in order to get a pool. So, yeah, it would just about right up next to our neighbor's fence. We've spoken to every neighbor surrounding our property. Nobody seemed to have an issue with it, so.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further from board members? Mr. Vega, do we have any other speakers? Is there anyone? All right. Before giving the matter to the board for a motion, Mrs. Spies, I just want to point something out to you. Your survey shows us an eight-foot side yard setback for the pool. And it was drawn in, but someone drew it not from the property line, but from the fence that exists. Obviously, we don't want the pool company measuring from the fence because you'll be back here and we're going to look at it that much harder when there's a prior grant, if there, if there is a prior grant for eight feet and it turns out that it's six feet because someone accidentally measured from the fence because they looked at the survey. So I just want you to counsel your client on that and make sure that the measurement is from the property line and not from the fence as shown on the survey.
Yeah, I actually drew it on. If you look, there's a little line kind of going through the six. That's to show that.
That was to tell us to stop looking at the rest of the line?
Yeah, so, but I won't do that anymore then.
All right, thank you. I, I see that now, all right. Then, having said that, I'll ask the board if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to grant the application as submitted type two.
Motion is to grant as a type-two action by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? And I'm sorry, let me clarify for the record. As amended to include the six-foot metal gate, motion again by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number five, Albert and Sheila, East Care of Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the east side of Robin Hood Lane, two hundred and eight feet south of Cinderella Lane, East of Target. Applicant requests rear yard and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one-story residence addition, rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition, and side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Malguanera, I can see you, are you able to hear us?
I can.
Very good. Let's start with getting you sworn, please.
You swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, your, your appearance and your presentation.
Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent. All right, so we have here a couple of things. The existing addition, you know, falls in line with the neighborhood. It's been there for ten-plus years, has no adverse effects. The shed is at, you know, has been there for about the same amount of time and it acts as a borderline fence line for the, the side yard. The, the big, the big proposal here is the post addition, which my client needs unfortunately due to his wife having cancer and she is not well. So they need this addition for her and for her caregivers and her medical equipment that is very substantial. And that is the reasoning for the addition that is needed. There is also a row of trees bordering the neighbor. So, you know, the neighbor won't have any issues. My client did knock on every door in the, you know, surrounding neighborhood, asking if anyone had any issues with, with what he is requesting here. And no one had any. So I don't think anyone had an issue with what he's proposing. If the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. Mr. Vega, can we pull up the survey and just open it up for the proposed one-story addition on the south side of the house for the board members? There you go, okay, we can just leave it there. Questions on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom?
So they're going to be holding a six-point, six-point-five-inch setback from that fence line right there?
Correct.
Is that common in the neighborhood?
There are similar side yards across the street in, in various locations.
And what is this, the proposed addition going to be used as?
It's unfortunately for his wife's care. She needs a caregiver and has a lot of medical equipment. So they're basically retrofitting the house to, to accommodate her. And it's a one-story addition, not two. And it's the, it's the best way for her.
And, and there's an addition on the, I should, is that the rear of the house?
Correct, and this falls in line with that.
So it, it comes right, it comes together on this, from the side of the house to the rear of the house?
Oh, there's a, there's a, there is a little gap, but it is in line.
Okay. And are you going to cut back that deck because that's what it says?
Yes, I believe so. Well, the deck's going to fall in, in that, in that footprint. The deck on the back, yeah, yeah.
On the back. So, and we're talking about the frame shed also. So there's, it's holding a one foot from the property line on, on the north side?
Yeah, if you want to pull up, yeah. It's a small shed. It acts, you know, as, as a borderline, you know, barrier. But as far as lawn equipment and whatnot.
Can we see the area on this? Okay, thank you. So. Okay, so that will come, that'll come to the south. And there is, there are. There are things in the yard over there also, correct?
Correct, and as you can see from Ariel, the neighbor on, on three, has similar shed situation.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
And you're not asking for anything else. The in-ground pool has been.
Yes, it's legal.
Many years.
Yes.
I really don't have anything further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have any speakers on this application?
Mr. Chair, I have no speakers.
No, last the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Case number six, Fritz Solberg, Care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the east side of Apricot Road, eighty-six feet south of Locust Drive, Rocky Point. Applicant requests height variance for existing six-foot high fence located in the front yard. Permission for two rows of existing two-and-a-half-foot-high retaining walls ranging from one foot to two foot apart from each other, five foot minimum permitted.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you, welcome back, Mr. Malguanera. Let's have your appearance for this application.
Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. The, the board is familiar with the, the application and the survey. We see there's a section of six-foot fence on one, on the far side of the driveway. And then it appears to enclose a portion of the, the parcel because of the houses all the way on one side. Talk to us specifically, though, about the, the retention walls, the, the rows of retention walls.
Right, so the, the wa, the walls are, are bordering the, the neighboring house. And the neighbor house is raised above him. So they, they're, you know, they probably have been there forever. They have to be, otherwise the neighbor would be in his yard. But this being said, Chairman, I like to, I need to postpone this hearing because there was, there was something that needed to be added to it. So if we can, if we could possibly postpone it, the, the soonest available, that would be, you know.
How is April fourteenth?
Okay.
Does that work? That would be, yeah, that would be the next minor. So that, does, does the board have a motion to hold over until April fourteen?
So, Mr. Chair? I just sorry. To recognize that, that's more than thirty days.
No, it has to be re-advertized, though, so it doesn't matter.
Mr. Malguanera, if that's, it's still acceptable, does the board have that motion?
Yep. Yes, so.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number seven, Anthony and Maribel Imparto, sixty Lakeview Drive, Patchogue. Properties located on the southwest corner, Putnam Drive and Lakeview Drive, Patchogue. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I don't have an representative or an applicant for this. I have someone raising their hand, but it's not the name of the applicant or the representative.
Why don't we promote the person raising your hand and we'll inquire with them.
Swim King Pools is their representative?
Is it the, the box entitled Holdover, Andrew?
That wouldn't be.
Oh, then Nicole Shear, is that the one?
Correct.
All right, so the person that was just promoted to this hearing, can you unmute yourself and place your video on if you, and let us know whether or not you wish to present this application or speak to it? We don't see that you're unmuting or putting your audio on. So I'm not, I'm going to just hold this. For the record, I'll note that we do not have noticed proofs for this application, nor an applicant's representative. But at this point, I won't do anything until we know more. I'll ask to move on to case number eight and we will try to determine what the issue is with seven as we go. All right.
Case number eight, Houdel Corp., Care of Christine Nicole, eighteen Railroad Avenue, Santa Maria Riches. Properties located on the north side of Northern Boulevard, five hundred and thirty-eight feet east of William Floyd Parkway, Shirley. Applicant requests lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, minimum and total side yard variances for proposed one-family dwelling on a fifty-foot lot.
Mr. Chair, I have Kristen Cole for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, we see that you've been promoted. You'll need to put your audio and video on, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, and we can see you also. Very good to see you. Let's start with you getting, getting you sworn, please.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, your appearance for the record, thank you.
Christine Nicole, with offices at eighteen Railroad Avenue, Santa Maria Riches.
Thank you, we have our planner with us today. He will testify us to his findings with regard to this application. Let's have him sworn first.
Of course.
Raise your, raise your hand, Chris. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do. Properties located on the north side of Northern Boulevard, five hundred and thirty-eight feet east of William Floyd Parkway and the Hamlet of Shirley. And the applicant proposes to erect a two-story dwelling on the eight thousand square foot parcel with access intended via Northern Boulevard. Properties located in the A-one district, requiring a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. And the lot does not conform to the A-one lot area requirement. And it is noted that the applicant acquired the subject parcel in 2020. The neighborhood is mixed with commercial, municipal, and residential use with a total of thirty-eight improved residential lots within the five-hundred-foot radius and eighteen percent or seven lots having both area and frontage conformance with the application. And the endeavor does not appear to conform to the surrounding development pattern. Of the seven lots enjoying conformance, staff found none, which were approved by board action with the underlying zoning being A-one residence. Staff notes lot fifty-four on the radius map was new construction having built, been built in nineteen ninety-two and having benefited from a special permit approval from the Board of Appeals. Thatcher, case number thirty-one of July ten, nineteen ninety-one. A special permit was required because the underlying zoning for this parcel was J-two business. The proposed dwelling is modest in size and conforms to the recommended dwelling specifications for fifty-foot-wide lots on the first floor, which provides for one thousand square feet. No calculations were provided for the second floor and same is recommended to be confirmed by the applicant's representative. Further, a nine-foot side yard and twenty-foot total yard is provided also in accordance with the fifty-foot specifications. The survey provided with the subject application reveals two easements, one on the northern property line utilized in conjunction with the Long Island Power Authority with utility poles on the subject parcel and with same also depicted on the filed map circa nineteen forty-eight. Second is a ten-foot slope easement, which was not revealed on the file. Second is a ten-foot slope easement, which was not revealed on the file map, and an inquiry to the applicant's representative is recommended as to the reason for this easement. As per sequel, the application is a type-two action, and should the board look favorably, standard residential mitigation is recommended.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner, Mr. Cole, how did you wish to respond?
Thank you. The property is located in Shirley, it's fifty by one sixty, eight thousand square feet, it has been single and separate since one twenty-six nineteen fifty-five, where the date to go back to under seventeen eleven C is four eighteen sixty-four. We're proposing to build a single-family dwelling using a small lot ordinance setbacks and square footage. There'll be nine hundred and fifty-two on the first floor and five hundred on the second floor. The lot is located next to the Shirley train station and has a utility easement in the rear, it also has a ten-foot slope easement on the west property line. The easement exists in case it is necessary to regrade abutting lawns, blending with the new levels of regraded streets, obviously, there's a parking lot next door, so the chance of that happening is unlikely. And the parking lot, of course, is for the train station. Case number thirty-one, of which Chris Reed mentioned of July tenth nineteen ninety-one, was a special to permit to build a house in J-two. That lot was fifty by a hundred. There is only one residential vacant lot within five hundred feet, and it is forty-four by two hundred. There are seventeen fifty-foot lots or smaller with variable depths in the area, which gives us forty-five percent in frontage. If this was a single and separate sixty-by-one-hundred-foot lot, which is smaller in area, I would not need a variance. My client purchased this lot in two thousand and eighteen, he told me he had spoken to some neighbors about this, about his intentions, they were happy that this lot was being improved because it's used as a dump site and a hangout for vagrants. I don't think that allowing us to build on this parcel, not, I don't think allowing us to build this parcel will change the character of the neighborhood. The use is mixed with commercial and residential construction, the lot has been single and separate for sixty-six years, who have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Cole, just going through the, the testimony we just heard from Mr. Reed, your, your calculations of conformity, not as to area, but as frontage seem to differ significantly, tell us why that, that is.
Well, because he's counting lots that are exactly the size of mine, I'm sure.
Well, that would be with area, but I'm talking about lot frontage.
Well, frontage, there are, there are that many lots that have fifty foot, but they're longer, they're fifty by two hundred.
Well, that would be an area calculation, the frontage calculation would look at only the width of the lot, the frontage.
So. Well, I counted seventeen fifty-foot lots, that's what I counted on the radius, I'm seventeen fifty-foot lots. And I did not count the ones that the town owns that they purchased in order for the train station. So I believe Chris was counting both lot area and lot frontage. And most of them, and again, only on Northern Boulevard, if you look at your aerial, only on Northern Boulevard are the lots that deep, one hundred and sixty feet deep, when you go on the street over one, they become two hundred feet deep. So they're all different, except for this one specific area, and if you look down on Austin Circle and stuff like that, they're very, they're very small in lot area. Okay, and that's where I got some of my, you know, my, my frontages, there's even forty, forty and forty-four foot lots in that particular area. So I don't think it's out of character for the neighborhood, yes, it doesn't have conformity in lot area, but then again, everything is different here, it's a, it's a mixed bag. So we feel that if this were to be granted, that it's not out of character for the neighborhood. Across the street is a store, a supermarket of some sort. There is commercial in that particular area, right across the street on Northern Boulevard, there's a, there's a store. If you look at the aerial, you can see it, and like I said, it's, it's, it's a mixed bag, it's a mixed bag of zone, so.
From Mr. Reed's testimony, we understand the applicant acquired the parcel in twenty twenty, you've just indicated it could have been two thousand and eighteen.
It is two thousand and eighteen.
Irrespective, certainly the A-one classification was in place on that parcel at the time of the purchase, this is a, this is not a resident residential homeowner wishing to purchase, this is a corporation wishing to develop the parcel, is that what we're dealing with?
Yes.
Certainly, certainly an entity that should have known what the zoning classification was at the time of purchase.
Yes.
Alright, when we compare what is being requested to the A-one classification, we both know, and it's not uncommon for the, for the variances to be significant because of the upzoning to A-one, and we, we see that in this case also. But as we look at this application, and we, we compare it to what's on the ground, at least we can agree as to lot area, you've, you've conceded that we don't have significant conformity, we have, we're, we're calculating eighteen percent, I think that you're, you're conceding that also. If we don't have comparison to meeting the, the requirements of the code, and it's not comparing well to what's on the ground, what basis does the board have to grant the application?
Well, you'd granted a case in the area nineteen ninety-one, and then that was on a smaller lot, it was a fifty-by-a-hundred-foot lot. And even though it was J-two, even though it was J-two, a variance was granted on that lot, and it, and it was granted because it fits in the neighborhood.
In terms of the lots that, that are zoned A-one, I'm sorry, in terms of the other fifty-foot lots in the area that were, you were using to calculate conformity, do you know what zoning classification they were built under?
The homes that are there now?
Yes, we, 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 at least you can agree that they weren't built under A-one.
No.
Alright, and they weren't built in accordance with any action taken by this board?
Not that I know of.
Or just what, what you're pointing to is that there was a J-two parcel, and under the code, the board granted a special permit for, but that was not an A-one, the zone class, a parcel.
No, but it was, that area was zoned A-one at the time, but that was granted, that may have been a J-two, but you know, the area was zoned A-one, I just want to point that out, that's all.
And we're counting that lot when we're, when we're, we're totaling the eighteen percent conformity?
Yeah, seventeen, yes.
Seventeen percent of the ground, in, in terms of the, the easements that were mentioned, you did mention the slope easement, I'll be honest with you, I've never heard that term before, could you, are you able to clarify any, any further for the board, what that is?
Well, I called the survey, you know, I called the survey to discuss it with him, and I also called the planning department, and they described it to me, they said that, there was a time they used to do that, when there was going to be a street put next to the parcel, or in this case, it's something commercial, and they allowed for, if there's any difference in grade from one property to the other, that.
Okay, in this instance, in what, what turned out here is that there's a train station parking lot next door
Correct.
on that side of the parcel.
Yes, sir.
And that extends then from the parcel all the way.
All the parcels back up to, to the train, you know, all of the ones on Northern Boulevard, and that's kind of, they all have utility poles in their backyards, and they will back up to the train station, this, this lot happens to have a separate easement for that, and no, none of the other, and all of the lots also have the twenty-five-foot service right away.
You mentioned during your testimony about a vacant lot. Is it one hundred by? A one hundred foot lot, is it number ten, the radius that you were referencing?
Hold on a second.
Maybe we can, can we have the aerial pulled up? Alright, so, so after.
It is number fifty-five. The one that I said that is the only one left residential, the only vacant residential lot left is number fifty-five, and that's forty-four by two hundred.
Is that, is that the, is fifty-five the address or the radius map number?
No, the radius map number.
Alright, and tell us, if it's fifty-five, on what roadway?
Oh, it's on Ormond Place.
Ormond Place.
It's the last one where the circle is, where the circle is at the top, okay, it's, it's the last one.
Very good, and so that's north of Mastic, on the north side of Mastic Boulevard East.
Yes, it is. As I look at a lot of those lots that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
As I look at the radius, so I see other vacant parcels, I'm looking at.
They're commercials, sir, I went through the whole radius map and picked out, there's commercial vacant land as one, two. Like I said, there's a lot of commercial, three, four, five, so there's, those are commercial lots.
They're commercial lots, and the, the size of them are what?
Well, they vary.
But are they, are they sitting?
Oh, I know, one of them is point oh-nine, you know.
Give us the radius numbers, so, and we have the aerial up, so we can look at them.
Okay, it'll be forty on the radio, it's forty on the radius map. Is that what you want me to give you, the number I want to give you?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm interested in this, if they are similar-sized lots, and they may, while they might be zone commercial, if they're sitting among residential parcels.
Well, that's number forty.
Potentially, they could potentially, this application, if granted, could potentially cause precedent for development of one or more of them, and I'm interested in their size and where they're located.
It's, that one is point oh-nine, and it's number forty, and on the radius map. I know that, I don't know why the radius map doesn't have the numbers in any kind of order, it makes it difficult.
The radius maps don't usually do that, I agree with you, it does make it difficult.
But I mean, it makes it difficult to look for stuff, because they're.
Alright, so forty is on Austin, forty is on Austin Circle, we see that.
Okay.
And it sits between two residential uses.
And.
So while I have a forty-foot frontage, potentially this application could be precedent.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I, but you're saying there's several others, and also.
Yes, they are, there are, there is also number seventeen and sixteen on your radius map, and that is commercial vacant land, and that's smaller than mine, it's point fourteen and point fifteen. And where are they? They must be on Surrey Circle, because it's Surrey Court. Seventeen, yes, there's eighteen, I see. It's, it's near Northern Boulevard, it's just below Northern Boulevard, do you see eighteen?
Yes, I do see eighteen. Again, those are J-six and eighteen, both J-two parcels.
Yeah. This, let's see, what other lot is there, there's a commercial lot at sixteen, that's a big a lot, that is a bigger lot, sixteen.
Alright, I, I just, I wanted to inquire, and that, I think that we've done enough with it, was there anything further you wanted to add?
No.
Be in support of the application, is there anything from the, further from the board on this application?
Mr. Chair, I, I'd just like to elaborate one more time on the conformance. Again, my calculations were based upon improved residential lots, and they were calculated based upon fifty feet in width. Mr. Cole may have counted, and they are in fact multiple improved fifty-four-foot-wide lots, but I didn't count those because they weren't fifty, so I think for those reasons the discrepancy in the numbers, which are significant.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Do we have a speaker?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any speakers.
Anything, alright, then, seeing that we, we have nothing further on the application, I'm going to ask for a motion to close and hold.
Second.
Made by the chair, seconded by Mr. Burks, and all in favor? Any opposed motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Case number nine, Edwin Delacruz, six seventy-eight Union Avenue, Holtsville, properties located on the south side of Union Avenue, one hundred and seventy-nine feet west of Washington Avenue, Holtsville. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing in-ground swimming pool, also rear yard variance for existing wood deck around pool.
Mr. Chair, I have a Timothy Coughlin for the applicant.
Thank you, can I just ask all board members or participants to this meeting to mute yourself when not speaking, we have a lot of background noise.
I also have the applicant, Mr. Delacruz.
Thank you, we'll take the applicant's representative first. And I'm not seeing anybody. Anthony, who did you say was the applicant's representative?
Timothy Coughlin.
Thank you. Alright, I see them. Mr. Coughlin, we do see that you're being promoted, I will need audio and video, please. Very good, we can see you, are you able to hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you, for some reason, it bumped me off prior to, for, prior to this meeting, I don't know why, I was listening to the whole time, so.
I'm glad we got you back, thank you for doing that so quickly, I know that we have the applicant here, your client, but we'll hear from you first, let me just start by getting you sworn, please.
Sure.
I swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, talk about the truth.
I do.
And your appearance for the record, please, sir.
I am the agent, my name is Timothy Clowen, C-L-O-U-G-H-E-N, I live at three Manaview Way in Manorville, one one nine four nine.
Thank you, Mr. Clowen, you are here seeking variances concerning, looks like a pool and a pool deck setback, what would you like to tell us?
The pool was permitted, and it was built, but unfortunately, I guess the pool installer did not accommodate enough for the fifteen-yard setback, so instead of fifteen feet, we have fourteen point four feet, based on the, the updated survey, so we're asking for a relaxation in that. Also, there was a wooden deck platform around the whole perimeter. The entire perimeter, the entire deck is less than two feet in height, it's between eleven inches to one foot six around the perimeter, the planters are a little bit higher, but the only issue is in the, the rear, where you could see that is a four-foot-ten. There is a walk-around deck in order to, I guess, access the pool from all sides. The owner built it without a permit, and we're asking for a relaxation to maintain the existing rear portion of the deck.
Thank you, Mr. Clowen, Mr. Vega, can we pull up the area of the survey of with regard to the structures where variance is assault, which is the pool and the pool deck, please? Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha?
Good afternoon, Mr. Clowen, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Okay, let's, first, let's go to the pool, the pool was, we're only looking at approximately, what, eight inches at the most?
Yes.
But it's, so it was actually built on an angle, I guess, I guess they didn't have a laser to square off the pool, is that correct?
I, I guess, I'm not really sure, you know, back then, they might even just gone off the fence line, that's my guess, so, you know, sometimes they don't, you know, some pool people don't hire surveyors to get exact, you know, squared off dimensions, and they kind of, I think they probably just guesstimated.
And your, your deck that you're asking, okay, so the, the pool is eight inches that we're looking for. The deck itself, however, you're looking almost ten feet on one side, is that correct?
Yes, where the angled is, because that is the side where there is a, an existing slide where you see the gravel. The owner actually built it this way.
Okay, and you, you had told us that the deck was actually between eleven inches and two feet in height. On, is it all the way around, or is that, is the property sloped in order to accommodate, in order to level it, that's why the deck was built that way?
It is, the, the property is actually level, I actually did the survey on the deck and did the drawings for it, so that's why I know that it's in the front, it's about eleven, and on the sides, it goes from one foot four to about one foot six in the rear.
Okay, so the property basically drops a little bit towards the rear, not much. Okay, and how long has it been there, the deck and the pool?
The deck has been there for probably, when the pool was installed, I think the pool was, I've got the application, but it's over twenty years.
Over twenty years, okay, are there other pools in the area in similar locations on other houses?
I honestly haven't looked in the area.
A couple in the aerial, actually. Actually behind you as well, except not as close, it looks like, or actually, it might be closer, the lines might be off on the aerial here in front of us. Okay, and you said twenty years, it was like this, and so the pool did have a permit, but the deck did not, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Also, I also submitted photos, I don't know if you, if you received those, it was like eleven by seven, eleven by eight and a half by eleven photos of what it looks like.
I will, I will tell you that they are part of the file and part of the record, we do not have them to.
To display.
To display.
Okay.
Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, is, is there anything further? Thank you. Is, is there anything further from anyone, any other board members? Mr. Clowen, I, I, we do have the applicant themselves.
Yes, Mr. Dela Cruz.
Are you, are the understanding that he or she wanted to, just to observe? Or should we bring them up? I think we should bring them up since they're here.
You, you can, sure, absolutely. If he, he might have some questions or he might be able to answer. He is actually the new owner. He actually purchased the property, Mr. Dela Cruz.
Thank you. Mr. Vega, do we still have Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm promoting him right now.
Thank you. We do see him being promoted.
So while we wait, Mr. Chair, just have one more question from Mr. Clowen.
Yes, of course.
You just said that the, this is a new purchaser and that the original owner is the one who all built all of this.
Yes, that is correct. And he was in the process of, he was the one who did the original, we, we did the drawings. And unfortunately, based on the time and the purchase, Mr. Dela Cruz had to take over the variance process. But we did put the paperwork back way around Thanksgiving time. And unfortunately, everything took up until now to, so he, he needed to purchase the property. So Mr. Dela Cruz is now the new owner.
So Mr. Dela Cruz basically had to close in order to.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe he, he, or he purchased it and they needed to close and Mr. Liberty was the original owner who hired me. And I'm basically representing both of them right now.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Dela Cruz. I, I do see that you've been promoted. You've unmuted yourself. We don't have video yet. Are you able to put your video on, sir?
One second.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you see me now?
I, I do have, no, we can't. We do have, certainly we have, we can hear you, but your video is off.
I'm trying to turn it on, but.
Let, let me ask you a simple question, sir. Did you wish to add anything to this hearing? Because if you're here to observe, I don't need to bring you, fully promote you.
Sir, I was, I'm just here to observe.
All right. Thank you very much for attending. Mr. Clowen, was there anything further you wanted to add?
Yeah, there was just one question with this particular application. When they did the denial, they just mentioned that the deck was the rear setback. Looking at this thing, because it is an accessory structure, I just want to make sure that the twelve foot four that's on the left-hand side is adequate and that we don't need to do anything further with that.
I'm looking for the twelve foot four. I'm not sure what you're.
Twelve foot four and a half to the left where it says north right there. See, there's a fifteen foot line setback. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that that's not going to be an issue.
The twelve four and a half is for.
For, for the deck. That's the corner of the deck. Yeah, that's.
When it, when it comes to the deck, you're asking for a rear yard variance. You have not asked for a side yard variance.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Did I need to ask? Because I did, when, when I went for it, I did question it and they said that the usually it is a accessory structure, which only required ten feet. I just want to make sure that is correct.
Well, we're checking the building department denial now to determine, to confirm that their denial was for rear yard only.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if I pull it up.
And what about the pool deck? All right, so your only denial was from the building department was for four point ten foot rear yard. You've made a request for that variance. It was properly noticed and that is all that's before the board. So you, you'll return with the, once you've, once you've reached this, if the building department ultimately determines that they missed the twelve foot or you'll require further relief, you'll have to come back for it.
I see.
Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
Case number ten, Matthew and Tina Nicoletti Filiberto, eight Wyndham Lane, Lake Ronconkoma, located on the west side of Wyndham Lane, ninety-five feet south of Sutton Place, Lake Ronconkoma. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for existing nine point two foot by sixteen point three foot deck with steps, rear yard and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Moji for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, recuse.
The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's recuse from the application. Ms. Moji, we can see you. Are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Let's start with getting you sworn, please.
Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Ms. Moji. Let's start with your appearance for the record and your presentation.
Great. Diane Moji, DNI Expediting Services, offices located at seven seven nine Horse Block Road in Farmingville. The subject premises is located on Wyndham Lane in Ronconkoma. The property is located in a C residential zone. There is a single-family dwelling located on the property. We are before the board today seeking permission for variance for a proposed in-ground swimming pool that would be located eight feet from the side and the rear property line. The unique part about this application is, is that there was a previous in-ground swimming pool previous, prior to the current owners having, purchasing this house, which was demolished and filled in, in, in nineteen ninety-three. And there was a demolition permit to fill in that prior, that prior swimming pool. It was located approximately in the same spot. When I look at the aerials, it looks like it was much closer to the house, like almost touching the corner of the house. You would have to go back on Suffolk County GIs to the nineteen eighty-four aerial to see it, obviously because it was demolished in nineteen ninety-three. So the applicant is seeking permission to construct this in-ground swimming pool at eight feet from the side and rear property line. You can see that off the back corner of the house, it's very close. And the corner there would be approximately five feet from the swimming pool. If you go to the aerials, you'll see that the surrounding area, there are several other homes that have swimming pools that are in close proximity to the property lines. One being directly behind them at nine Wyndham Lane. You have several others, one being at one fifty-three Union Avenue, one fifty-one Union Avenue and one forty-nine Union Avenue, just to mention a few. I would suggest that this area being a C zoning is a much smaller zoning than we're used to and things are much more closer. So I would suggest that the granting of this variance would not create any detriment to the surrounding area, nor would it impair the values thereof.
Thank you, Ms. Moji. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I believe it should be Mr. Lindsay.
Yes, Mr. Chair. How are you?
Very well. And yourself?
Very well. Um, let's, let's start with the front deck. That is the front deck, right? Correct.
Yes, the front deck. I'm sorry, I failed to talk about the front deck. There is a front deck that requires a twenty-two foot front yard setback and that would not be out of characters to the surrounding area. In a C zoning with thirty foot front yard is the required.
Okay, okay, I'm a little familiar with the neighborhood. I, a lot of houses over there with decks. I understand that.
Absolutely.
They're going to move the fire pit to conform?
Yes.
Where are they going to put the fire pit?
I'm not sure if they're just going to eliminate it or move it in a location that's acceptable. It needs to be twenty-five feet off the house for fire code.
Okay, okay. That'll come with the inspections, I'm sure.
Right, that would be marked on the application and they would have to verify, the building inspector would have to verify that at the time of inspection.
Okay, so let's go to the pool now. Was the old, the same exact spot as this pool?
Yeah, it, it's in the same location. I don't have a final survey from the pool because I don't know if the pool had actually ever been a certificate of occupancy on it. Hold on a second. But it was in the same location. So now on the permit, it does say that they met the setbacks, but I don't know how that could have been because there isn't enough room.
I see. I have that on mine, too.
Right.
Do you know how far it's going to be away from the house?
Five feet.
Five feet. Is that adequate?
Five feet is adequate, as I understand.
From the company, okay. Um, is this a, does this house have a slab or a basement, like for undermining of the pool being too close?
I believe, I, I don't want to answer without. Just give me a moment.
Am I questioning, correct?
I, I will say that the survey indicates an egress window.
There is, there is a basement.
And so that's basically the only place they can put that pool.
Yeah, I, it's, it's really a, a tight lot. It did previously have the pool. The, the applicants do have three children, ages five, eleven and fourteen. If they try to squeeze it right behind the house, that becomes problematic with being able to have at least a little bit of yard space. I would suggest though, as you look at the aerial of the surrounding area, you'll see that, you know, today especially with COVID, everybody has a pool. There are a lot of in-ground pools that are tucked into corners and trying to utilize their property as best possible in the surrounding area. So using your map, you, you have number twenty-nine, you have number thirty-one, you have one fifty-three. And I saw another one that was really close. I.
Yeah.
Put on my aerial. So there, there is a good number of swimming pools and like I said, you know, when people are stuck home with their kids, especially during the summer, the swimming pool can be very handy.
And I'm on Google Earth right now. I see there's pools everywhere.
Right, everybody's got a pool.
I see them everywhere. Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? If there's nothing else, sell us the board for a motion.
Sure, I'd like to grant the application type two as presented.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair will, the record will reflect the chair abstains. Motion carries five in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number eleven, Gerard Ovira, nine twenty-one North Country Road to Torkit. Properties located on the north side of North Country Road, four hundred and sixty-eight feet east of Thompson Hay Path to Torkit. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed natural gas fire generator located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Arlene Spence for the applicant.
Thank you. Miss Spence, I see that you've been promoted. We'll need you to put your video and audio on, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, now I'll work on the video.
Work on that, that's it.
Oh, I did it. Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for attending. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn, please.
Okay.
You solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
I do.
Very good. Let's start with your name and address, please.
Arlene Spence, nine twenty-five North Country Roads to Torkit, New York, one one seven three three.
Thank you. Miss Spence, you were here for a variance, for permission to place a natural gas fire generator in a side yard. It looks like the west side of the dwelling. Talk to us about the application, please.
Yeah, he wanted to put that over there and he's twelve feet short. I do live on the west side on that house. I was doing a paperwork to help him. There was no other place to put it and that works if he can get the variance for the twelve, twelve feet.
All right, so let me just clarify for the record then. You are not the applicant, but applicant's representative today?
Correct.
And you asked, actually happened to be the neighboring property owner? Or you live in the house next door?
Yes, I do.
And from your standpoint, you have no objection to the location?
Absolutely not.
All right. Questions from the board on the application?
Who's working here, me or you, Rick?
I think it's Mr. Lazaru.
Okay. You, I just wanted to make the, the one clarification. This is a natural gas fired. Is that right?
Yes.
And it's, it is not, this is, it's not a propane, so there wouldn't be any propane storage on the site.
Correct.
Okay, so I don't think I have any, any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Lazaru. Is there anything further from the board? If there's no further comment, tell us aboard for a motion.
Grant the application type two as presented.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I ask the board for a motion to, for a brief recess, fifteen minutes, please? Motion and second have been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we're waiting. Fuck, no, we have Mr. Cunha. We have everyone. Does one have a motion to resume the hearing?
No move.
Motion and second have been made, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We can resume the hearing with case number twelve.
Sixteen Satcham Court LLC, sixteen West Satcham Court, Farmingville. Properties located on the west side of Satcham Court, eight hundred and ninety-five feet north of Granny Road, Farmingville. Applicant requests height variance for two existing twenty-foot-high light slash camera poles. Also, permission for said poles located in the front yard not permitted.
Mr. Vega, can we get the survey up, please?
The chair, I have Roxan Trelle for the app.
Thank you.
I also have two speakers. One of them doesn't have a last name. I don't know if he is the applicant.
All right, maybe while we're speaking to the representative, you can inquire through the chat or Q and A function in that regard. Can you just pull up the surveys so the board can see it, please? All right, thank you. So we have applicant's representative, I believe. Roxanne, yes, I see you. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, I just want to breathe a moment. I see that Mr. Lindsay is not with us. We certainly have a quorum. I'd like to start with him. Well, I don't want to hold this up either. So let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn, please.
Sure.
Please raise your right hand. You solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes.
Thank you. Your appearance for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services with offices at ten forty Terry Road, Ronconkoma, New York, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Trelle. Do you, we have two other persons as attendees. Will, is one of them the applicant?
No, he is not here.
So and when you're saying he, is that Michael Fleming?
Yes, unless maybe, let me just make sure. I know he did not intend to speak.
All right, can we keep with the, all right, I see the pictures in the survey. All right then, Ms. Trelle, what would you like to tell us about this application?
We're here today for my client's property located at sixteen Satcham Court in Farmingville, New York. The property is owned A1 residential and is improved with a one-family dwelling. The owner of the property has placed two poles that have a light and camera attached to them on the corners of the front of his property for additional security for his home. We're requesting relief for the poles existing in the front yard and for the height being twenty feet instead of the eighteen feet maximum. We did look into the lighting code for the town of Brookhaven and it specifically stated that residential or non-residential luminaries shall be taller than twenty feet from natural grade. Our pole is exactly twenty feet from grade and as such, we feel that the pole meets this requirement. It secondly states that the unshielded residential luminaries equal to one sixty watt incandescent lamp per fixture is allowed, regardless of the number of lamps, provided that light trespass, light trespass limitations are met. My client did reduce his luminaries to sixty watts and he also installed light shrouds. So we feel that this also meets the non-trespass requirement. Flag poles similar in nature due to the height and the placement are in the front yard. Flag poles similar in nature due to the height and the placement are in the front yard. We did do a drive-by of the surrounding area and confirmed that neighbors do have eighteen to twenty-foot flag poles in their front yard. Um, and we did email pictures of two of the flags this afternoon on the knee, on, on his court. We are aware of the concerns associated with having the cameras and light, and lights posted on top of the poles. We did speak with the two neighbors, the one to his north and the one to his south, um, which would be the properties mostly affected by these cameras and lights. The neighbor at fourteen Seachem Court did provide a letter of support. The neighbor at eighteen Seachem Court um, was unable to attend the hearing today, but also extended his support for the application. What we also just saw on the screen was a letter from the security system. My property, uh, my client is a property owner. He's also a local business owner and has several locations within the township. He has a security contract with high-tech digital technologies. They provide security for his locations as well as his home. And they, I asked them to provide a detailed explanation of the system that was installed. So what they did was they created a geo-fence. That's basically an invisible fence that borders his property line. And the system is set so that it can only be initiated by motion. So the lights, the cameras that are on those poles, don't, they're not in constant view of anything. They are, they are only initiated by motion. So if you step onto his property, they would zoom in and, and see who was on the property. There's also a, they're also monitored by a third party and that third party has control of the system and have disabled any functionality that would allow the homeowner to move the camera remotely or view any of the neighboring properties. And I've asked them to state that in the letter as well. We also, once this application went forward, we turned off the lights to these poles and made sure that they maintained them off throughout this process so that we could make sure, you know, if there was an issue with it, that we would be able to address it. So at this time, I'd like to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Trelle. Uh, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So is this, uh, this is a security system, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you're saying, I, I'm confused because the call of the calendar says that these are twenty-foot height and the call of the calendar says that only eighteen feet, foot, feet high is permitted. You said something different though, in your introduction, that the height was in compliance.
Yes, I did. I mean, I looked up the lighting code for Brookhaven and it specifically states that the luminaries shall be taller than, cannot be any taller than twenty feet from natural grade, which is what we have.
So you're saying that that applies to this residential area? Why, we, we appear, apparently it was turned down because there were more than, in part because they were more than eighteen feet high?
Correct, and, and that's the dispute here between um, what, what we see in the code and the way it was interpreted at the counter.
Okay, so you're disputing the correctness of that, of that portion of the denial?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that you pointed to uh, a couple of flag poles in the area. Do you know whether, any, the height of those flag poles?
I could not get onto the property to um, measure them, but they do seem to be similar in height as the flag poles on my knee, on my client's property.
Okay, and do you, any of those properties have two flag poles on the corners of the property by the streets?
Uh, no, they just have the one on each property.
Okay, uh, now, do you have any pictures of these, of these uh, of the security system, these lights and, and uh, and cameras?
Yes, we did submit um, a picture of both of the cameras on the pole.
Now, we, we haven't seen that yet. Well, that's not, sideways is not helping me.
That is the view from the camera, um, but there were also pictures of like the actual poles. Let's see. I do have one here. I just don't know if you can see from my screen.
Do you, do you know whether or not, okay, well, I can't, that's hard. I, oh, actually, I think I can't see it a little bit.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so do you know uh, whether or not any of those flag poles were granted, were placed there pursuant to a permit? Or uh, any action of this board?
I did submit a FOIL, but I did not receive a response as of yet.
Uh. Well, I've been, I've been here for a while and I don't remember any action relating to two poles in the front yard. Uh, through security sys, part of the security systems in, in the front yard. Uh, I'm looking at it now and you, are you suggesting that that is, that what, two poles like that is consistent with though, uh, with the neighborhood?
No, I, I know this is an unconventional request. But I, I was speaking more to the height of the structure being in the front yard. That they, flag poles do exist within the township and they are, this, it's very, you know, it's pretty much the same pole. Instead of a light and a camera, there's a flag attached to it and they are located within the township on, on many homes.
Well, no, I understand, but I, I'm looking at this and it doesn't, although there's, there's a, a pole, it doesn't really remind me of a flag pole. It's not really looking like a flag pole and there are two of them. Uh, and uh, it doesn't seem that the overall configuration of this is, is, is consistent with the, with what's in the neighborhood, even if there's a couple of flag poles there. It's just in terms of conformity.
I understand.
Why do these poles have to be at the corners? Why can't the security system be on his house?
So he has um, cameras placed on his home as well. These cameras offer a different angle, so they're pointed directly to the house, so you can actually see the house, see the front door, see the driveway. Whereas the cameras on the house are kind of pointing outward and not giving him the same point of view. He, like I said, he is a local business owner. Um, he works long hours. He has a wife and three young daughters and he is using this as an additional um, security for his home since he's not always there. And he has.
I understand, I understand that he wants security in his house and, and many of us have wives or spouses and, and children. Very few of us have twenty-foot poles in the front yard with cameras, in addition to the cameras that are on our house. So, you know, I, I understand the importance of having security for your family and I don't mean to minimize that. Is there, do you want more time to find out if there was any action by this town, by this board as to whether or not the, whether or not there was any action by this board of a similar nature in the area or anywhere, really?
As far as having them placed in the front yard?
So as being placed in the front yard. That, that's, two of them in the front yard. Yeah, uh. You know, the, I just, I'm not seeing also, in addition to conformity, I'm not hearing the necessity for this either.
He has had.
Or that there's, or that there's any, that there aren't reasonable alternatives to, to this. I have never seen, I've lived in the town of Brookhaven for, since nineteen seventy-five and I've never seen, never seen poles out there like that, anywhere. I've walked this tall town. I've never seen that.
I, I think it's, it's the newer technology that's available to us now that the security companies are coming up with lots of, of new ideas for security for your home. He did have instances wherein the cameras were of benefit to him. He had packages stolen from Amazon. He had an issue where um, his landscaping company caused over ten thousand dollars of damage to his Lamborghini and, you know, he was able to prove it, you know, with the cameras, so they have been beneficial to him. They're beneficial to, you know, the neighbors some, you know, if somebody's driving by and sees, you know, a camera system like this, they're going to think twice about doing anything. He does have support from both of his neighboring properties. They have no issue with it. He has shown them the security system. They see the angles that it's pointed at. It's run by a third party, you know, company who maintains control of it.
Yeah, they may, excuse me, but they maintain control of it pursuant to instructions from him to maintain that control. So, I mean, to me, that's, that's the same thing as him having control. I mean, he's, he's trying to placate the neighbor's concern that he's going to be looking down the street uh, or, and or around on other properties, but he's maintaining that control by giving instructions to the, the company as long as he wants to give those instructions to the company. There's no, there's no, there's, there's not a lot of, I mean, I'm not accusing him of, of, of trying to spy on his neighbors, but I mean, in terms of the control being in the private, in the hands of a third party, I'm not, honestly, I'm not impressed by that, by that, that uh, that concept in terms of satisfying my, my concerns or the neighbor's concerns. Again, I'm not accusing him of wanting to use this to be a spy on anybody. That, that's really not what I'm saying, but, but I, I just go, I just haven't seen anything like this ever in a residential area of the town of Brookhaven.
I understand. I think it, you know, it is an unconventional application, but with the technology afforded to us, you know, today, I think we are going to start to see different levels of securities for, for homes.
Well, again, I think that there are alternatives that he can, in terms of security cameras and locations on his house in, or, or uh, other, other ways of doing this, other than putting two structures almost in the town right of way at the corners of his property adjacent to the street. I, I just don't, I'm not seeing this right now. I'm willing to listen, but I, I'm, I have great concerns about conformity, about uh, the lack of necessity, about a self-created hardship. I, that's just what I'm seeing.
I can, you know, I can wait to see, you know, and if anything comes back with the foil to see if there are any prior decisions, but like you said, you've been on the board for quite some time, so I, something of this nature, I think, would be memorable.
Thank you for that, Roxanne. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Ms. Trelle, you've characterized the application more than once as unconventional. Why, why, why is that?
Well, like he said, there's, there's really been no other application with a pole with a, a camera or a light fixture of this kind in the front yard. Typically, they're seen in sports courts in the rear yard. But, you know, the code also doesn't specify as to where these luminaires can be placed and specifically says, you know, for residential properties, they can be up to twenty feet high. They can have up to a sixty watt light, so.
I know that you indicated that, but it doesn't say they have to be.
Right.
The lighting, so you're aware of lighting that exists uh, in the ground and a foot above the ground.
Yeah.
You, you responded to a number of Mr. Burksen's questions. He asked you specifically, are there other instances of poles? And he went further and then asked you two so close to property lines and you did, you responded to him only by saying, yes, there are instances of flag poles. In fact, um, your picture showed us from a streetscape standpoint, um, instances of singles flag poles in front of a house, not near any property lines, but in front of a house. You didn't answer the second part of his question though, which was two poles at, in close proximity to property lines. So if you, if you were to answer that part of the question, what would the answer be?
I would say that in most instances, what we've seen um, when doing a survey of the surrounding area was one flag pole and they're on, you know, different locations on the property, some a little bit closer to the property line, some a little bit closer to the main dwelling.
So none, none with two?
None with two.
And when you say a little bit closer to the property line, I mean, if we pulled that survey up, you'll, you'll, we can characterize the location of these, of these poles. They're on the north and south front corners of the parcel. Uh, then the south one looks to be five feet from the frontage and within a foot of the side property. I think that's the one we're looking at. So within a foot or so of the, of the side property line and within five feet of the frontage. And the one on the north side is in approximately the same location, also in the front corner of the parcel.
Yes, correct.
Any, any flag poles in those locations in anywhere that you looked? All, all the way up front and on property lines?
Not that I have seen personally.
Uh, you, you, you did also mention that you, um, it's the applicant's contention that this provides for an additional, additional security for the house and you only brought, well, you did bring up uh, damage to Lamborghini and stealing packages. Uh, what is it about the, the home security systems that would not have captured those two instances?
So he does have the Ring app, but if anyone has personal experience with the Ring app, it is very grainy. You cannot make out the person's face. You can.
Well, I don't want to compare the, the technology of a Ring app to what's, what's.
Well, that's, that's the other, that's the other um, system that he had, he has the Ring app and he has cameras.
So in that instance, so one of his alternatives, which would be quite feasible, would be to upgrade his, the, the security system on the house to, which would also capture the instances where you've indicated with the packages in Lamborghini.
He does have um, the cameras placed on his home as well, but they do not extend to the, his full, basically, he wants his entire property to be covered, so.
Let me ask you, which, which security system captured the, the, the packages being stolen and the Lamborghini being damaged?
Believe it was the light pole that was pictured earlier.
So these were recent instances?
Yes.
So you're saying with these poles all the way up front, um, in, in the, in, in full view, almost screaming as you walk by, that, that someone came and, and stole packages from his house?
Correct.
So in those instances, the, the security system as being proposed here was insufficient? I, I, my guess is maybe the security system on the house probably picked up those because this is a new system that he most likely recently installed. My, my point of this, of this line of questioning is only to establish, he's got feasible alternatives if he's, if, if the intention is only to monitor the house. Um, I'm hearing from you that there's a further intention though, to monitor a house and then monitor the area surrounding the house. Is that also an intention?
No, it's strictly for his property. He wants his entire property to be covered.
You, you've indicated to us that the applicant has no control and that the control is by the security company only. Is that right?
Correct, and I've asked them to put that in a letter, which they did.
So you've given us, you've given us that in, in, in writing also?
Yes, I have.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Doyle?
I just, uh, I'll need to circle back on, uh, I believe, uh, the applicant referenced eighty-five, eight-six-five for the twenty feet for lighting, correct?
Yes.
I, I, I hadn't been reviewing the code. My interpretation of that would be uh, it'd be up to twenty feet on a permissible structure, because a house obviously can be more than twenty feet. So you couldn't have lighting on more than twenty, you know, above the, on the household. If your house is one twenty feet, you can't have it all the way beyond that. I would think otherwise.
You're interpreting the code as, um, the twenty seat feet is referencing and to a, a light fixture affixed to a dwelling?
To a legal structure, correct. And on, under our code, if you had a variance for an accessory structure, that was more than eighteen feet, because uh, eighty-five, one-seven-seven handles uh, accessory structures are capped at eighteen feet, unless there's a variance, as we all know. Like if you had, if they received a variance for a garage, be more than, uh, or shed to be more than the eighteen feet and they had it on top of it, 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 it couldn't be more than twenty feet in that, in that regard. I believe that's how, that's properly reconciled because the, uh, the pole itself, the custom accessory structure, that's how I would, I would analyze that.
Thank you. Anyway, getting back to the control of the camera, uh, certainly from a streetscape standpoint, we're looking at something that is unprecedented. Not at any other location, Ms. Trelle, I think you've agreed with that. But in terms of the control of the camera, what you've indicated to us and what you've sent us in writing from the, from the security company troubles me in that we, that we also have other documents um, received on this application and one of them shows us the, the workings of the camera itself. I'm going to ask Mr. Vega to put that up and I want you to take a look at it with us.
Sure. Sure.
Mr. Chair, is anyone playing?
It's playing.
It's playing. I believe that there are two, so if this one ends, there's another one. Those snowy days were not so long ago.
It's dated December seventeenth, so that was not too long ago.
So we're pulling this up for, at this point, for two reasons. One is you've indicated security for the, for the premises. However, most if not all of the, the content of those videos were about a quarter of a mile away, showing us distances way off of the property. And secondly, they appeared to have been controlled by an individual which very may well be the applicant. I'm sure that you can tell us either way, but I, I believe that they run applicants Facebook. So tell us, tell us why you believe that the applicant would have no control and that this system would monitor only the premises.
Well, I asked the applicant, and that is the information that was provided to me. And I asked him to obtain a, a letter from the security company stating as such. And he provided me with a letter that says, on the second paragraph, the ability to use the camera remotely and move cameras has been disabled.
Well, maybe they disabled it after he, he used it then.
So too, I am, I am not personally friends with him on Facebook. So I had never seen those videos prior to this, nor was I aware of them. All I had to go off of was what he said and the letter supplied to me by the security company personally.
You understand, although, why that would concern us?
Absolutely.
Because he's saying one thing and we're seeing something else.
Absolutely, yeah.
And while I understand that you, what, what concerns the board most and what the board has to consider here is the fact that we have two very tall poles in, in, not only in the frontage, in the front of the house, but at the street line and neighboring property lines, but two of them at a residential parcel. And that's what makes this, as you've termed it, unconventional. All right. Is there anything further from any, any further board member? Mr. Cunha?
I, one question is, is if the, who submitted the video, if you don't mind me asking?
I actually don't know. We have speakers. We can ascertain maybe from the speakers. We, we were submitted the material from a number of different sources.
Okay, I was just curious, because, I mean, we're here for the polls, correct?
We are here for the polls.
And I wanted to go back for, to the, to the flag poles that Roxanne had, had put up. Flag poles are, because of the flag, are not they're eighteen foot high in the town of Brookhaven. Building Department will allow them as eighteen feet. So that, even if they were, even if they were closer to the property line, they are allowed because they are truly flag poles for the American flag. The only light that's allowed on a flag pole is to illuminate the flag itself. So what we see on your poles are basically, they, they have a casing of almost a metal halide lamp, even though he changed it to sixty watts, the actual housing is a parking lot metal halide type housing. So I didn't know. That's why I was asking about the video, Mr. Chair, if actually the applicant submitted it or not. You know, trespassing with a video, I mean, every video on every building does the same thing. That doesn't worry me as much. It's a front yard. You can't expect too much privacy in your front yard. But however, I can't expect that, you know, I don't have to look at that in my front yard with giant, you know, cameras that are controlled by a joystick and can zoom in any way they want to. They're definitely commercial-style cameras, which concerns me as well. Because it gives the neighborhood a commercial look, and that does detract from the neighborhood and the, and, and what's the look and the feel of the neighborhood. So those are just a few things I wanted to touch on because, and if, and the eighteen foot is actually in the code, as Mr., as Mr. Doyle said, when it comes to light poles on, you know, you know, the courts, tennis courts and things like that. Have we given variances for, for sports courts? Yes, we have. However, this is obviously not a sports court. So I just wanted to clear up a couple of things I was listening to, and I just wanted to make
Absolutely. And if we were going to further clear it up, we, I think we can all agree that the code doesn't speak directly to where a camera can be placed. We are here to consider the, the, the existence of two, two poles in close proximity to the front property and side property lines on a residential use. And I think we can add to that, Mr. Cunha, your characterization of the commercial nature of the items attached to the poles because then they, they continue with that streetscape of commercial use, commercial versus residential use. Ms. Trelle, we, we've do have been I'm sorry?
I'm just wanted to elaborate on the lights. Those fixtures look like commercial fixtures, and you know, if it looks like it, it probably is. And those bulbs can be changed out anytime. And we're going to be, and then there's going to be problems with neighbors.
Ms. Trelle, I'm not interested in the name of your, your client's business, but what is the business that your client is involved in?
He does meal prep.
Meal prep.
Meal prep. So he delivers food and he has locations where he can go in and pick up food for the week.
All right. Before I go to speakers, are there any other board members who would like to? Question, yes, Mr. Mazarella.
Yes, and, and it may have been mentioned already, and, and I apologize if this information's already been brought to light, but has anyone mentioned the actual radius of the cameras, or a three sixty, two seventy, one eighty?
From, from, I, Ms. Trelle, do you know? From the video, it appears to be there almost three sixty.
I do not know. As what I was told is that they strictly faced towards the dwelling.
Well, we know that not to be accurate.
Yeah, so that's what I said. I, I don't know the actuality of it, because that's what, that was my belief.
Okay, I just, I just think that's something that, you know, in, taking this into consideration. And I know we're here for the height, but I would just, I would just ask or submit that if you have one at either side, why it would be necessary for any, any of this to be anything more than a hundred and eighty degrees. But I don't want to belabor it, and I know we have some speakers, but I just want to submit that.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Anything further from the board? I'm sorry, Ms. Trelle, did I cut you off?
Yes, I'm sorry. I do know, I did speak to my client, and he's, and he is willing to come to some concessions, you know, whether it be limited to one pole versus two pole or limited to one hundred and eighty degrees. I know he did change out the bulb. He did install shield, so he is willing to make changes to it, you know, if, if that helps.
Thank you. Anything further from the board? All right, we do have a number of speakers wishing to speak. I'd like to bring them all up at once.
Mr. Chair, I have Vincent Celino, and I have John.
Hi, hello?
Yeah, so just bear with us a moment, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Celino?
Yes, how are you?
I, I'm very good, sir. You are, we can hear you, but I don't see that your video's on. Are you able to put the video on?
Honestly, I really don't know how to do that. I thought it was on.
We got, and I'm waiting for someone else to come up, so you keep trying at that. John, I don't have your last name. I, I apologize for referring you as John.
It's John Minardi.
Thank you. And you can hear us, sir, correct?
Yes, I can. I did, and they did request the video on. I turned it on.
Okay, very good. Let me see whether Mr. Celino has
I don't believe Mr. Celino has the ability to pull a camera.
All right. And Mr. Celino, is that correct?
Yes, sir, is correct.
All right, I'm going to, gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to give, both of you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Yes, sir.
Please raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do, I do.
All right, very good. The, the individual whose name is John, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Certainly, John Minardi. I live at Seventeenth Satcham Court, Farmingville, New York, directly across the street from the house in question.
Thank you. Mr. Minardi, do you, do you know Mr.? The gentleman I just was talking with, Vincent Celino?
He lives directly to the left of me, which would be to the south and also across the street from number sixteen Satcham Court.
Do you recognize the voice of the gentleman that we're hearing as, in fact, Mr. Celino's voice?
I do. And it does, it does appear to be Mr. Celino.
All right, very good. Then, then, sir, Mr. Minardi, let's start with your address for the record, please.
Seventeenth Satcham Court, Farmingville, New York, one-one-seven-three-eight.
Thank you, sir. You have been present during the course of this public hearing. And we've brought you up for your comment on the relief being sought from the board.
Yes.
What would you like to tell us?
Okay, this is a residential cul-de-sac with approximately twenty homes on it. I don't believe this variance is warranted in that the structures in the front yards like that are completely out of character. I feel it may devalue our property values as it raises the concern for security issues. I've been here twenty-five years. I've never heard or had any issues with any police matters or anything on the property. It's been a very safe neighborhood. Everything's been extremely fine. The lights that are on top of those poles, although they've been turned off for now, I guess during this, you know, hearing period, when they were on, they lit up almost my entire front yard. Also, my understanding is that these poles themselves are not permitted. They're almost on the property lines at both the north and south sides, plus only five feet from the street. They're not in character of the neighborhood at all. Also, these poles with these cameras on them are three hundred and sixty-degree directional. We sent you another video showing that the camera is turning three hundred and sixty degrees. At the height that these poles are at and the cameras, they point directly into my bathroom windows. So, I mean, and with the zoom capability, those cameras are pointing directly into my bathroom windows. On the second floor, then, it's not on the first floor. So it's very concerning. Also, I spoke to the New York Assemblyman's Office, Mr. Bronstein. He introduced legislation regarding privacy concerns of video surveillance in residential areas. So this is something that's coming up. But the poles themselves are certainly eyesores. They're not normal in the neighborhood, and I feel they devalue our property values.
We thank you very much for those comments, sir. Questions or comments from board members? All right, then, Mr. Celino, start with your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Vincent Celino. I live directly across the street at Fifteenth Satcham Court.
Yes, sir. What would you like to add to this?
Basically, I agree with everything that Mr. Minardi had said. The one thing I'd like to add, the way my house is set up, that pole is directly in front of my seven-year-old son's bedroom window. I've seen that camera turn at, at least a hundred and eighty degrees. I've made eye contact with it in my son's bedroom. I'm, I'm desperately begging the board to deny this application on this. For the safety and well-being of my family, my neighbors, there's just no reason for it. There's no reason that these poles need to have these cameras on it that can follow your vehicle going up and down the road. I've lived at Fifteenth Satcham Court now for eight years. I've never had one incident of any crime. Anything, I'm hearing stuff about Amazon packages being stolen. I, I have Amazon at my house every day. I've never had a package stolen. I've never had anything missing. There, there's been no issues of crime in the area. The bottom line is, these, these poles are, they're endangerment to my family's safety and well-being. And you know, somebody who has a criminal background, I kind of worry about that. I, I don't need this outside my son's bedroom window. I'm requesting that you guys can make a denial on us.
Thank you very much for those comments, sir. And gentlemen, I want to tell you both that we have received your emails on this, or concerning this application. They are in, they're similar in, in substance to the comments that you've made to us directly here. As a result, we're not reading them. However, they are part of the record and they are part of the board's file. It will be considered when the, when the board decides the application. Is there anything further from the board for these two gentlemen? All right, thank you very much for coming out. May we have Ms. Trelle back, please?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. This is your opportunity to provide us with any responsive comment you want.
While the speakers were on, I did reach out to my client. He, he did acknowledge that there was a video posted on Facebook. He said that the feature has since been disabled. The cameras are solely facing his property. He has no problem with providing the security company's information so that that can be verified. And he really is, you know, he's willing to make some concessions to try and keep some sort of security for his property. You know, and as, as far as, you know, my knowledge of this, you know, most of what happened here today is, this is the first time I'm hearing of it. So I don't have too much to address it, other than what my client is saying.
We, thank you very much, and we, we certainly do understand what you're saying. In terms of the, the variances sought, they have more to do with the existence of the poles themselves and their locations than the, than the cameras on them. But we, we certainly will take what you've indicated to us through the applicant or from the applicant in consideration. Is there anything further from the board on the application? All right, I think, Ms. Trelle, I think we're getting some background noise.
No, I'm, I'm alone here.
All right. Then with that, if there's nothing further from the board, a last for a motion.
Move to close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Berksen, the close and hold, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number thirteen, Dalton Studios LLC, two-eight-four Schoenfeld Boulevard, East Patchogue. Property is located on the west side of Schoenfeld Boulevard, one hundred and forty-seven feet south of Franklin Street, East Patchogue. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Anthony Matola for the applicant. I also have a speaker named Cindy. I don't know if she's the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Matola, we, are you able to hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good to see you. Let me ask you to give your attention to Mr. Doyle to be sworn.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right, then, Mr. Matola, I don't know if you heard Mr. Vega say, but we do have someone else here. We're not sure if it's the applicant or it's someone named Cindy. Is that your client? All right, so then we have a speaker on the application. What would you like to, well, give us your appearance and tell us what you'd like to tell us?
Good evening, board members. Mr. Chairman, Anthony Matola, P O Box five-six-seven, Rocky Point, New York, agent for the applicant. This subject property did go, go in front of the board April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, case number twenty-nine. It got granted for existing one-story addition, two hundred and thirty-two square feet on a non-single and separate lot. There was a little, a couple little screw-ups with the denial and the way we didn't get granted for the rear yard setback. That's why we're back here today. This is a sixteen-one by fourteen-four, two hundred and thirty-two square foot addition. It's a den and a bathroom. It conforms with the nature and characteristics of the area. All on Schoenfeld, all the houses, two sixty, two sixty-four, two sixty-eight, two seventy, two eighty-four, which is the subject property. And two eighty-six all have rear yard additions with the same setback, which is twenty-eight point three. What else? The G I S aerial shows that it was built, which I made in my first, back in April. To let you know, this addition was on the G I S aerial in two thousand and four. It was not on the two thousand and one aerial. So it was built at some point between those years. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Questions or comments from board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
How are you, Anthony?
I'm good. How are you?
Very well, very well. Thank you. Okay, so the, the addition itself, again, I think you said what it's being utilized. the, uh, the addition itself, um, again, I think you said, um, what it's being utilized for. Can you just, uh, explain from, from the, um, before it was an addition to, to this, to this portion, you know, what is the change in the configuration inside as, as far as, you know, are they moving bedrooms or, um, maybe can explain a little bit about the progression of it?
Well, I have no idea what this house looked like prior to March of twenty twenty. When I went there for the first time, it was a den and a bathroom. And like I said, we had gotten it granted. Um, there was an issue with the rear yard setback, so we are back in front of the board. It's still a den and a bathroom.
Okay, still a den and a ba- so, and, and the addition itself, you're saying? It was a den, is it den and a bathroom then?
I'm sorry, it's a half bathroom.
Okay. Okay, so that, so, so nothing has changed?
Nothing has changed, no.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board? If we have no speakers on the board, oh, actually, there is someone named Cindy. I do see Cindy's been commenting. She has no objection. Does she want to speak?
I'm trying to find that out. I can bring her in.
Go, go, go ahead and do that.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, um, you are the individual named Cindy. I think through comments, you have no, you have no, no opposition to the application?
So let me clarify because you'll understand totally what.
Before you do that, I'm just gonna ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And start with your full name and address, please.
Uh, Cindy Albrecht. I live at two eighty-one Phyllis Drive. So I'm the property directly behind the property you're talking about.
Yes.
And I would say that that full backyard is behind my backyard. My backyard runs a little bit longer. Um, another neighbor had expressed to me concern, talking about them adding on to this. And I said, I didn't think that was what was going on. So, you know, I was just afraid that there would be complaints about this and somebody was gonna make somebody tear part of their house down. So that's the only reason I've been hanging out because, you know, as it is, I, I don't see that it would bother anybody.
Well, thank you for coming out. I do see, uh, the rose. I do have a problem with that, pronouncing that, but the, uh, the pot that carry, is that how we, we pronounce it?
That's so funny. You know, do you know what it's from?
Yes, I do.
And I had it on a previous Zoom. I didn't realize it would come up automatically.
I'm not sure how many of my board members do, but, um, I certainly recognize it. I thank you very much for coming out and for clarifying that for us.
Sure. I just felt like if there was miscommunication, that somebody might be getting in the way of nothing, because I feel like this is nothing, right?
Um, it, it, it is for an existing structure with no new proposed development.
Right, it's the, it's the part that butts out the back already.
Yes.
Right, and that's what I had told my neighbor. I was under the impression that they were writing, so maybe they changed their mind. So I just wanted to clarify that it would affect me more than anybody and it's not an issue.
All right, and I just want to point out before you leave us, in Mr. Cunha's world, the sun is setting on the mountains. Um, we can see that also. Thank you very much for coming out. Mr. Matola, did you want to give us any final comment?
No, no thanks.
If, if there's nothing further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application now submitted type two.
Seconded is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Thank you. Mr. Cunha, you look like you're in a movie.
Thank you.
Before reading the next case, I'm gonna ask the board for a motion to reopen case number twelve, Sixteenth Satcham Court LLC. Does the board have that motion? Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Despite the fact that we, um, we do ask people to email us early, we have during the hearing, during the actual hearing, we receive these general emails. Want to make them part of the record, um, so that I'm gonna ask. I guess I'm stating that we're making them part of the record and I'm gonna ask the board, um, to then reclose.
So moved?
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. For the record, those emails will be provided to applicant's representative and they will be given a limited opportunity to respond and ready. No choice.
Okay, um. Yeah, um.
Case number fifteen, Robert Frazier and Pamela Dulce, sixty-five Hastings Drive, Stony Brook. Located on the north side of Hastings Drive, two hundred and forty-seven feet west of Nichols Road, Stony Brook. Applicant request, rear yard variance for proposed sunroom, side yard variance for existing detached shed.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Moje for the applicant.
Thank you. The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's recused from the application.
I also have the applicant.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Moje, you've previously been sworn. Can we take your appearance for the record, please?
Diane Moje, D and I Expediting Services Offices at seven seven nine Horseback Road in Farmingville.
Thank you, Ms. Moje. We do, I believe, have your client here also. Is that for observation or we, should we promote them?
You know, I didn't have a chance to speak with them before the hearing, but.
I will have them promoted and following your presentation, we'll ask them if they'd like to say anything.
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, actually, they just indicated observation only, so we're fine.
Okay, there we go. Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the subject premises is located on Hastings Drive. We have approximately a hundred feet of frontage. There's an existing single-family dwelling located on the property. The applicant is seeking permission to construct a sunroom in place of the existing sunroom that was built without benefit of a permit. So that will be removed and they are building a new sunroom. Um, I've checked the aerials all the way back to nineteen eighty-four. It does appear that the structure, there was an additional structure that had existed out the rear of this property. I would suggest that the property to the north of the subject premises is owned by New York State, that the addition of this approximately fifteen by fifteen, uh, sunroom would not create any detriment to the surrounding area nor would it impair the values of thereof. You can see, uh, as you look at the aerials, that there are several other structures in the area that have added either roofed over or smaller additions.
Again, let me look at it.
Out the back or, um, on the side. Uh, if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them at this time.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
Hi Diane, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Okay, so I see that they're looking for, uh, to bring the, uh, shed into compliance or, or to get the, uh, your approval for the shed. How long has the shed been there?
Uh, the shed has been there, uh, quite a while. That is being either moved to conform or, uh, removed. I believe that that's been relocated, though.
Okay, so that it's gonna conform no matter what?
Correct.
Okay, so then there are sheds in, um, many backyards, according to the aerials, I could see quite a few.
Right, but I, I don't think that we're even asking for relief of the shed.
Yeah, because we've gotta bring in the components. All right, so let's go to the sunroom. I can see the, uh.
Oh, I apologize. It is on the call of the meeting. It is for the side yard because when the addition is added, it's no longer in the rear yard. It's considered a side yard, which is silly in my estimation, but it's still behind the rear foundation line of the house and.
It is.
Creates it to be a side yard.
So, and it's only four point three.
Yeah, but it's ten by eight and, um, so it's only eighty square feet. And, um, generally, if that sunroom had not been there, it would have been in the rear yard. It's the addition of the sunroom that makes it a side yard, which I disagree with, by the way, but it is what it is.
That's what I understand. And then let's go to the sunroom itself. How long has that been there?
Since I looked at aerials today, um, back to at least nineteen eighty-four. And that will be removed and a new one built in its place.
So, as it looks like from the aerial, there are additions on some other houses in the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Could I see the aerial? Yeah, there are some other additions.
Right, number fifty-seven, you have an addition at the back, number fifty-four, number thirty-four, you have, um.
Like fifty-six.
Yep, uh, forty-seven, forty-one. Uh, it looks like number nine. It also, number five, number thirty-two.
So it conforms to the neighborhood.
Absolutely conforms.
It's not out of character and there's plenty of room in the back of this property. And you said that was New York State.
That's, that's owned by New York State.
All right, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have any other comment on this application? If not, I'll ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to grant the application title.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the motion vote is five in favor, one abstention and one, um, recusal.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number sixteen, Paul and Susan Ogburn, care of Woodhall Expediting, ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the east side of Old Field Road, three hundred and seventy-one feet south of Mill River Road, East Tockit. Applicant request, side yard variance for existing generator located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Ms. DeVito, very good. We can, we can see you and hear you. I'll ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, please, to get sworn.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And your appearance for the record, please.
Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, agent for the applicant.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. DeVito. We see that you're here for relief concerning the placement of a generator at this residential parcel. What would you like to tell us specifically?
Good evening or good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my client is actually in the process of, um, we're just finishing up quite a large renovation. He does have some open permits over at the home. As part of that renovation, they did add the, uh, gas generator, but neglected to add it to the permit. So we're here today legalizing it. The generator is located on the east side of the home, uh, about eleven feet from the side property line. And it, as you can see in the photos, it is screened by plantings, um, right there. That's where it's located. It's screened by plantings. Uh, we were, uh, we did apply to the historic district and we received H D A C approval for the generator, which is right there before you. Um, the, uh, the generator is a Genrak brand and it has a low noisy mittens. It actually has a, an enclosure around it that attenuates the sound. Uh, so it shouldn't be bothersome to the neighbors at all. And we did find some similar grants in the neighborhood for generators, uh, actually a little bit closer to the, uh, side yard property line than what we're requesting. That was submitted as well. Um, and then lastly, the reason why the generator is located where it is is because you could see it in one of the, uh, elevation photos and then also on the survey, uh, that there is right here. So the generator is located on this side of the house. You could see that there's, uh, the electric meter, the electric box, and then some venting, et cetera, on the side of the home along with mechanicals. So instead of cluttering that area, um, and, uh, preventing access to the meter, et cetera, it was most logical to move the generator a bit to the east side of the property. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. DeVito. The board is familiar with, um, the application specifically that this is a flag lot with driveway and garage on, uh, the, in the frontage, uh, and of, of the locations to, to place it. It appears to, um, to us to be the most logical. And we do see that it's a fairly wooded area in your picture, certainly, uh, further the point showing us that you've, you've had the applicant or the applicant themselves plant, uh, plant, um, evergreens surrounding it. So I don't have anything specific for you. We do see it's a Genrak housed, um, like the units that we have seen in the past. Um, if there's anything further from the board, I'll take it. Hearing none, and if there's no other speakers, I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion to grant that application type two.
Seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Case number seventeen, John in Virginia Farido, care of Long Island Permits, P O Box five, Center Riches. Properties located on the west side of Strawberry Lane, one hundred and forty feet north of Lime Avenue, Center Riches. Applicant request, rear yard variance for proposed sunroom.
Mr. Chair, I have Kim Henry for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. McHenry, we see that you have been promoted. We're just waiting for, uh, there you go, video and audio on. Can you hear us?
Good evening, Mr. Chance. How are you?
Very good, very good to see you. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good. We'll start with your appearance for the record, please.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, members of the board. On behalf of the applicant, Kathleen McHenry of L I Permits, P O Box five, Center Riches, New York, one one nine three four.
Thank you, Ms. McHenry.
Am I good to go?
Yes, you are.
All right. Um, I'm here before you tonight requesting to construct a sixteen by sixteen rear sun, sunroom, holding a rear yard setback of twenty-nine point one, where seventy-five feet is required. The proposed sunroom addition would not be heated or habitable. The property is owned A two. I'd like to state that the property itself is only a hundred and five feet deep and is in fact the same size as most of the lots on Strawberry Lane and Forest Avenue, which makes it hard for any of these lots to comply with the A two setback requirements. I've submitted for the board's consideration pictures of the subject property as well as pictures of surrounding properties in the neighborhood, several with rear, rear sunroom additions. That being said, we believe the relief we are seeking, if granted, would still be keeping with the nature and characteristics of the surrounding properties and would have no negative impact on the neighborhood. I welcome any questions the board may have at this time.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
I'm Mr. McHenry. How are you?
Good evening. Good, how are you?
Uh, Anthony, can we get the actual survey up?
I thought that looked a little busy for mine.
Thanks, Anthony. Um, I don't have a setback. I don't see a setback for the house. You said that, uh, the house was obviously constructed under a different code. Is that correct?
I'm not really sure. I didn't, I didn't really look into that. I can if the board needs me to, but I just know that based on the size of the lots in A two, I was a little taken aback on the fact that that particular neighborhood was in fact owned A two, just based on the, the lot sizes in general.
Okay, and we, I, I'm assuming that the, uh, the house is setback approximately forty feet, uh, if you add the, uh, deck to it or the proposed deck.
I just quickly did the math. It looks like forty-five point one, but I could be wrong, you know, with the sixteen.
Just looked at it. Okay, um, forty-five feet, so you're gonna encroach sixteen feet into the rear yard, leaving still thirty feet. Are there any some, similar structures in the neighborhood?
There are. Actually, if you look, I did submit for Mr. Vega's consideration, for the board's consideration through Mr. Vega, um, some aerials. And what I have is that twenty-four Strawberry Lane, looks like it has a sunroom. Twenty-six Strawberry Lane, right next to it, looks like it has a trellis, um, attached to the house, a little bit different. But thirty-three Forest on the backside has a sunroom and twenty-nine Forest has a rear deck attached to the house and fifteen Forest has a gazebo. So there does appear to be some structures, some attached to the house, some sunrooms themselves that, um, you know, I didn't do the exact measurements, but based on the lot sizes, I would, I would imagine that we're pretty close based on the aerials.
I also see, uh, from these photos, there's some decks and things like that that are also extending into the backyards.
Correct.
So it conforms with the neighborhood. Thank you. No further, uh, one other question. I'm sorry, uh, three-season room?
Uh, not heated, not habitable, so correct.
Not heated, not habitable. Fantastic. And it enters what part of the house, do you know?
Kitchen, I believe, but I could be wrong. I, I could be wrong.
All right. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? If there are no other speakers, I'll ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the applications presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Case number eighteen, Barry Benjamin, ten seventeen Old Medford Avenue, Farmingville. Properties located on the east side of Old Medford Avenue, eight hundred and forty-nine feet south of Granny Road, Farmingville. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Chair, Dana Bush for the applicant. Thank you. Hi, can you hear us?
Hi, yes. Can you see me now?
Yes, we can see you now. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, Dana Bush for the, uh, for the applicant, uh, forty-one Whittier Avenue, Medford.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn, please.
Yes.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, but the truth.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, again, your name for the record?
Dana Bush.
Dana Bush. And Ms. Bush, what would you like to tell us about this application?
We're trying, we're going for a shed. Um, it's two hundred square feet at its highest. It's eleven point six in feet. Um, it is required a ten-foot setback. We only have a two point four. Um, I submitted an aerial of the surrounding neighbor, of the surrounding neighbors, and every neighbor connecting to him down the block has very similar sheds. His is on the smaller end. Um, he didn't want to move it. Uh, it's got like, uh, it's not very movable. It's about fifteen years old, uh, just using it for lawnmower and other household things.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I believe that would be Mr. Lindsay. Mr. Lindsay, I'm sorry, you're, you're so married.
I'll, I'll take it.
I think Mr. Lindsay's here.
I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Oh, I don't know what's going on with the computer. Sorry about that. Sounds like a great application of the sheds in the neighborhood, um, small lots. Uh, I'd like to just grant the application type two as presented.
Right then, Mr. Lindsay moves, Mr. Lindsay moves quickly. A motion is by Mr. Lindsay. We'll take the second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Case number nineteen, Brian and Diana Ornellis, care of Woodhall Expediting, located on the west side of Campus Drive, four hundred and sixty-five feet north of Campus Drive, Farmingville. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for existing attached utility shed. Rear yard variance for existing detached shed. Height variance for existing retaining wall with fence on top, creating overall height varying from eight feet to eleven point four feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant. Thank you. Ms. DeVito, welcome back. Are you with us? I'm looking for you. There you are. Okay. You previously have been sworn. Give us your, uh, your appearance for the record, please.
Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York.
Thank you. Uh, what would you like to tell us regarding this application?
Mr. Chairman, my client is legalizing a couple of structures at the property, uh, in preparation to sell. Uh, the view that you're looking at right now is actually the neighboring parcel. So this is actually a view from fifteen Hofstra Drive, which is the property behind my client's property. So, um, Anthony, if you keep scrolling through the photos, uh, this, this is, uh, another view from the neighboring property. Same, uh, same property. Can you go up, Anthony, like back up? Yeah, okay, right here. So thank you. So this is actually the subject backyard. The, uh, the lot is completely level. At the time when my client purchased the home in two thousand and five, shortly thereafter, they leveled off the property and erected the fence. There is a, a, a swimming pool in the backyard, which is legal, and there wasn't, um, sorry about the clock. And there wasn't a, there wasn't proper fencing around the property. So, um, as a result, they leveled the property, built the retaining wall and put the fence up for safety purposes and also for privacy. Uh, so again, that was done in, in approximately two thousand and five. Also, oh, as far as the shed, uh, they just tucked it away in that corner for purposes of having a backyard area since the pool does take up an, an area that's obviously, uh, you know, on the greater part of the yard. Um, and then lastly, we are also legalizing the boiler room. The boiler room is, uh, if, and Anthony, if you scroll down, you grazed past that picture before. That's the boiler room addition right there. It's, um, and there's a picture of the inside as well. That particular structure was built in two thousand and fifteen when they relocated the boiler out of the home and into, uh, this particular room, which they built specifically for the purpose of the mechanicals. There's no basement in this home. It's on a slab. And the boiler room was actually located right in the center of the home and it just, it, it, uh, for functionality purposes, it just, it just didn't work. So they, they decided to move it, um, into this room. And that's what we're legalizing here today, along with the fence and the wall and the shed. And I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. DeVito. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. DeVito.
Ms. Lazarus.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Where's the Vice President today?
President was sent home and as usual, the president is working hard into the wee hours of the night.
Okay. Thanks for the cuckoo clock. Anyway, um, going, going back to the fence and the, the, uh, reflecting back on the, uh, the, that, well, this picture right here is good. That was built by the owner of the property on the opposite side of that fence.
No, um, it was actually built by the applicant, the Ornellis, um, but I.
This is a view from your applicant's property or from the neighborhood?
This is a view from the neighboring parcel.
Well, that's what I meant.
Yes.
The applicant, right, the applicant on the opposite side of this. This is what the neighbor sees.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, to begin with, has the neighbor ever objected to that?
Oh, no, they, they, the neighbor, to our knowledge, has no issue. And actually, they were kind enough to allow the applicant to go onto the property to take this photo so that we can present it to the board so that you guys could see what we had going on here.
Okay, I'm trying to visualize. Is that a, um, Masonry block wall?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay. Good eyes. Anyway, um, and then.
Um, Mr. Lazarus, you just muted yourself.
I did, didn't I? I took my.
Right, right after you said good eyes.
Good eyes.
In that compliment.
Absolutely, right. I killed myself. Anyway, um, so the view from the owner's side or the applicant's side is after they've leveled it behind this wall. And the fence is what, four feet high, five feet high?
Uh, the fence is, I think it's five point seven feet at its highest. For some reason, it's not quite six feet. I guess they cut it down when they, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, then we have the situation with the mechanical, well, first of all, the shed in the corner, how long has that been there?
Since two thousand and fifteen.
Two thousand and fifteen. No objections? It, is it visible? Is it higher than the, the fence on the other side?
Um, it, it slightly peaks over the fence, uh, but, but not much. It's kind of tucked away neatly in that corner. And there's been no complaints from any of the neighbors and I have been contacted.
Okay. Um, and the, uh, utility room, uh, reiterating, you said that that was in the centrics of the dwelling itself. So they removed it, put it to the outside. So all the feeding, ventilating, air conditioning and whatever is that is provided to the house is on that enclosed extension to the, to the side. And that presents, I see on the, uh, survey in very light, number nine feet, that's a nine foot distance from this, to the property line from the, the, uh, far reaches of the, uh, of this, uh, extension?
Yes, it's a, it's, it's holding a nine foot minimum and then a twenty-two point four total.
Total. Okay. All right. Uh, and again, uh, nobody ever saying in any objections, uh, giving the neighbor from the neighbors any objections about the utility room and any of the smoke that arises from the chimney?
No, uh, there's been no objection and that has also been there since two thousand and fifteen. So it's been there for six years with no issue.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and we also, we did submit, um, some grants, uh, similar grants for all three of the requests that we're asking today. None specifically in this neighborhood for a utility room, but, uh, other variances granted for, uh, additions, garage, things of that nature attached to the home, creating a total and minimum side yard variance.
Yeah, I noticed a few of those were with fences on top of walls and so forth and so on. Um, Mr. DeVito, I have no further questions. Do we have any, do we have any speakers?
We'll find that out. Mr. Vega, are there speakers on this application? Hmm, Mr. Chairman, there are no speakers. Thank you. Ms. DeVito, uh, uh, in terms of the purpose of the retaining wall, um, and fence, while the survey doesn't indicate to us, the, you know, photos generally do, you're showing us a great difference between this parcel and the parcel to the rear. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. There was a, quite a steep hill at the time when my client purchased, going down to the neighboring property to the rear, which is on the west side. Um, so.
Yeah, this board is certainly familiar with the section of Farmingville, uh, where there are varying grades and we do, we have seen applications for relief for retaining walls, uh, with fences with overall heights, uh, exceeding code permissions. Does the view from the applicant's parcel is, uh, is, what is the height at the top of the fence from the ground?
The, the highest part of the fence is five point seven feet. So from the.
So they're not seeing any, any, uh, exposed retention wall from the applicant's parcel. They're seeing a five-foot fence.
They're seeing a five-foot fence, but for the very top of the retaining wall, the cap, I'll call it.
All right. There appears to be a, in the middle of that parcel, a, a, a change in the height of the fence. Do you know the purpose of that? Why wasn't it straight across? Is there also a grade left or right?
Yeah, so I don't have a topo survey, but, um, there is, the highest part of the wall is on the, uh, let's see, on the, it looks like the south side of the property and then.
Closest to the, the shed area.
Correct. And then leveled off as you go toward the, um, north side of the property.
And, and from the photos, it, it appears as though the, the parcels to, um, either side of this one on Campus Drive also has that great difference between the parcel and the, um, the residential uses behind them.
That's correct.
So it's not unique to this parcel?
No, it's not.
And there are other instances then in the same areas of retention walls and fences on retention walls?
Yes, there is. We found a couple, actually.
Thank you for allowing me to ask those questions. Is there anything further from the board? The, if not, I'll take a motion.
Grant the application as presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number twenty-three, Peter and Stephanie Mione, care of building permits plus nineteen Stillwood Road, Brookhaven. Properties located on the east side of Park Avenue, three hundred and eighty-one feet north of Penn Street, Center H. Applicant requests height variance for existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard.
Mr. Chair, Jason Allen for the applicant. Thank you. Mr. Allen, we can see you. Were you able to hear us?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, but the truth.
So help me God.
Let's start with your appearance for the record, please, Mr. Allen.
Jason Allen, building permits plus for the applicant.
And what would you like to present here?
Okay, um, this pool was built in, uh, nine, in two thousand and fourteen. C O was issued on the house in nineteen ninety-five. There's a weird topography here that puts the pool approximately twenty feet lower than the road. Um, if you look at the aerial, um, that, uh, you have, there's about twenty steps going down towards the pool. And that shows, you know, the difference in the height. He had a regular fence, but he found that everybody that drove down the road could look right into his pool. So he put up a six-foot fence. They told him it had to be more than eight feet away from the road. He made it about sixteen because he didn't want to lose the, uh, area towards the front, didn't want to, uh, croach on his, uh, front yard, so to speak. And, uh, when he was done, he didn't realize that it had to be behind the, uh, the foundation line. So we're here today to correct that. Uh, that fence has been there probably six years. And, um, he, uh, has, uh, tried to make the best of it with all the people that drove by. So that's what we're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So Jason, this is an actual front yard. This isn't just a, uh, a front yard because of the location, uh, adjacent to a corner another street, correct?
It is a corner lot, but this is the front yard. The other would be the side front yard or secondary front yard, as it's like to be called.
Also, part of it, the, the, uh, a small part of it is a secondary front yard, is that right?
Yeah, the part to the, uh, if you're looking at the picture, the part to the left.
Okay.
Which is actually the north side of the property. So the front, the, the front of the house faces, uh, west. And on the, uh, south side is where the pool was installed.
Right.
And the pool has a permit and a C O.
Okay, so it, it, the, the fence is extends along the, the suddenly property line, uh, into the front yard and then it extends up towards the house in the front yard. Do you know what the distance is between the property line and the, the fence? The property line, meaning the, uh, property line on Park Avenue.
Property line on Park Avenue is about twenty feet.
So it's twenty feet and a half. You say it's been there how long?
Uh, it's been there since, uh, two thousand and eighteen at least.
Have there been any, to your knowledge, any complaints by any of the neighbors?
No, most of the neighbors all have, um, uh, if you look at the, uh, aerial again, um, there, these are odd-shaped lots and, uh, most of the neighbors don't even get to see each other.
I'm looking at this picture. Am I seeing that fence in this picture?
Yes, that's the fence across the phone.
Okay, so, uh, and you're saying that's a six-foot fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and.
Without that fence, anybody that's on Park Avenue could just drive there, stop and watch the whole family swim around in their pool.
And, okay. All right, um, I'm looking at the area. I'm looking at the photograph. It said twenty feet from the property line. It's probably at least thirty feet from the road. It's not, it doesn't appear to be any sort of, uh, uh, visual obstruction and there's been no complaints. Uh, there looks like there are other fences in the area that are close to that or were similar to that in terms of front yard. And, uh, so I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Is there anything further from the board? If there are no speakers, I'll take a motion.
We've to approve the application submitted type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Case number twenty-four, Norsheen Montage, care of building permits plus. Properties located on the west side of Harrison Avenue, five hundred and twenty-five feet north of Sixteenth Street, Miller Place. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing enclosed cellar entrance. Front yard setback, side yard and height variances for existing six hundred and forty-two square foot, twenty point four or five foot high detached garage located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, Jason Allen for the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Allen. You've previously been sworn. Can we just start with an appearance for the record, please?
Jason Allen, building permits plus for the applicant.
Thank you. Just briefly, before we start, Mr. Allen, uh, the owner of the parcel is not as, um, as listed on the calendar, uh, is, but it's Conforce Holding LLC.
Yes.
That's correct. And I know in the file that you've, in the documents that you've given to the board, you've given us some sort of written consent from Conforce for its, its member, LLC member to represent, um, the, the LLC here. But in terms of filling out a building, I mean, an, an application to the, uh, to the office of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I want to see the, the LLC owner, the corporate owner. I don't want to see a, a partner or a, a member or a shareholder. I don't want to see a, a partner or a member or a shareholder on the, on the application.
We can prevent that. It's the same.
Well, in this instance, it would be Conforce Holding LLC in care of building permits plus and not the name that we see there. In term, and in terms of that entity, I do know that they purchased uh the parcel in August of two thousand twenty. It's an entity that has a business address at AV Orville Drive. And not, not at this location. Can you just tell the board how the property has been used since August of two thousand twenty when it was purchased?
Without my knowledge, before I was retained, uh they had started uh my, they started construction on the interior of it.
And I see that you, you've, now you've helped them um by filing for permits uh for the work that they're conducted in, in.
Yes, sir.
Acting, and that's good. But in terms of the use of the dwelling, it sounds as though there's been no use then.
No use.
So there's no one living there presently?
No, not at all.
And do you have any insight as to whether this is a, a property to rehab and resell or property to be held and, and used otherwise?
Rehab and resale.
All right, then talk to us about the application, please.
Okay, the uh application is for the garage. It's a, almost, it's eighteen feet high. And the garage was built uh probably thirty years ago. And that's the way they built it. The people that, the people that had the house, that lost the house at foreclosure um had built this and they had used it as some sort of storage and cars. We submitted a couple of pictures that show that uh there are pull-down stairs in the middle of the garage. And um they weird peak, it looks like almost that it could be an automa, automotive facility where you might want to use the peak to pull out an engine or something like that. The inside is totally bare, nothing on the walls. And it's not used as any residence. The upstairs is accessed only by pull-down stairs. Um, and there's no intention of ever using it the other way.
I see you're talking about the detached garage at the parcel. Um, we do, we do have uh old violations indicating three apartments in that garage, and you're saying that those have been removed.
Um, that's, I'm not saying anything about it, but it's hard to believe.
That's what they're telling you.
Totally got it.
All right, and, and you've indicated that there's two floors.
To what?
Two floors in the garage.
Yes, there's an upstairs and there's the main level.
And the upstairs, you say, is, is accessed by a pull-down stair?
By only a pull-down stairs. So I don't understand how anybody would live up there with a pull-down stairs.
Have you, have you been in the detached garage yourself?
Yes.
Have you been in, in, in the upper?
Yes, I have.
Upper floor. What is the height of the ceiling in the upper floor?
Uh, probably eight, seven feet, seven, eight feet.
All right, so you're here for um the total height of the garage. You, you, you are aware, you should be aware that you should also be seeking, if you'd like to maintain the garage as, as a garage, uh you would need a ceiling height in excess of six feet. It's a separate variance at the building department. If they knew about the height would have denied um before. I don't see that here, but we can, we can deal with that um by just having you go back and getting denied for that relief. In terms of the garage, is there a heat source or plumbing presently?
There's no heat source. There's no plumbing, but there really is a nice two-twenty electric service for whatever they use that for at the time.
Uh, did, did it appear to you that there was a heat source or plumbing at one point that was partially removed or, or?
No, that's why I don't understand why they would have three, how they would have three apartments. Maybe, maybe the price of the electric heat drove them to foreclosure.
Uh, that's, that, that may be the case. In terms of the um square footage of the garage, and since you started on it, I guess we could take the structure now. Um, I do see that in turn, its footprint is not significant in terms of the code permission, meaning what are you, about forty-six square feet over there?
Yes.
Forty-two square feet over. The height of the garage, though, at twenty point four-five feet is about fifty percent above code permissions. And uh because of that, um I wondered if you did any research to determine whether or not there are similar height structures in the neighborhood.
There's nothing quite that high, right? There's nothing quite that high, but right next door, there's a uh one that was called sixteen feet, but I think it's more like seventeen feet. So we're getting close.
Well, twenty and seventeen are different, or even twenty and sixteen are different. I'm not sure if, do you know whether the, the structure is there pursuant to an action of this board?
The sixteen-foot one, yes, it is.
It is. Uh so, so there is precedent for some um height um permissions in this neighborhood, at least up to sixteen feet that you know.
That's correct. Now, this, this hardship was created many, many years ago. And um my, my client wants to get this thing straightened out.
All right, when, when you say hardship, what, what hardship are you talking about? I mean, obviously, an old, a previous owner built the garage without a permit.
Yes. Now, there is another thing that I'd like to bring up, but I'm not sure, is that when these uh parcels at the end of a road, this is on a end of a road that's across the street. Uh, a lot of times, the town cannot find exactly what happened because there are there are abandonments and some of the records were caused, were uh filed as cross streets. Even though it's not a cross street.
What, what records do you think we're missing here?
Well, we, we tried to fi, find um the, if there was a permit issue for that garage to be built many years ago.
I think that your bird is challenging Ms. DeVito's cuckoo clock, if that's possible.
Hold on one second.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's fine.
I just, I just closed the office, so that's.
All right. So, but what, what records do you believe maybe?
They could be. I'm not saying I, I, I just find, I've found that in the, in the past that, that the files in the old card system when this was built could have been a little bit cumbersome for them to find.
Have you looked at the aerials to see when, approximately when it was erected?
Uh, yes, the.
And what did you figure out?
Actually fifteen years ago.
Probably fifteen years ago?
Yeah. And they were still using those cards up until about six years ago.
All right.
We're not, we can't say that there is, but uh we're under, under the opinion that it could be.
But in, in, and just getting back to the structure itself, um in the neighborhood that, as far as you were able to tell, did you see any detached garages above or twenty feet or above?
No.
And any detached structures that appear to be higher than the primary residence?
Um, I think the one next door seems to be higher than the.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
You, the application also includes relief for um in addition, a rear addition to the house that was done also without permit. Uh, it looks like you're holding twenty-nine feet. Did you want to tell us anything about that?
Okay, the cellar entrance was installed basically when the house was built. And uh probably that's where the apartments were, uh in that basement. Um, and uh they put a cover over the cellar entrance and that would, that's what constitutes the uh encroachment.
So, so there's, you filed for permits for this um house. And the permits include the installation of an outside entrance. Um, so are, is there going to be another outside entrance installed?
No, that's the one that we got the permits for. Then, then it might have not been CO'd at the time.
All right, so that's an existing one that you, that you sought a permit for.
Yes.
And what, in terms of renovation of the dwelling, can you tell us what um, what did your client is doing?
He's uh finishing the downstairs, the basement. Uh, there are no doors downstairs. Uh, it's uh one small room that uh, that you can get into. There's a uh, the burner, of course, is there in the basement. And uh, there's a main room in the basement that could be used as uh, you know, whatever. Um, there is a bathroom, full bath in the basement. The second floor is a regular house plan with um two bedrooms. Open kitchen. It runs from the front to the back. Upstairs is two additional bedrooms. Uh, because the dormer that was put on it was only a partial dormer.
All right, all right. Um, thank you. Is there anything from the board on this application? Uh, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chair, I have no speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. All right, Mr. Allen, I don't hear anything further on the application. I do note with this hit, with this type of history, and again, referring to violation, V zero five five three three zero and.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lindsay, yes.
All right, I, I might have missed a part for a minute, like door, ran out the door chasing the Amazon guy. Only took a second.
I had a camera.
Were there pictures, um, did you supply us pictures with that garage scene, how you were in there?
I thought we did, yes.
Okay. I did not know if we did.
I'm checking now. Hold on.
Mr. Lindsay, the, the photos that were supplied to me were only of the exterior. I have nothing of the interior. Not posts right now, the photos that were supplied.
Okay, and there was violations of apartments from what I understood?
And I, I'd also like to disagree with that. I think that the.
It's old violations to a, to the last owner, not to the present owner.
If we don't have any pictures or anything and it's that big of a garage, can we send in an inspector?
Absolutely.
Well, I was asking Mr. DeChant.
Yes, and I was just actually asking Mr. Allen that when you began the questioning. That, no, 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 that's, that's fine. I think that's a good idea, Mr. Allen. If you have that authority to give us, we can set that up and hold you to uh the future hearing.
As long as we have, you know, the standard notice, we'll have somebody there with a key.
I believe that you need to contact the.
He has to contact the building department and.
Do you have any question about what to do? Just please call us, call us during business hours and we'll, we'll.
We've done that before.
All right.
The Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
I just have one question for Mr. Allen. Uh, the hay loft door that it appears to be on this. Uh, is that a functional door?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, you may want to address that with the building department and the inspector.
Okay.
All right, and while the matter is being held over, Mr. Allen, I, I'm gonna suggest to you that if you, if the applicant intends to maintain the height in the storage area um above the, above the garage, that additional denial needs to be issued and um notice to the public. So I'm going to not, I'm gonna keep you within thirty days. If you need that additional relief, um you may have to change the date to incorporate all the relief requested in, in, in addition to what Mr. Cunha just um offered you. But I have. We're checking on dates now. March twenty-fourth. And what's today? Oh, the eighth. All right. Mr. John, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, um, we'll hold you to the next date that we have within the thirty-day period, which is March twenty-fourth. I don't know that you're going, I don't believe you're going to get the inspection done by then, and I also believe that if you need additional relief, you're not going to be ready to proceed back. So if you need additional time, please let us know. And we will, um, we will consider your request for an adjournment at the March twenty-fourth hearing. Okay?
Okay, so you wanted denial for the, for the extra feet upstairs and you want an inspection? Anything else?
Uh, and I would certainly look into Mr. Cunha, what Mr. Cunha pointed out, that you have an operational door at the second level.
Uh, we'll probably, we probably, we will look into that, but probably be easier to just close it off.
All right, um, with that, with that said, then is there any further comment from the board? If not, unless our motion is held over until March twenty-four. I'll take, I'll take the motion from Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Vega, do we have anyone here on case number seven?
Um, Mr. Chair, I don't have anybody on case seven.
Uh, no, no one here on case number seven. So any of the, any of the attendees that are sitting waiting to be heard. Uh, case number seven, which was previously called, which we did not receive. Which we did not get an applicant for. Uh, I believe it was Anthony in Maribel in Parto. Um, with, uh, by showing us through the Q and A chat system or raising a hand, is anyone here to speak uh as a, and applicant's representative on that case? All right, I'm gonna ask the board then to, for a motion to hold that matter over until March twenty-fourth.
So move.
Back it.
Motion second, have it made all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Just be with us one moment, please. All right, board members, we have the holdover um calendar ahead of us. Uh, I think, I believe three or four of the cases on the holdover calendar are original applications. As a result, I'm going to suggest uh that we take a fifteen-minute break here, is what have a motion for that brief recess. Motion and second, have it made all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sixteen of July first, two thousand twenty, Herb Bainon, twenty-seven Skylark Lane, Stony Brook. East side of Skylark Lane, one hundred and two feet south of Standish Lane, Stony Brook. Applicant requests rear yard and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one-story garage addition.
And do we have an applicant here?
Mr. Chair, I have an Eric Jornby.
Sir, I see that you are in the process of being promoted. If you could just put your video and audio on. We will be able to see near you. All right, so I think that we can see you. Are you able to hear us?
Yes.
All right, you're, uh, can I ask you just to please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to the truth, the whole truth, but, but the truth.
I do.
And your, your appearance for the record, sir.
Good evening to the board. My name is Eric B. Ornaby. I'm the applicant of record and the architect for the project.
Thank you, Mr. B. Ornaby. The record should reflect regarding this application that it was initially heard by the board. I believe it was July first, two thousand twenty. The board did issue a decision um limiting the side yard setback um in its decision. Uh, subsequently, there was a request uh on behalf of the applicant for the board uh for a rehearing based upon newly found documents indicating that the board had prior action in the area with a more limited setback, and you're here to propose that setback eight foot on behalf for, for the applicant for this, for this parcel. Is that generally correct?
Correct.
All right, let me ask the board to incorporate, a motion to incorporate the minutes of the prior proceeding. Motion made and seconded all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Then, sir, you've given us your appearance. Please present um on behalf of the applicant concerning the side yard request.
Uh, so we presented uh in July first, twenty twenty for a proposed seven-foot side yard. Uh, which allowed for an exist, uh proposed structure to be eleven point six-three feet extension for the garage. We were granted ten foot after working with the client extensively to try and work around what would possibly be an acceptable garage extension. We were not able to come up with something that worked. Um, the front of the building is kind of misleading because that twenty-seven uh point nine six feet on the width, a portion of that is actually uh into the into the residence, uh and is like an L-shaped garage in the front. So there's a little recess there. Uh, so the garage is, is significant, significantly um less wide than that. And Mr. and Mrs. Bainon are seniors that want to be able to park in the garage, uh both be able to pull and park. Uh, and then on the back of the garage, you're, we're gonna be looking for some storage, uh because there is no basement in the residence. Um, we would now like to propose an eight-foot side yard. Uh, that would be twenty-seven point seven feet total side yard. Uh, the clients believe that they can make that work, and we found examples of other approved eight-foot variances in, in the immediate area. Um, the property is in a regular pie-shaped property that is approximately sixteen thousand six hundred and eighty-five square feet in a B-one residence, which is slightly less than the minimum requirement of the lot in the area of twenty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, we are proposing for the one-story to be approximately five hundred and sixty-five square feet. Um, that is setback further than the, the right side of the building, so there's no uh encroachment into the existing front yard. Uh, so that's accept, acceptable. And uh it actually requires a forty-foot setback, which is being required, which is being met. Since the property goes on an angle, uh the variance is, is only um slightly used. slightly used as in the back of the structure. Uh, there's going to be a 10.83 setback uh, in the back of the structure, but because it's a pie shape and we're going parallel to the side of the building. Uh, we're looking seeking for that that variance on the front corner. Uh, the examples that we found in the area that had those those setbacks provided and granted uh, were parallel and did maintain the setback along the entire structure. Um, so we would be less than than what's been granted in other structures. In the addition, it's going to be a garage and in the back is going to be a mechanical space uh, and and some storage. So it's it's not going to be uh, any kind of space that would be inhabited. So.
Thank you, sir. In support of the your request on behalf of the applicant for a rehearing, uh, you made specific, uh, reference to prior board action in the neighborhood, and I think only blocks away. Are you able to specify for that on the record for the board's? Just a refresh of the board's recollection.
Yeah. So my clients live in the S section in East of Tocqueet. And we located a property just around the corner from them at 40 Sycamore Circle uh, in Stony Brook that received the similar variance, uh, with within the same type of zoning of a B1. Uh, as per
Eight foot side yard, right?
That was an eight foot side yard. Uh, as per ZBA 774058, uh, an eight foot side yard and 27 total side yard was granted case number nine, um, January 8th, 2003. Uh, the permit on that is still active. We're seeking, uh, less than that with an eight foot side yard only in the front portion of the building, which gets greater as it goes further back. And a 27.7 total. So that this is, uh, we're seeking a variance that is less than what's been provided in the immediate area.
Thank you, sir.
One one other thing to note is that this is the last house on the street that faces this direction. So immediately next to it on the north side of the building is a corner property that faces the other street. So um, there's, there's no, uh, real immediate issue with the adjacent property.
Meaning that the the rear yard is of that parcel is about the side yard of this one.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Is there is there anything else from the board on this? Admittedly, because we have the prior record, um, included the the entire application was previously vetted by the board. It was only the setback that we were looking at. The applicant has brought to us proof of prior board action. So on that specific issue of the setback, is there anything further from the board? All right, I'm not hearing anything. Do we have any speakers, Mr. Vega? Mr. Chair, I have no speakers on this case. Thank you. Does it bother a motion?
Chairman of closing hold.
That motion is by Mr. Cunha to close and hold. Mr. Lindsay seconds it all in favor. Any opposed motion carries? Thank you very much, sir. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, the holdovers, um, case number 21 of February 24th, 2021. I think it's February 10, 2021. Mercy Center Ministries, Inc., care of Woodhull Expediting. 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, properties located on the northwest corner. Week Street and Atlantic Avenue, Blue Point. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed second story deck with stairs. Side yard and rear yard variances for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Vito, your appearance, please.
Amy DeVito, Woodhull Expediting with offices at 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. I'm just gonna ask you to go so as possible. I see it's 5:57 with three minutes to the cuckoo clock again.
Mr. Chairman, I will begin until such time with the cuckoo clock rings. Uh, Mr. Chairman, where we last left off, you had specifically requested that I in and submit a floor plan of the home so that we could become better oriented on uh, why the staircase needed to be where it was. So, um, there I hadn't been in the home at that time of the last hearing. Since then, I have been in the home. I, um, this floor plan was provided to me by the owner, Mercy Center Ministries. And I I took the floor plan with me to the house and I I I checked it against the actual conditions and and this floor plan is accurate. So the assumption that I had made last time was that the kitchen and dining area were on the upper level, the second floor. It appears that at one time that that was the case, but interior alterations have been made. I believe prior to my client's ownership where the the main living area is actually on the lower level. And the bedrooms and if Anthony, yes, uh, so this is the upper level. So you'll see that there's four, uh, three bedrooms rather upstairs, the four bedrooms. And I'm just gonna pause a moment.
There should be six of those.
Can you hear me over the clock?
Yes, we can.
I don't know how
I personally think you're interrupting the clock, but go ahead.
All right, let's just let it go. Let it let it do it. Let's let it do it. All right. Next time I'll actually point the camera on it's you guys. Um, so so it's so the floor plan is actually opposite than what I assumed. So um, Anthony, if you could just scroll down some photos and, um, before you do that, actually, sorry. If you could, uh, just take a look at the, uh, room labeled the study. And then Anthony, if you could just scroll down to the interior photos. Okay, so that's the study right there, that picture and the one above it. Uh, those are the windows that you see on the exterior of the property. And and the the side that is the east side of the property. So so this area, um, is obviously used as a sitting area. We are proposing to put the door directly where the couch is located in this room. And the concern was that the board would be granting a pretty, uh, you know, pretty substantial variance where we are requesting for a second story deck, just four feet, 10 inches at its closest point. Um, but I did just want to touch on the fact that the reason why this particular location was chosen was because clearly there is, you know, a a blank wall there that can have a door cut into it as opposed to putting a door on the other side, which is, uh, would require removal of windows and reconfiguration. Uh, moreover, and Anthony, if you could just go to the exterior photos. Okay, so moreover, in order for us to put the staircase on this elevation or this side of the home, it would require us to probably alter the roof over that creates the exit from the lower level dining room. Uh, we would also have to relocate or remove the windows. Um, I went to the home and I measured the roof over. And that is actually just over nine feet at its peak from grade. The staircase would begin at just below 10 feet. So it would just be a very tight tight area between the roof over and the deck. Most importantly, the staircase itself, the way that we have it designed, it would be, um, in total length about 18 feet. A four foot six platform and then a a a set of stairs that will stretch about 12 feet across. So that the staircase would effectively go right into the driveway, um, which for obvious reasons would not be safe. Uh, and we do not want to lose any parking because this is a really unique lot and it's on a corner and we don't want anybody to park on the street at any point. So the parking is is really kind of precious for this lot. We also considered, uh, you know, turning the stair, making it more of a turned staircase to go down, but that would interfere with the lower level exit. Um, so it just, it 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 really just doesn't seem feasible. And again, I know that the board's um, job is to grant the least very, uh, the least variance possible. But in this case, because of the unique width of the rear yard, we we virtually have no choice but to request a variance to achieve the emergency exit that we need for the second floor. And I am happy to answer any questions board behalf.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Amy, you stated that you need that for an emergency exit just now. Uh, so you're saying from the second story in the common area, there's only one exit. It's out the down the stairs and out the front door?
That's correct.
Okay, um, and this is actually, it looks like a high ranch that's been converted many almost to unorthodox use of a high ranch, really. Uh, it's completely converted back to, I think, a colonial almost layout.
It is similar to a colonial layout. So if you go back to the floor plans, um, Anthony, if you don't mind. So you'll see that, um, and again, this this, uh, this home functions as a residence for women between the ages of 16 and 21 with children that otherwise do not have homes. So it is, it is, you know, uh, an unusual layout for that specific reason in general. Um, you you could see that there is a small office. That's where the the, um, house coordinator works. Uh, there's always somebody, um, from Mercy Center Ministries, um, manning the house, so to speak. Uh, but this is the lower level that you're looking at. And and again, the dining room and kitchen are actually in this part of the home where they appear to have one at one time been in the upper level of the home, there's a laundry room, uh, which appears to have once been a kitchen. There is still some cabinetry, but there's a washer and dryer in there, uh, just a little utility sink. Uh, I actually drew these in so the board could get a better idea, but no stove, no cooking facilities, nothing like that. So it is not a second kitchen.
So now, um, the study where the windows that you pointed out, they're on the back of the study on the same wall as the sink. Don't change it, Anthony, not yet. Um, is that correct?
No, the, um, windows are actually located on the east side of the house. So the windows there that you see are on the study too, if you're looking at it the way we are to the right.
Okay, so then where the couch was is that shared wall with the laundry. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Small. Um, and in a typical high ranch, that would have in a typical property size and everything else, that would probably been a sliding glass door out to the out to the backyard. Um, okay, and so they so somebody must have closed something up or there was there ever an entrance there?
There's a an old CO for a deck, um, which I'm assuming came out of some part of this area, like either one of those sides, the window or the couch side.
Any of the do you have any aerials that would have shown this?
I don't I don't see it in the aerial. I don't know if maybe you guys would have a better eye than I do, but I can't.
So you don't have any historical aerial showing?
When I go back to, um, 2001, it I I I just can't make it out. Um, before that, it's extremely blurry and impossible. So I I'm just, I'm not entirely sure where there was once a deck. I just know that it was in that general vicinity because it it there it wouldn't have been anywhere else.
Okay, um, and so all the bedrooms on the second floor?
Yes.
The all the bedrooms on the second floor. Okay. All right, and, um, you have two bathrooms up here. You have study and no kitchen, just a laundry. Um.
And I have a photo of the laundry area. If you want to see it, Mr. Cunha. I didn't submit it because I didn't know if it was going to be relevant, but I do have it. So that way
Laundry kind of looks like a second kitchen.
Yeah, it's it. There's the, you know, the the sink still remains, but there's a, you know, washer machine there. And then, um, there's still all the cabinetry, but in place of what was once the stove, there's a dryer. Um, and, uh, you know, just the cabinetry. So a little
The range hood is still there.
It's still there, actually. And when I was there, I said, you guys probably want to remove that just for purposes of consistency, which they didn't have a problem with.
But they also have a microwave in the laundry room.
They do because, um, like I said, there is a, um, this is a, uh, a, uh, this is housing for, uh, women that live together. And, um, there's obviously bedrooms and children, you know, upstairs and for convenience purposes for heating up uh, food for the children and things like that. It they just keep a microwave up there.
Okay.
But it does not function as a kitchen.
Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have any speakers on this application?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any speakers on this.
And Mr. Vito, finally, you did speak to the east side of the dwelling. Um, the west side has a central hallway, which would put the, um, stairway in the side yard, but not four or some odd feet from a rear property line. What was the reason why the stairway couldn't be placed there?
So this floor plan, that bedroom four is actually a closed bedroom. Um, I I don't know why it shows open on the plan, but maybe it was just an error when they acting it. I have no idea, but that I was in the house and that's actually a closed bedroom.
And then the center is, it looks like a center hallway, very wide hallway, but it's into area that's open, common area.
I know I don't, the hallway doesn't extend to the
To the outer wall?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. Um, I don't have a picture of that and I wish I did, but no, it it doesn't extend that far down.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you. Uh, if there is nothing further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, um, I move to close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha and the motion is to close and hold. Second was Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Mr. Chair. It seems like it seems like I have a late person raising their hand.
On on this application?
Yes.
Mr. Vito, are you still with us?
Doesn't look like she is.
All right, we're going to try to get her back. Why don't you promote the person and we will inquire? Just be with us a moment, please.
Mr. Chairman, shouldn't you shouldn't we wait for Mr. DeVito to come back before you?
I was just gonna promote, not do anything, but
Okay.
We're working on that as we speak.
Should we also open?
Yes, just, uh, just be with me a moment.
I did try and contact her earlier in the chat.
I believe that we're getting her now.
Also, this Maggie person is not responding. Here we go.
I'm sorry, I not very good with this. I just had a question about the uh, the Mercy Center House. Um, my only question about that is, um,
Ma'am, I'm just gonna hold you there just for a moment, please. We're pulling, we're bringing back in the applicant's representative.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito back. Apologize.
I'm here. I can hear everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Vega, Mr. Vito. Thank you for coming back. We're gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the board for motion to reopen. He's 21, uh, in the name of Mercy Center Ministries of February 10 or 24. Motion by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? I apologize, um, that we do have a speaker and, uh, we did close. So ma'am, uh, you've 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 come up. I'm gonna ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Okay.
So I'm is where to tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Let's start with your your name and address, please.
It's Marie, M A R I E Bush, B U S C H, 36 Week Street. Blue Point.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for not bringing you up sooner. Ms. Bush, what would you like to add to the conversation we had about this application?
I actually just had a question as on the property to the west, why can't the staircase for the second floor, that that's a huge, you know, portion of their lot? Why can't the staircase not go on that side?
And you're specifically referring to the west side?
Yes, the west side.
That was the part of the final discussion we had on the application. There is a bedroom on that side, so that it would access a bedroom as opposed to a common area or hallway. Mr. Vito, um, that was my understanding. Did you want to clarify that further?
Yes, um, so, um, Ms. Bush, we we were, the board and I were speaking of that earlier and as you could see on this side of the home, on the west side of the home, that's where the bedrooms are concentrated. Uh, the floor plan Uh, the floor plan has a break in the lines, but in the actual interior of the house, there is, I believe, just a very narrow hallway leading to the bathroom. And then, uh, most of that wall that you see for bedroom four actually comes down into the hallway and almost closes that area off. So it just wouldn't be feasible to have an exit in that area because of the width and, and really because of the request of the state who actually, um, monitors this type of use. They do want a rear emergency exit, which would bring us to the, the common area known as the study on this floor plan.
Okay, okay. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending.
Since we opened it back up again, can I ask Mr. DeVito one more question?
Yes, Mr. Cunha.
Amy, uh, this plan doesn't look to scale, so that hallway seems exaggerated almost, is it?
Yes, that's correct. And that's what I was saying earlier before we, uh, closed the hearing, that this, this isn't to scale. And I don't believe it was prepared by, by any professional. I'm actually not sure who prepar, prepared it. It was provided to me uh, from the owners, but apparently was something that they just had in their file that was a bit older. Um, when I went into the house to take a look at everything, um, that back bedroom actually does close more than what you see on this plan. I'm not sure why there's a break in the lines on the plan, but it, it's definitely a closed bedroom. And, um, access from that hallway, right? I, I don't think it's completely closed like that. There is a small area that leads to the bathroom, but access to that side of the house for an exit wouldn't be feasible.
No, I understand because it's not a common area. Uh, the study would be considered a common area and, uh, and a way out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, is there a motion, a motion to reclose? Motion second, I'm in, oh, in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We'll move on to, uh, the next matter.
Case number is twenty-six and twenty-six A of February ten, two thousand twenty-one. Danny Sabatino, care of Christine Nicole, eighteen Railroad Avenue, Centima Riches. Location, east side right of way, opposite east of right of way to Tut Hill Point Road, East Riches. Applicant request, front yard setback variance for proposed one family dwelling. The existing dwellings to be demolished. And applicant request, front yard setback variance for proposed covered deck. Height variance for proposed twenty-nine foot high two-story cabana with balcony and steps to be located in the required front yard, not permitted. Side yard variance for proposed second story landing with stairs attached to said cabana. Side yard variances for proposed pool deck in conjunction with proposed dwelling.
Mr. Chair, I have Christine Nicole for the applicant. I also have the applicant, uh, as an attendee, as well as several speakers.
Can you pull up the applicant, um, and Ms. Nicole, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Good to see you back. Um, Ms. Nicole, you've previously been sworn. Just start with your appearance for the record.
Sure. Christine Nicole, agent for the applicant. My office is at eighteen Railroad Avenue in Centima Riches.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. This matter was previously, previously went to public hearing, um, on February ten, two thousand twenty-one and was held over. Um, as since that time, as I understand it, the applicant through your office submitted a revised plan which has been provided to the Office of the Board of Zoning Appeals. That plan was reviewed by the board's planner. Christopher Reed is, um, here, um, and we would, I'd like to take his testimony first.
Following is a supplemental staff report for the above referenced application, which was heard on February ten and was held open by the Board of Appeals for the applicant to submit a revised plan, which is depicted as the plot plan prepared by Kerry Kazel dated March one, twenty twenty-one. And the applicant proposes to erect a two-story dwelling with decking, two-story cabana and swim pool on the fifty-three thousand, two hundred and two square foot parcel. Relief requested is as follows. For the dwelling, front yard of forty-six feet proposed, fifty feet required. The cabana, twenty-three feet height proposed, eighteen feet permitted. Side yard, ten feet proposed, twenty-five feet required. And for the deck, a thirty-nine foot front yard is proposed, fifty feet required. The summon substance of the revised plan reduces the front yard of both the dwelling and deck by one foot and four feet respectively. With regard to the cabana, the height was reduced by six feet. And while the relief for its location in the front yard was eliminated, eliminated, it was relo, relocated to the side yard requiring relief. The existing swim pool and decking is intended to be removed. Where in the prior application proposed a ten-foot side yard and this free relief has also been eliminated. The proposed pool now enjoys a conforming fifteen-foot setback. The application is a type-two action, and should the board look favorably, consideration should be given imposing certain covenants with regard to the use of the cabana.
For the record, then, those are the supplemental comments of the board's planner. Uh, Ms. Nicole, what did you like to add today? What would you like to add today?
Okay, I want to address some of the neighbors' concerns. Uh, as you can see, we have, uh, significant changes made to the application. Um, as Mr. Reed stated, we're removing the existing swimming pool, and this had a certificate of compliance. Um, we wanted to keep the pool and we were working around it. But by replacing the pool, we can relocate it and the cabana to a more conforming location. There's nothing wrong with the pool, but we're removing it. Um, the two-story cabana is now twenty-three point two feet high rather than the twenty-nine feet. It will have a storage area below of eight feet from the top of the grade to the floor joists. There will be garage door on the water side for easy access for the storage. The cabana will be fifteen by forty oblong instead of twenty by thirty. It will not have a balcony, is no longer in the required front yard. It is, however, in the side yard. And we did have a, uh, an existing garage in the side yard. Uh, the pool deck will be thirty-eight point eight feet from the front yard, as well as the covered wraparound porch to the house. Um, the sanitary system, which was questioned, is permitted to be five feet from the property line in the front. It's totally underground except for the covers. The right-of-way, that was a big question. The right-of-way was created in nineteen seventy-nine when Mr. Flor's property and the Sabatino's property was split. The right-of-way was conveyed by Frederick David to Somerset Associates. It gave access to these two parcels, and that is all that it should be used for. Since the last hearing, Mr. Sabatino did remove any light poles that were on this right-of-way. The right-of-way is strictly for access to Mr. Sabatino's property and Mr. Flor's property. Mr. Rainesby's view should not be affected by our proposal. His view is compromised by the heavy vegetation on his property. We will be removing the existing garage cabana that is partially on his property and, uh, and has encroached on his property. Mr. Hollander was before this, uh, was before this board a few years ago. He had similar issues with garages in the, uh, with a garage in the front yard and the height issue. Mr. Sabatino plans on using this house for his family, and he wanted to address the neighbors', uh, reasonable concerns as a neighbor. We feel that these changes do address the neighbors' issues. Does any question?
Yes, let, let me just stop you there if I could. So in terms of the application, we have a little bit of housekeeping to do in terms of amending their requests for relief. All right, I think that was Mr. Wisdom. But, uh, Mr. Cole, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, so in terms of the request for relief, the original application sort of front yard setback for the residents at forty-five point two feet, I believe the revised plan, um, require, uh, allows you to amend the application to increase that setback from forty-five point two to forty-six feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the, to the covered deck, um, of the residence, setback was originally proposed at thirty-five feet. And based upon the revised survey, it appears as though you can amend or request an amendment from thirty-five feet to thirty-eight point eight feet. Is that correct?
That's.
Two-story cabana, originally the height request was, um, the height was twenty-nine feet, it's now twenty-three point two feet by revised survey. Um, and so that, uh, was that part of the relief request, the height of the cabana?
Yes.
Yes, so that you can, you were requesting an amendment of the application from twenty-nine feet for the cabana to twenty-three point two.
Right, with no balcony. The balcony was removed.
No balcony. Um, and in terms of the location of the cabana, are you, are you requesting to eliminate the relief for the, uh, front yard nature of the cabana?
Yes, we are.
Meaning you're now proposing it not forward to the front foundation, but in the, within the side yard?
Yes, sir.
So you're admitting to eliminate the request for, uh, cabana in the front yard?
Yes, and to amend it to include it in the side yard.
Uh, and, um, with regard to the pool was, does, does the revised plan alter if there are any requests for the pool?
No.
It says side yard variances for, for proposed pool deck.
Pool deck, but not the pool.
All right. So, so, um, with the, does one other motion, that motion first to amend the prior application based upon the revised survey?
So moved.
Motion made in second, it all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. With the pool, with the cabana in the, the side yard, Ms. Nicole, I think that you're aware that, um, addition, an additional denial needs to be issued from the building department and notice to the public, uh, for public hearing. Because the, the nature of the request for relief has changed. So you, you have that understanding?
Yes, I do.
So, and after we are, after we hear, on behalf of the applicant and any, anyone wishing to speak on the application this evening, you, you realize we're holding over again so that you can get the final relief side, the cabana in the side yard.
Yes.
And noticed. All right.
Yes.
Um, was there anything else that you wanted then to, to?
No, I'd like to just hear what the neighbors have to say.
All right. Before I do that, does the board have any questions? All right then, um, Ms., uh, Nicole, you do have the, uh, your client here. Um, I believe we've promoted, um, him. Do you, uh, do you want me to check whether or not he wants to add anything or should we save his testimony?
Yes.
All right. Uh, sir, would you see, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Very good. It's good to see you again. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, please.
Please raise your right hand. You saw me swear to the truth, the whole truth, about the truth. Yes.
And you, uh, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Danny Sabatino, eighty-six Argon Place, Dwight Park, New York, one-one-oh-four.
Thank you, Mr. Sabatino. What would you like to add in addition to the comments we received from Ms. Nicole this evening?
Um, I just wanted to add, like I said, uh, that I did take, uh, in consideration all, all that the neighbors, uh, had said to me in the previous meeting. Um, wasn't aware about blocking anybody's view, so I kind of, um, made the changes as you're seeing to try to make, um, the neighbors, um, uh, a little bit more happier, uh, than the previous design. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, sir. I, I will say on behalf of the board, we appreciate the fact that you did, that we look at the, um, the proposal before us. And I think that we, I'll take the neighbors' comments now, and if you'd like to give us any further comment, I'll be happy to take that.
No, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Vega, how many speakers do we have?
We have three speakers that are identified.
All right, if, if there is anyone, um, else that is sitting as an attendee, wishing to speak on this application, please indicate to us, to the, the Q and A chat or raising the hand or renaming yourself, identifying the, this case twenty-six and twenty-six A. But in the interim, Mr. Vega, let me ask you to bring up the three persons that, that have indicated a wish to speak on the application.
I have Alec Rainesby, Danny, uh, Danny Cammer, um, and Nick Flor.
Voice record.
All right, I see one, two, it looks like I see all three of you. Gentlemen, can you, um, please unmute yourselves? Hmm, and, uh, I see two of you have unmuted yourself. Gentlemen, identified as Danny. K A M M E R. Sir, can you, can you put your video on and unmute yourself, please? All right, uh, let's start with what, gentlemen, with, uh, with those who have, um, uh, I think we, we have, all right, sir, just, uh, we now see you with video, if you can unmute yourself.
It doesn't look like you have an app named Voice Record.
I do have a background noise. Anyone not speaking, can you please mute yourselves? Very good, sir. Are you able to hear us now?
I can hear you, yes.
Very good, thank you. Um, let me ask you each to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Please raise your right hand. You saw me swear to the truth, the whole truth, about the truth.
I do.
Do.
I do.
Thank you. Uh, gentlemen, uh, you realize that we don't see full names, I believe. Is it Alex?
Alan. Alec with a C.
Alec, I apologize, sir. Let's start with you, um, your name and address, please.
Sure. Alec Rainesby, fifty Tut Hill Point Road, East Riches, one-one-nine-four-zero. I'm the property, and you can see my property actually right there. Uh, the property right behind Danny Sabatino.
So you, you would be with the, with the number fifty?
Correct.
All right, and, and welcome back, sir. What did you want to add, um, to this evening's, uh, hearing?
Yeah, uh, so a few things. So first off, uh, I do want to recognize that Danny made some changes that were in the right direction, so appreciate that. I sorry took out the lamppost on my property, appreciate that too. And then I just want to reflect back. So I believe at the last hearing, uh, Ms. Nicole was asked to send, uh, copies of the plans to all of the neighbors. So the first thing I will say is I did not receive any of the copies of any plans from Ms. Nicole. I received, uh, noticed that she was moving the cabana. And I have now seen a copy of these plans. I got a copy from them from Lori yesterday. So that's a little disappointing, but, um, we'll move on from there.
Well, it, it, I'll make it less disappointing for you. We still have, need to have a public hearing on that very location. Uh, first, the applicant needs to get denied from the billing department, then a notice will be sent mail to you and, um, published in the paper, and we will be back.
Okay.
On, on, on the location.
On the location of the, uh, so-called cabana?
In the side yard, yes.
Great. Yes, forty, uh, forty by, uh, fifteen foot cabana. I, I don't know, seems huge to me. I thought it was only supposed to have one room according to the plans I've looked at so far. It has two, two rooms and a bathroom in it. I don't know, seems, I don't know, seems too big for a cabana in my mind. Uh, I'm, the, the planners I look through, as I look at the first floor, it's, there's something in there labeled a pool changing room in the house. So if you have a pool changing room in the house, and then you have this huge structure that looks more like a guest house to me, which is how the garage was used before, that's one of my concerns. Second concern I have is that I still am concerned, I appreciate it's a little lower, but I'm still concerned that it affects my views. In fact, I think it still affects my views. Um, so I think that will affect my properties and the view from the property, from my property. Um, so that's, uh, that's one point I have. The other point that I would like to make is that, um, Tut Hill Point is a very, is a very special place. For those of you who had a chance to visit, it is a very special place. Those board members, I invite you over to my property, you'll love it. Um, I am the new guy on the block, and I have lived there twenty years. So we don't get a lot of turnover, we don't get a lot of new people, we love where we are. Uh, and the Sabatinos have been there longer than I have, so I will, I will add that too. But what I am, uh, what, what I'd like to convey is that of the parcels of land off, off this right-of-way that myself and Colonel Cuthbert own, this is the smallest of the plots of land off of that. And what we are seeing here is a proposal to build by far the largest house off of there. Much larger than my house. My house is ninety feet from my property lines. And so what I see here is a really large house. I, I, I didn't count all of the bedrooms, I believe there might be eight. Uh, and obviously Danny should put in as many bedrooms as he, as he needs, so I, I get that. But it means it's a huge structure. It is big, built a lot, and no, none of the other structures on this point look like that. So it is completely, completely, I'm sorry, do you have to interrupt me? Can you just wait? Maybe you should just go unmute right now.
Yeah, I, I, I actually don't know where the background noise is coming from. Again, I'll ask everyone, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, so in my opinion, out of character, it is, it's a beautiful looking home. I have not, don't, so Danny, please, uh, please don't take offense. I'm not, I'm not, I think you've designed something that, it's just huge, it's just huge. And that's the concern, that's the biggest concern I have. It, so the concerns are, it blocks my view. It impairs the privacy I have on my own property with these, uh, higher decks. And, and as I walk around. And and as I walk around my property and look at this house, this house is huge. And then with its size, it doesn't leave much room for parking. So in the past, I've seen lots of people parking on my property. And as Ms. Nicole correctly points out, Danny Sabatino has a right of way. Absolutely, he has a right of way. He doesn't have a right to park on it. So I have a concern that he doesn't have enough parking there for the size of the house and the number of guests he's gonna have. So that's the other concern I have. Let me just check. I think they're the main. I think they're the main points I would put at this stage, just to give you another point of reference for my own statistics. My property is four point three acres. When I improved my house, I did not change the footprint of the house at all. It is exactly the same as it was when it was built. And as I said, I didn't need any variances. I think that's all I have to say at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, sir. Next person wishing to speak, gentlemen. How about sir with the green jacket on? Again, I'm not seeing names.
Yeah, apologize.
No, no problem. It's 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 the it's the platform we're using. We we I see holdover and in the beginning of the applicant's name. So why don't you for a state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Nick Flor. I'm at seventy three Tuttle Point Road. So I am kind of directly to the south of Mr. Sabatino's property there. You see it labeled as seventy three on the map.
We do, sir. And could you spell your last name for us?
It's F as in Frank, L U E H R.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for returning. What did you want to add this evening?
So I mean, honestly, I don't have a whole lot to add. I mean, I did reach out to Danny Sabatino earlier this week because I think as Alec expressed, we, you know, at the last hearing, we we made it very clear that we were concerned, I think, with the height and location of the cabana and the size of the house. And when Ms. Nicole promised to provide us plans, you know, we did get that that sort of sketch maybe a week and a half ago that said cabana to be relocated. We did get a a plot plan over the weekend that showed the relocated cabana. But it was it was very difficult to to honestly tell how high it was. So I I reached out to Danny Sabatino myself and, you know, just said, look, or, you know, what, we kind of need to know what you're planning here. You know, my hope, as I told him, was that it would be located, you know, at the level of the pool, not elevated, not obstructing views. But, you know, he did. He did convey that it would be twenty three feet tall. So, you know, I mean, I think Alec conveyed the fact that, you know, this this really is this point is a special place. I mean, Peter Cuthbert, number sixty nine, I think he's probably been there for over fifty years. Mr. Hollander has been there for a very long time. Frankly, the Sabatinos have been there for a very long time. And, you know, like any small community, I mean, we 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 have disagreements. I mean, Danny Cammerer, who, you know, is probably your next speaker, I mean, he, I did get a permit, as Chris Nicole pointed out, to to build a cabana at the end of my pool. And Danny objected that the board did approve it, but frankly, given the neighborhood and given the neighbors, I took heed of Mr. Cammer's remarks, and we we decided, hey, it's it's not worth it. We want to keep keep it as a, you know, a good neighborhood and one in which all the neighbors respect one another. So, you know, I I think on the basis of what I am now know, I think we are going to get these plans. There will be another hearing. I I agree with Alec that, you know, frankly, we want to see something that, you know, minimizes the the size of the house, the impact of the the potential additions. I mean, you know, I'm I'm all for Danny having an attractive house and having his family there. And, you know, I've I've known him, you know, honestly, for the twenty years that I've been there. But but it is a unique neighborhood, and, you know, we just want to make sure that, and that's why I pressed Chris Nicole at the last year. And I said, listen, it's very important to see these plans to know what's being built. And, you know, I I don't want to have a gigantic, you know, massive structure or structures on, you know, as Alec points out, one of the smallest lots on the point. So, you know, we're all for improving, but just want to make sure it's in keeping with with the nature and character of the other homes. So that's, I think, pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for returning. Finally, Mr. Camera, you're still with us. Can you please state your name and address, please?
Danny Camera, seventy five Tuttle Point. I have the point on the end there.
We do see that, sir. What did you wish to add this evening?
I I think it's something a little more serious, though, that we need to to accept. I I know the some of the firemen up at East Riches and beginning with Stan Chenoma, when he was chief and the whole, and so I know I know a little bit about what they think when they go down there. One time when I was talking to them about different things, they said, listen, that road, I I think we might get a brush truck through there towards the end. It's an eight wide road, eight eight foot wide road. If you have people down there, if you get a fire, you're not going to get you, you, you're not going to get trucks in there. You yeah, and that's that's one of the things that you've got to address. And somebody has to be accountable for this because it is, it is a, I I don't know how, you know, long the road is. Must be what, three hundred yards or something like that? But you could barely get a, I mean, I mean, it's a, it's 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 a narrow road. It's a one-way road. And I think it's serious. If somebody wants to put a you know, you have to think about the the density of people down there. I mean, where are you going to put park? I mean, think about that. How are you going to get through? I think this has to be addressed. That's my, I'm I'm worried about the people and myself, of course. So that's what I have to say, sir.
Thank you very much. Questions or further comment from board members? Mr. Cole, did you?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Nicole. Nicole, how, as currently configured, how big is this? How many square feet is this house?
Danny, want to answer that? Oh, I have the plans.
Today it's fifty four hundred square feet.
Okay, and the the lot itself is how how many square feet?
Over acre.
So it's like, is it fifty thousand square feet?
Fifty two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. And go ahead. I'm sorry.
I I was just gonna add, Mr. Burson, as I understand the application, as proposed, the dwelling meets the minimum in total side yards for the for the under the zoning classification and is here for, I believe it's now a four-foot front yard variant. So
No, no, I understand that, Mr. Chairman. I was just, I just wanted the record to be clear as to what we were actually talking about in terms of a size of the house since the neighbors had brought it up. And I just, I just didn't remember specifically what the square footage was and the size, you know, and the size of the lot. But thank you.
And so with the decking, with the decking, I believe it becomes nine thousand square feet?
Mr. Chair.
I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Burson, I didn't mean to to interrupt that whole line of thought. Did I just want to make sure you were, you were done?
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted it clear in my mind and the record clear at this point that as far as habitable space was concerned, the the house was about five thousand square feet on a fifty thousand, over excessive fifty thousand square foot lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, though.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cunha.
Yeah, Mr. Bergson beat me to the to the punch on that one, but I needed to ask Ms. Nicole, what is the, what is the zoning in the area?
A one.
It is a one, so minimum forty thousand. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, this is the first time this is coming up as far as the house size goes. I sent the plans to everyone. I want to start out by, the board asked me to do that. I sent a survey showing the new location and everything we were doing. And immediately I sent by certified mail the plans to everyone. As Mr. Flor said, he received them. I don't know why Mr. Rainsby didn't. So that was sent out.
I did not receive, Chris, Chris, I did, Nicole, Mr. Nicole, I did not receive the plans. I I don't know when you sent them, but I I got a sketch of the house about a week and a half ago. With saying that.
What I would like, what we like us to do is just to have one speaker at a time. So, Mr. Flor, I know that you're not familiar with our process. If you could just wait until Ms. Nicole is done speaking and just indicate to me, please, that you would like to respond, I will be happy to let you do that. So, Ms. Nicole, you you were interrupted. Let me just let you continue with that.
Thank you so much. As I said, you did say, Mr. Flor, that it was crossed out. You got some plans sent to you, and it was crossed out about the cabana. That's true, because at that time, we didn't have the design for the cabana. So I did send you a set of plans that you're looking at right now. Um, okay, the changing room that's showing on the plans for the house was before we were deciding to do the cabana. That's why that's there. That's going to become a mudroom. Now, as far as Mr. Rainsby is concerned, he's about four hundred feet from the water, and he's got a ton of wetlands in front of him. That's why he doesn't have a view. It has nothing to do with what we're doing. And for somebody that's being so verbal during these hearings, I need to say that you should have your own paperwork in order. You have a second story, a one story.
All right, Mr. Cole, and the other thing that I won't hear is complaints about the status of another neighbor's property. Just like would like to limit us to the issues that.
Well, I just think it's a flaw that somebody would would complain about us when they don't have their their papers in order. As far as being too large, this fits within the footprint of the house. We have a lot of wetlands on our property. We're trying to make this more environmentally, you know, compatible. All right, and this is certainly, we have no problem with lot coverage on this. Mr. Hollander's house, Mr. Chairman, who also had written a letter, he has a piece of property in here. His house is eighty feet long. So, you know, it's not true when people are saying that ours is going to be the biggest house. That's not true. And then, as Mr. Flor did state, he was granted a twenty nine foot cabana, two-story, and he was renewing it. I don't know if he's renewed it recently, but he's been continually renewing this, okay, over the years. I haven't checked to see if he's renewed it recently. So we're trying to bend over to help everybody live together. You know, Mr. Sabatino has really, he's taking a pool out that he doesn't need to take out. He's he's amending everything. He really thought the neighbors were going to be happy with this idea, but it doesn't seem like anything we do can make them happy. So we're doing the best we can. We we located the house at a better location. We located the cabana in a better location. We're replacing the pool. And we're far off the right of way. So that's all I have to say. Danny, do you have anything to say?
No, I, you know, well, one thing I had, you were talking about parking. If you look at the the survey, I have all parking in front of the pool area, plenty of parking in my area. If you look at the latest survey.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Flor, I interrupted you earlier, so please take this time now to for any response that you had.
I just, thank you. I I just, I can show you. I don't know if you can see it, but this, this is the plan that I received, which is not the plan that was up on the, you know, that the board was displaying. As you can see, it has the cabana Xed out. And and that's precisely the reason that I called Danny Sabatino on Monday this week.
All right.
Because while I did receive the the aerial survey, which showed where the cabana was located, it was not, I mean, I I honestly thought this hearing would be postponed because, you know, as I've expressed, we just need more information on what's being proposed. I mean,
With, I'm sorry to interrupt you with issues regarding the cabana, the hearing will be postponed. And it will, we will have a public hearing on specifically the cabana, because the request has changed to side yard. So you will get whatever is being introduced to us prior to that hearing, and we we're going to have a full discussion about the location of the cabana on on that specific date, which I probably will be able to give you today before we all come off of the program.
Chairman, Chairman.
And just one one final thing to Mr. Flor. I understand the the frustration with not being able to see everything before a public hearing. I do also understand from the applicant's standpoint that this is an ongoing process because the applicant is amending after after listening, at least being sensitive to comments and amending an application. The amendments may still not be acceptable, but but because they're amending the application and things take time to draw, and we we have another hearing, you're not getting them as quickly as you want to. And I understand the frustration with that, because you want to have everything before you, before you come to a proceeding such as this and speak. So we're going to do everything that we can to give you advanced notice of a hearing and to get you the documents you need to get in order to respond in in an informative way. All right, is there anyone else that wanted to add anything further?
I'd just like to respond to what Ms. Nicole said about the location of my house and the.
Yes, Mr. Rainsby.
So today I have a beautiful view of the the illegal garage that come guest house. And that is further along. It's in the same area as where the new guest house is being proposed. And so I can, it sits right in the middle of my view. I mentioned that before. I'll just say it again. If Ms. Nicole doesn't believe me, she happily have to come over to my house to take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Rainsby. Mr. Camera, I believe that I cut you off earlier also. Sir, did you have anything else to add? And I I do see you're muted, sir. So if you are speaking, I can't see your mouth or nor can I hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can, sir.
Okay, yes, getting back to this, the infrastructure, the road, that I I I think we have to have another fire chief or somebody look at what would be built on that road. Because the fire trucks would not be able to get down there. And if there were cars in different places, they definitely would not. And that that was pointed out to me by, as I said, a fire chief at one time, and it still stands. And I think we, and I I guess I'm asking you this. Do you require that you take a look at the infrastructure to see if it is enough for safety of the people that are down there in terms of fire?
Well, first, initially, I'll tell you, sir, that if there's any comment from the fire district, I would, we would be happy to take that in writing or through live presentation. With regard to the the physical infrastructure that currently exists, Mr. Reed, if you had any comment, I'd be happy to take it.
Well, these applications aren't referred to fire departments. I would suggest that because there was a house there previously, and there's going to be one potentially replacing it. There's no additional density here, so I don't see why the need would be. But again, in short, the zoning board is focused on the variance relief, not necessarily whether the infrastructure is adequate to serve these homes. Especially because it's a private right of way. It's not a town right of way. That may be something the town would be involved in, but it's a private road.
All right, I think that we've gone over most of the issues. This matter is being adjourned to a dated which will give the applicant sufficient time to notice the additional relief required concerning the cabana's location.
I I would speak, can I say something for you?
Yes, sir.
Alec was mentioning, I was talking before.
Let me, let me just step you there. Can you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, this is, this is Danny Seventeen. I didn't know. So I'm sorry that I raised my hand on the thing. Regards to parking, we added more parking. So if you look at the survey, we have parking. I have more than enough parking on my property. We put parking in front of the pool. You see the gravel driveway. So you come in in front of the house, and it goes in front of the pool deck. So I have plenty of parking for all the vehicles that will be at my house.
All right, thank you. So in terms of the date that we're adjourning to, Ms. Ricardi, do we have suggestions? So we have new notices to go out. April fourteenth. All right. Will that give you, Mr. Cole, sufficient time to get the documents that you need to get out and to to get the denial and to notice? All right.
Yes.
So so for everyone attending here and every interested party, there will be another hearing on April fourteenth. Again, it will be the holdover section of the calendar. You're quite familiar with it. Now, you've been with us twice. It's unfortunately at the end of the calendar, and I apologize for that. At that point, we will we will have the additional. Um, at that point, we will, um, we will, um, have the additional relief before us. And our conversation at that point will be limited to the, the relief that is noticed for that hearing. Because we've gone through two sessions now on what's being proposed. Prior to, um, us closing though, we do have written communication that we've received since the last hearing, which I'm going to have Ms. Ricardi read for the record.
Um, I do have a letter from Daniel Chimera, but he spoke, so I'm going to just put this in.
We'll make that part of the record. Yes.
Okay. And I have an email from, uh, Peter Cuthbert sent through Nick Flor. Um, I'm absolutely against both variances, allowing the Sabatino family to develop their property. Some years ago, the Sabatino family, without a permit, started to build a two-story, four-bedroom outbuilding over what was a small garage. We neighbors complained and a stop work order was posted by your office. It was totally ignored. We neighbors attended a zoning board meeting, which was adjourned because Mr. Sabatino's granddaughter, aged 12, began to cry when the board chairman began to speak harshly to Mr. Sabatino. The next thing we knew was that this illegal building, which was over the height limitations and also extended six feet north of their property line was erected. When I myself had tried to get approval for building a garage with a storage area above, I was informed that zoning only permitted outbuilding no higher than 14 and a half feet. Being a law-abiding citizen, I did not build it. What they are trying to do now would be detrimental to the entire neighborhood. I highly recommend that an inspector from your office should visit Tuttle Point to check out the location and size of the property in relation to what they now want to build. There is a very fragile right of way owned by Alec Rainsby and myself, which the Sabatinos actually use as a parking lot, obstructing the right of way on a regular basis. I would be happy to guide your inspector around. That's all I have.
All right. Um, with that, then I'm going to ask for, uh, the board for a motion to hold the matter over until April, I'm sorry, Ms. Ricardi, April, April 14.
So moved.
Motion second, have it made all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for attending.
Case number four of February 10th, 2021, Dara and Glenn Mayola, care of Andrew Malguanera, properties located on the northwest corner, Water Road and Tall Tree Lane, Rocky Point. Applicant requests front yard setback variance from Water Road for proposed relocation of existing shed to the front yard. Water Road not permitted.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. Thank you. There you are. Welcome back, Ms. Malguanera.
Hello.
Uh, you've previously been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. This Malguanera, the record should reflect that this matter went to public hearing, February 10th, 2021. During the process of this hearing, I think that you heard some dissatisfaction from the board. Considering the location of the shed in the front yard. Uh, I think we held for consideration of an alternate location.
Yeah. And, uh, speaking with the owner, I, I mean, if there was a alternate location that was viable, um, we would absolutely go with it. It's just, if you could see from the, the, the layout, um, this is the only true spot it can go. Um, and again, it's a corner lot. This is why, this is why we're in this situation. It's not, it's not a, uh, you know, a, a regular lot. Um, also I submitted pictures. I believe that you have that show. There's plenty of brush and trees in front of it. So, um, it is, it is covered to an extent.
Do we have anything that we were able to display this evening?
Yeah.
I, I believe we do. So explain to us what we're looking at, Mr. Malguanera, if you could.
Yeah, that's the, from the road. Um, and you have all the brush and the fencing, um, in front of, um, yeah.
Are there any other photos?
That's it.
Oh, no, you got one more. What is that?
Oh, that's another photo, right? Showing, showing the, the density. It's not just, you know, it's not, it's not as if the sheds is sitting, um, out in the open. It is, it is fairly covered.
So is the shed moved already to that location or?
It is, they moved it while constructing the pool. Um, that's fine.
So that's, that's how it would look from, from the property and you've just showed us what it would look like from the roadway. Is that, is that fair enough?
Correct.
All right. Um, thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, grant the application as presented type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, second by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Case number seven of February 10th, 2021, Patricia and Michael Carper, care of Andrew Malguanera. Properties located on the west side of Cedar Hill Road, Terminus, 108 feet north of Harbor Beach Road, Miller Place. Applicant requests lot frontage, front yard setback and rear yard variances for proposed one-family dwelling.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. I also have speakers on this case. Thank you. Mr. Malguanera, your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. The record should reflect that the board's planner reviewed this application. We have Mr. Reed here prepared to testify.
Parcels located on the north side of Harbor Beach Road, east of Oaks Drive in the Hamlet Miller Place. The applicant is proposing to erect a single-family dwelling on the 7,768, 7,658 square foot parcel with access intended via a 10-foot wide passway from Harbor Beach Road. And the property is located within the A1 zoning district, requiring a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. And while the application does not conform to certain bulk requirements of the underlying zoning, the parcel has been determined to be single and separate. With regard to the proposed access, the parcel is on a filed map known as Oak Crest, filed in 1931, and the filed map depicts a 10-foot wide passway, which is the parcel's access to Harbor Beach Road. Lots nine, 11, four, and 17, and 45 are improved and also enjoy access to the passway. Staff notes, this is the last parcel on the file map yet to be improved. And it is the opinion of staff that there are no feasible alternatives for the applicant other than the requested relief for lot frontage to pursue development of the parcel as demonstrated on the filed map. If the board finds the frontage relief to be appropriate, the other variances requested are both front and rear yard variances. And despite the fact that the front of the home faces the passway, the front yard pursuant to town code is adjacent to Harbor Beach Road. However, when situating the house as proposed, the front yard aesthetically is the 10-foot wide passway and the 18 feet would appear as side yards. Staff note same in that the single and separate ordinance for lots between 70 and 80 feet in width require a minimum 14-foot side yard and 30-foot total yard to which the application would conform. Further, the ordinance provides for a maximum 2,000 square foot dwelling on similar sized lots via 1,200 square feet and 800 square feet respectively on the first and second floors. And the application conforms to said requirements, although no second floor calculations were depicted on the survey. And should the board look favorably on the application, consideration should be given to limiting the dwelling to a maximum 2,000 square feet inclusive of garage. The application is type two action.
For the record, then those are the comments of the board's planner, Mr. Malguanera. What else did you have for us?
Yeah. So to reiterate what, uh, Chris Reed said, uh, this is a unique community in Miller Place. Very nice. Um, and as you can see from the aerial, this does conform with the neighboring lots. Um, our house is going to be no bigger than, um, than what Chris Reed, uh, pointed out. Um, this is again, part of a filed map from 1931. Um, you know, the, it's single and separate. And, um, the, the development will be, you know, exactly what the neighboring lots, uh, are. The, um, uh, then this is the last lot to be developed in this neighborhood. There's not going to be any precedent set by, by doing that. Um, and the proposed access is the only access for the lot to Harbor Beach Road. There's no feasible alternatives, as Chris Reed said, um, proposed side yard setbacks and the second floor square footage conform. So it is, um, you know, it's, we're not asking, um, for, you know, a great relief here. Um, and if the board looked favorably, um, you know, I'd appreciate it. And any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Cunha.
Mr. Malguanera, uh, can you just, um, touch on that passway that was over the, on the survey for me? So I'm just curious, is, is that a, that's a right of way to everyone else or?
Correct, correct. It's a right of way to everyone else. Everyone uses it. So it, it'd be the same as, as, as us using it as well.
Okay. And it's, and it's going over your property, it looks like.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and you have presented this to the health department. It's.
Yeah, no issue with that. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? I believe we have speakers. Mr. Vega.
Yes, we have three speaker, we have three speakers, Jessica Martinez, uh, Jack McCormick, and a William Nance.
All right. Can we promote those individuals? I may ask, what are we looking at now on the screen?
This is the submissions from Mr. Malguanera's office.
Um, Mr. Malguanera, there's a letter here to us. Like, could you describe what?
I'm sure that's, I'm not sure if we submit that letter. Um.
Anthony, can we pull that up so we can read it, please?
No, it's not, it's not from my office, I don't think.
No.
No, they all submitted from our name. Yeah.
That, whoops, that would be the neighbors directly next door.
Excuse me. I apologize. That was my fault.
No, that, that's fine. All what we're looking at is something that Ms. Ricardi is going to read for the record. So let's start, let's continue the hearing with the speakers that we have, which is, I see one, uh, two.
They also have a fourth speaker. All right. In the lawn.
I'd like to see if we can promote everyone at once. I believe that I have, I see Mr. McCormick. I see Ms. Martinez. Uh, sir, I see that you've just come on, but I don't have a name. It starts, first letter C. And, uh, is it Elaine Clark? I think I have four individuals now. Can you all unmute yourselves, please?
I believe I'm on mute.
One, two, three, and Ms. Martinez.
Yep.
Uh, I think I have everyone. Uh, one, two, I lost one person. Where are they?
And Elaine Banano. She's here.
I see Elaine. I see Ms. Martinez. It's just another, another set of tiles. Mr. McCormick is here and who is the fourth?
There should be a Mr. Nance.
Mr. Nance. All right. So I have all four of you and your videos on. I don't have the ability to see all four of you at once. I'm going to take it that your video is on. Uh, can I ask you all to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
Please raise your right hand. You saw me swear into the whole truth and nothing but truth.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Very good. Ms. Martinez, you've, you were already early and you, you, you're staring, um, I'm ready to go. So I'm going to take you first, if that's okay. I want to start with your name and address, please.
Actually, if it's okay with you.
You don't want to go first. It's fine.
On the block. I would prefer to let Jack or Elaine go first.
All right. Why don't we, I go to Mr. McCormick, sir.
Yes.
Can you accept? Yes, I can hear you. So let's start with your name and address, please.
John McCormick, M C C O R, M A C K.
Your address.
Five, five, B Harbor Beach Road, Miller Place.
Thank you, sir. And I noticed a number of the residences of five, five. It looks like it goes A through E or something like that because there were six or seven lots on the 1931 filed map that all, um, have access to the same pathway. Is that correct? Everyone's 55?
Yes. If you give me a second, I could kind of highlight that for you.
I'm going to get, then you have as many seconds as you like.
Okay. Uh, the pathway runs, uh, south to north, approximately 10 feet wide. Existing right now are four homes, Bananos, Greens, Nance, McCormick. And the proposed, uh, request for the variance, uh, is on a lot that precedes those northerly occupied homes. We all share that common driveway and it's a pathway on the map. I, we all refer to it as driveway. Uh, our, my concern is, and I think it's shared by my neighbors, is that should this variance be given to build, how are we going to maintain our informal, at our own leisure, ingress and access through that driveway to our homes? Uh, initially, the construction will require an extensive, um, excavation and tearing down, uh, cutting down a lot of trees, requiring heavy equipment per se, moving equipment, et cetera. And then you have the, uh, normal construction, which also requires equipment blocking roadways. Uh, that is one of our major concerns. Uh, and how would that be resolved if the construction does go forward? Secondly, again, if the construction does go forward, the width of the pathway has to be maintained as it exists now. It's narrow now. It cannot be reduced in size at all. And the third concern in regards to the pathway is subsequent to construction, if it's granted, how is the driveway slash pathway going to be restored to its existing condition? Because there'll be, you know, damage from heavy equipment possibly, also cutting for water lines and things of that nature. Uh, and a footnote, if I may add, Oak Crest, as we call ourselves, is an informal association. We're not chartered or anything like that. What we do is we share the maintenance of that driveway in terms of black topping and things of that nature, snow removal, and we get along wonderfully. We share all expenses relative to the easement or driveway that leads everybody down to the beach. So that's, that's my main concern.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
I want to just add one thing. Uh, I don't know how the process is done. I don't know what can be put on a permit from your perspective of your authority. But we would like certain stipulations, if, if it's allowed, I hope it is allowed, that if this is approved, those concerns are addressed. We get guaranteed egress and access guaranteed with guaranteed maintenance. As part of anybody's doing the construction. I have no, no, no observation, no opinion on the, the building itself. It doesn't affect me. It may affect some of my other neighbors. They can voice their concerns with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, so let me, in, in, in sum and substance, what I'm hearing is, um, that you, if this, uh, if, if this variance was to be approved, um, that you would expect that any damage to the roadway caused by the, the construction vehicle or the construction process be repaired by the applicant? And that you would expect this parcel, as with every other parcel sharing it, uh, to, 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 um, to participate in the costs associated with its maintenance and upkeep.
That, that is a mutual, it's up to the owner. We would like that informally, we do it informally. I mean, we can't hold anybody's feet to the fire to pay for snow removal.
Understood. Well, certainly that, that's something I'm going to put, uh, give up to the owner's representative now. And if he's, if he's aware of the applicant's position, all of, all of these parcels enjoy the right to this. And I would expect some sort of, um, cross easement agreement or whatever the, the case may be, as informal as, um, you're saying it is, to be something that, that you speak about. Understand it has nothing to do with the variance request before this board. I recognize it as a concern of yours and we will do our best to, uh, to move, um, to address it.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, just before you go to the next speaker.
Yes.
I just want to confirm with Mr. McCormick, uh, or have him confirm that there is no formal written or recorded document that requires contribution to the, for maintenance of this right of way?
No, there's nothing in form, uh, formal. There's nothing formal. It's a mutual agreement as, uh, shared by good neighbors.
Okay.
And, uh, and 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 if I I can't emphasize enough the ability of any of us to come and go when there's a heavy construction, uh, construction going on. I don't know how that can be guaranteed, but it should be guaranteed.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Burks, and thank you, uh, sir, uh, Ms. Clark.
Elaine.
Elaine, thank you. Um, I'd like to take you next. If you could start with your name and address, please.
Elaine Clark Banano, fifty-five C Harbor Beach Road, Miller Place, New York.
So C would be the adjoining on the water side?
I'm on the north side of the lot.
Yes, okay.
Just over there. Um, that would be their backyard that they're talking about, the variance. Is that correct?
No, uh, the house would face the, uh, which may ask, does your house face the pathway?
My house faces the pathway, yes.
So this one is. Yes, this one, this house would face west, same as yours.
Okay. All right. So I, so they're asking for a variance to go closer to our property?
No. The variance request is for lot frontage, because each of you do not, you don't sit on a public roadway, you have access to a public roadway from a private roadway. And then they they're asking for a front and rear yard. When you you have examples of of these types of, um, parcels, the front yard is not what you expect it to be. The front yard is not where your house is facing. Technically, under the code, the front yard is the lot line that runs parallel to Harbor Beach Road.
Okay, so.
So you would consider that your side yard, but the applicant is is requesting relief for for.
For their, for their backyard, which is the north side of their property. The north side is the ocean.
North and south, yes, from the south side.
Property is the south side of mine. There's only twelve inches from my house to the property line.
That looks like the rear property line, not the side. We 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 have the aerial up. Do you see it?
Yeah, I I'm looking at it now.
Can you tighten that up for us so we can take a little actual?
But we sent, we sent photographs to your office.
And I I do have, actually, if you can see this, I'm holding it. I have everything that you've sent.
And the photographs, okay.
You you're in your, your house is holding an eighteen-foot side yard. Is this is this you?
Mr. Chair.
But just give, bear me a second. Bear me a moment. I have, um, ma'am, I do, I have this letter dated February twenty-seven. Did you attach your survey to it? Is this the survey I'm looking at? You're holding the same side yards that is, you're holding the same setbacks that this house is proposing, eighteen feet. Oh, okay, wait a minute. I've been showing something else. All right, so I'm sorry, you attached a survey, but it's the applicant survey. You're showing us that your house was built only foot or two off of the property line.
It's it's twelve inches.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. At one point.
All right, well, in terms of, in terms of side yard setbacks, then this would be better conforming than yours is. I'm I'm certain that your house was built some.
I didn't build my house. My house was built when I bought it.
Many years ago, though. Yes. All right. So so you've made that point. What 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 else would you like?
What I'm confused about is, are they asking to be further north, closer to my property than what?
No.
The code says.
They've centered the house on the parcel. And the centering of the house, um, is allowing them eighteen feet. The code requires front and rear yards of thirty feet. So the technical request is eighteen feet with thirty feet is required, but I'll remind you that these are side, it's it's the side yards that we're talking about, because the front yard is parallel to Harbor Beach Road.
No, I I understand that. So it would really be their their backyard.
I'm not, that's a, that's an ambiguous question. It's hard for me to answer. Their backyard is going to be to the rear of their house. If the house is facing passway, it's going to be behind it, not to your side, but behind the house. That's the rear yard. When when you use the term, that's what I believe that you're asking.
Okay, so their driveway, they're going to be coming in from their driveway, from our passway, they're going to be making a right. That's they're going to have to access their house from that direction?
Just like everyone else does on the.
Okay, all right. So I'm it's usually thirty feet, you said, and they're asking for eighteen, you said? Because we never got any, any pieces of paper. We never got any.
And then you can see the proposal in the lot. The lot is the same size as yours. Actually, you see the survey, it shows your residence. You see up at the top how close you are to the lot line. That see the house that they're proposing on this lot, which is the same size as yours. Same size as your lot, they're proposing it in the center of the lot, as opposed to all the way on one side.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, they're they're also support proposing something that's actually not as deep into the property as as the neighbors. Um, and they are still maintaining a setback from passway almost identical to hers. And that's where they're facing. They're going to face the passway.
And so, man, Mr. What Mr. Cunha, you just pointed out was that, um, even the residence itself doesn't extend that deep, that as deep into the lot as yours. You can see the 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 depth of the home proposes thirty feet, whereas yours looks closer to forty-five.
Yeah, what I'm, what I was concerned with is not that where they're facing, because it it's it's their their northern end of their house and my southern end. Are they asking to be closer to my, where my, um, windows are at my house there? Because you're saying that they're centering their their home right in the center of the property, but.
Yes. At the end of the day, I think your answer, your question is, are they seeking a variance from the setback closest to my house? And the answer is yes. The code requires thirty feet, because the code considers that a rear yard.
In other words, if that was a side yard, there wouldn't be an issue, but the code looks as at that property line with you and that neighbor as a rear yard. It wouldn't have been an issue.
And understand the way the house is facing a passway, it is a side yard, again, technically not under the code. I understand that this is more of a comp, there's more complex issues here than normal. Believe me, um, it's taken, uh, uh, board members' time to address this because of the situation where the front yard is actually the north side of the of the property, of the north property line.
Okay, so there's nothing that we can do about having them be as close to my line on the north side?
Well, you want to push the house all the way to the other side?
No, I don't want to push it all the way to any side. I just, it's it's just so, it's so very, very close. I mean, my house is like basically right on the twelve inches away from it.
Yes, you must have a large, uh, uh, area on the other side of your house, because you, because of the way it was set up. No, I mean, this is what the proposal before the board, you see, there's some, there appears to be reasonable, because it's not the house meets the size requirements, meaning they're not asking for a larger house and the code would permit. The house meets the size requirements and it's being centered on the lot, and it has the same right to this passway that the other houses that are identified as fifty-five do. So I'm not sure what else I can tell you to make you feel any better.
Okay, well.
I tell you why you stay there. Let me hear what the others have to say, and if you want to, um, come back, just, uh, give me, um, just give me a signal.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cunha.
I would like to ask Mr. Reed a quick question on the filed map. Chris? Is pass, is the, is the asphalt driveway or the passway part of the original filed map, or is it on depicted on that map?
It is.
So then it is part of the filed map, so it cannot be taken away?
Uh, yeah, I know that issue did come up. Uh, it's ten feet. Um, so they're obviously going to.
The map, so it's never going to go away.
Correct.
Some of the neighbors.
The only, uh, improvements to the passway will be essentially proposing, um, a driveway to access the ten feet. But my understanding, uh, there's no proposal to enlarge it and, uh, based upon the file map, they can't.
And also planning would be the department and the inspection that would actually make sure that the the passage way was maintained and kept up during construction and then reconstructed if necessary.
Yeah, and that is a valid concern. Uh, there's not a lot of room for, um, potential, if, uh, the board look favorably on this application, for, uh, construction vehicles here. Um, and because the access is only ten feet, there could be problems if, uh, there is constructing activity as well as, um, heavy equipment impacting the the surface of the passway. Uh, I I don't know what the town can offer in that regard. You know, if it was a town roadway, we can potentially hold a bond. Uh, if there's damage to curbing or the road, but this is a private driveway, so I don't know what, if any recourse, the town has if there's any, um, problems in terms of, uh, the asphalt conditions upon construction.
My understanding is that there's recourse among those entitled to usage of it, which is with the five or six that are that have the the filed map, have it off of the filed map. I see a bunch of, I see a bunch of hands. Mr. Nance, I have not given you an opportunity to speak yet. I'd like to do that, if you can unmute yourself, sir.
Uh, sure.
You've previously been sworn. Can we have your name and address, please?
Sure, it's it's William Nance. I'm at fifty-five D Harbor Beach Road.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is a little way up the street. And actually, it's my wife, Jessica Martinez, here. We're going to try and mute appropriately so that, uh, we're not speaking over each other. I think, um, Jess, you you prepared your notes. Do you want to go ahead? And then I'll I'll come after her if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, that's fine. Ms. Martinez, welcome back.
Thank you. I tried to follow the instructions that I read.
Now, you're doing fine. You're doing fine. I know that you wanted to go less, but now now you weren't allowed, so I don't, I don't know what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've been very gracious today. I I hate to add to more, more to your plate.
No, please let us, please let us know your thoughts.
Uh, if I may, I have three general classifications of thoughts on this. Um, I think the first one is just, we have been given very little information about this. There was no notification, as you know, before the initial conversation with you, which was originally scheduled on this, on the tenth of February. Um, and subsequent to that, there was supposed to be a public notification, but that notification I've now learned was actually put on Cedar Hill Terrace across from number eight Cedar Hill Terrace, which is not anywhere near where we would see.
Yes, I I I see what you're saying. Um, the as per the code requirement, the parcel at least should have been noticed on Cedar Hill Terrace, because this parcel, the corner of it, as you can see from the map we're looking at, has access to that uh, has frontage on that public roadway. The code requires notice on a public roadway. What you're saying is that because this is passway, you didn't see, you didn't see it.
Well, moreover, I would actually argue that perhaps the sign should have been on Harbor Beach Road. And I mentioned that only because we ourselves just completed a construction. And our program came before your board a couple of years ago and.
How do we do that?
Sign on Cedar Hill Road or on on Harbor Beach Road.
Did we do okay back then?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
But it was.
I I will tell you, technically, technically, um, the code only requires, uh, the posting on Cedar Hill. What I'm happy about is that we're all here, so I got, I think, almost everyone whose number is fifty-five to attend, so the mailing must have gotten you, but, um, I can't, I can't disagree.
No, we actually did not receive any mailings.
Oh, actually, I do have your, I have your mailing. It was uh, returned to sender, unable to forward. I don't know why, but it was returned to us. I'm holding a picture of it up. I don't know if you could see.
Perfect, thank you. That's that's good to know.
We we did check at least for notice for you.
And I have to admit, that that was part of the concern that I had, um, only because, as Jack mentioned, we are an informal organization. We do not have a formal HOA the way, for example, our neighbors on Cedar Hill have. Um, we really do rely on communication from each other. And so that seemed like a little bit of a of a red flag. Um, I guess if I could add a cut my other two buckets of concerns, um, access. And we have spoken quite a bit about passageway. I recognize and I appreciate that you have answered Jack's question around whether or not you have the ability to create some sort of a mechanism that can help us preserve the structural integrity of the road after, throughout the construction and afterwards. Um, I guess my question would be to expand that. Is there a way to also, uh, guarantee the access? So that there is that, we do have that concern, because, as you can see, this does lie at the mouth of our sheer driveway. And one of the things that maybe is not visible from this map, but should be from the pictures that Barry Green has submitted, is that there is going to be an extensive degree of of digging, of 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 actually excavating this site in order to make it flat enough for construction. And that's going to be, that's going to require significant machinery. And we're a little concerned that because it's only ten feet, we are actually, um, might be losing access to not just egress and ingress into our properties, but also uh, adding the extra concern around emergency services. And I don't know if you can see it very well from here. Um, the trees are denuded, so it's a little bit easier to see. But they also sit right on the bend. So coming up from Harbor Beach Road, we have a bit of a of a curve. And that curve being right where that property is going to be excavating and and building itself out. Um, and the fact that this passway is only ten feet wide makes us concerned that any loss of width or any change of shape of that turn will actually make it harder, not just for regular large delivery vehicles and and oil trucks to get up that hill, because it is already challenging for them, but also large emergency services, uh, vehicles. So that's, it it just happens to be at a bend in the curve that any loss of width there could be significant.
I I do hear your comments. Are you referencing during the construction process or sometime after, uh, the property is developed, if it is developed?
Both. I think during the construction process, that's an immediate concern, but I would be concerned that if there is any character change in the pass passway itself, either in the shape of it or in the width of it, um, it might, I would want to make sure that that passageway is preserved, not just for small personal vehicles, but large delivery trucks.
As I understand it, and someone can correct me, um, from a legal standpoint, and I'm not, uh, let me take that back, not from a legal standpoint, because I won't speak too legally. But this is a filed map with guaranteed access to passway that is filed and documented. It can't, it can't be altered. It's it's part of a filed map. So if there is, and if there's an alteration of it that that alters its dimensions, then you collectively, as a as a right, have a a a a method to pursue to ensure that it's returned to its original integrity, as shown on that original filed map. The 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 positive aspect of that is it's it's documented on a filed map. It's not something that you're making up, and when someone turns around can be altered, uh, with some stakes. Beyond that, I can't, I can't assist you, um, in the if this, if this application was to be granted and the parcel developed, I can't, I can't guarantee there won't, that there won't be a difficulty one day with a with obstruction because of a vehicle. I think that that's where the, uh, the the collective process of cooperation that you've achieved in this neighborhood should hopefully come in and, um, resolve that to 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 everyone's satisfaction. Um, you understand that the applicant is here for for, um, for, uh, setbacks and for access, um, and and this board can't guarantee or police, um, the activity if if and when it is approved.
So if I may, since you're holding my letter in front of you instead of it being right here in front of me, um, the setbacks, as you explained to Elaine, are now clear to me. Um, the access to passway, is that the variance that you were mentioning is the the request to effectively make the front of the house the pathway facing?
So 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 technically, the lot has no, um, access to a public roadway, so the proposed lot frontage technically is zero. It doesn't exist. So they're asking for for variance relief, because the the town code requires a developed parcel to have access to a public roadway. So the request is zero, because the we're being shown, and it's been established, that the this this private passageway exists pursuant to a filed map, so that we see that it has guaranteed access to a public roadway via a private passage. So that that variance for lot frontage speaks to the fact that it has. speaks to the fact that it has zero access to a public roadway.
Otherwise, okay. If I may, having listened to the conversation earlier on total point, that the fragile right of way and the fact that they requested an inspector to come out and just confirm, since you are effectively saying that that passageway is part of the variance, do you have, do we have the ability to request?
I don't know that, I don't, what you're asking, I think what you're asking for is someone to go out and confirm the location and dimension of a private roadway, I don't know necessarily that we are capable of doing that, but it would appear to me that that's more something that your surveyor could do, or that's more of a private issue that the town wouldn't get involved in, Mr. Reed, I'll take whatever further comment you have, though.
So I agree with what the chairman had said earlier. This may be simply a function between the applicant's representative and the new homeowner and all the homeowners on this passway to police the maintenance and the width of it. I don't see how, again, the town can get involved in a private road, it's not a public road. So I, your concerns are certainly valid, and perhaps in deliberation, maybe the board and myself and the attorney can maybe provide certain conditions with the grant, but at first glance, I don't see how we can do so.
Understood, thank you, and I guess I'll yield to Will, if you have anything to add.
All right, then, Mr. Nance, this is your opportunity, what else did you want to add to the conversation?
Thanks, I think the issues about notice and perhaps access have been discussed. I wanted to just talk, speak for a moment about the site itself. I think it's hard to tell the topography from the map that is shown in front here. But from Harbor Beach Road up to where you see the second number 55, which is between the first 55 on Harbor Beach Road and the next one, the lot in question, it is a very, very steep grade. It's probably 30-plus percent grade, and then there is a hard turn to the right, which you can see very faintly in there to the rest of the driveway. And that bend, which Jessica was mentioning earlier, is right where the proposed excavation and potential driveway will be. So I think it's been discussed that perhaps, or perhaps not, the board has the ability to put conditions in there. But the rest of the homeowners along this driveway are clearly at risk of heavy equipment coming in for excavation of that fully wooded site right now, which includes from the map that I saw earlier, the survey, the addition of septic systems, and additional heavy machinery that will be needed to cut down the trees there, to clear the lot. And clearly, all of that equipment will be there. It's been mentioned that this is the sole access for all of those properties to their, to our own properties, we do have deeded access via the easement, and we all have to maintain it. But if there is an issue there, you know, we'll all be living with it for a very long time, especially if there is a connection that needs to be made to the water. So I just wanted to highlight that, I think the site is very unique characteristics, which we had to deal with ourselves in getting equipment up to the site. You know, it increased the cost of the project, it increased the expense, several experts were needed to come in, it's difficult terrain. And I wanted the board to understand that this is difficult terrain, and that spot where the lot is, is the most difficult of all of them. You know, so I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you very much.
That I had, that I wanted to bring up is, it was mentioned earlier, I don't remember by whom, that all of the other options, alternatives, had been looked at for access. And when I look at this map, I see a much wider road on Cedar Hill Terrace with an offshoot that seems to connect to the property, if you could go back to the prior map, it was not this one. The aerial, yes. Right, where number eight is, that leads almost directly to the property. And, you know, I'm not a planner, but I, and certainly the Carpers have a right to develop their property. But I thought I heard mentioned that it's important to the board that all other less intrusive options be evaluated, that would seem to potentially be one to have access to services, municipal services, water on the Cedar Hill Terrace side, where there are vastly more houses that are already supported there, there's a loop for access, there's a wider entrance, it's actually not as steep a grade from my memory, I don't go over there that often, and so I wonder if that is a possibility to have access from that side.
Mr. Cunha, yes?
I just want to address that, can we go back to that survey for a second? The problem is, is Cedar Hill Road does not, it only reaches a tiny little corner of that property, it is actually shown on the survey. That is an issue, and I also heard from one of your neighbors that Cedar Hill is also an association, that might be an issue as well. But my question to you is, you were saying, Mr. Nance, you were saying that there is a grade issue, which direction does it go in? Is it coming from the north to the south, the issue, or is it east to west, west to east or east to west?
Yeah, what, it's really both, but the way the grade goes from Harbor Beach Road, which is the lowest point, up the hill towards the lot in question, and that's where the grade is, so it's going from south to north. And then there is a hard right turn, there's actually a mirror there, because it's a blind turn. And so when you're driving up the passway, you're actually headed, I guess it's northwest, you know, facing Bridgeport, Connecticut, you can't see. And so there was a mirror that was installed by the neighbor group long before we arrived four or five years ago, so that you can see oncoming traffic. And it is often the case that two cars, you know, one car is coming out, you know, heading north to south, one car is coming in, going south to north, and so someone has to back up, and it's a, it's a log jam, it's a difficult spot. And that's exactly where the lot is, that's where the raised driveway is, that's where the heavy equipment will be, that's where the excavation will be. I also want to add one other thing, which is that, at that point, after you get over the rise around the corner, the driveway sits on, it's essentially an embankment. And so in that embankment, if you head west, drops off another four or five feet to another driveway. And there are already railroad ties and other equipment that is in there that needs to be replaced. The neighbors are getting together as a communal group to make sure that that road is paid for, that the water issues, because of the the topography of the hill are maintained. And so, you know, from our perspective, not only is, are these issues kind of closer to Harbor Beach Road, and will not affect the owners of this lot as much as they will ours, but we have no recourse to protect ourselves here. Now, maybe that's an issue the board can deal with, maybe it's not, but I did think it's worth highlighting. You know, on the other side, it would appear to me that there is a lot more optionality to deal with these issues.
Now, you're the property to the south, is that what you're telling me?
I am the property to the north, so the way, if you can go back to the aerial, please, okay, so 55 is, I've forgotten the gentleman's name, I believe it's Randy, I don't have the tax map in front of me. His access is via the offshoot to Cedar Hill Access, Cedar Hill Terrace, then there is the lot in question. Then there is Ms. Elaine, who spoke earlier, that's her lot 55C. Then there is Barry and Julie Green, that's 55E, I believe. Then there's my property with Jessica Martinez, that's 55D, that's the L-shaped lot. And then Mr. McCormick, Jack, is to the northwest.
Okay, and again, my, I saw that there's a, there's a, there's a grade issue on the property, I was looking at the survey. And there's a slight grade issue, absolutely, but I'm sure that the planning department will take that into consideration, if this board actually, and that's your recourse, is there are other departments and other experts that will be handling the rest of that part, if this board finds it, you know, and finds it acceptable, the variance acceptable, or actually approves this in any way, shape, or form. The other departments will handle the topography, they will handle all the construction parts. They will, they won't, obviously, it's a private driveway, so the other issue is, is again, you need to reach out to the owner of the parcel regarding the private driveway, but you had mentioned that
Sure, respectfully, that does seem like the board is kicking the can down the road a little bit.
No, that's, the board doesn't have the right to do anything except the variances that are before it, the variances that are before it are those variances. But I was, I was going to ask you a question, you had stated that the proper, the actual road or the access road or the driveway is actually a deeded easement. Do you have proof of that?
Yes, I do, it's on the deed to the property. I believe to all of our properties, certainly to my property, we checked it when we
If I may, I have it also.
Then it would stand to reason that all the parcels have that same issue, and this idea of the easement being an issue may be a non-issue.
If I may, if I may address that point, please?
Mr. McCormick, yes, and then I'm going to move on, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. I don't think, the, what you just said, we're not contesting their easement or challenging anybody's easement. I want to make that clear. So the issue is, the access, the width, the maintenance, from some, from a couple of our perspectives, that's it, and we're not, you know, I don't know what you meant by it's a non-issue, but the
I mean that you would not lose access to it, because if it isn't, if it isn't easement that is recorded, you won't lose access to it, and you have recourse to help or explain to other people that they need to maintain it.
No, all right, and you know what it is, I think the subsequent results of construction, we're not contesting, there should be any, we don't expect any easement problem, but it's during the course of construction, the easement, if you want to call it that, my ability on the last house to get out anytime I want in my car and go where I have to go and come home, that's my concern.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCormick, I appreciate that, you did indicate that previously, and I think that these are the same issues that arise every time there's a construction. I know that most of the houses on this passway have been there for quite some time, so these issues have not popped up recently. I see that Ms. Martinez, Mr. Nance, had some construction, so they're aware of some of the issues associated with it, these may be worse. We don't know. I want to state for the record that I do have emails from everyone that has spoken thus far. Your testimony is similar to what, in content from what we have from emails, so we are making them part of the record. And I won't read them here, but I will state that there are emails that we received.
One question about what Mr. Cuna said very quickly?
Yes, Ms. Martinez, just bear with me a moment, I just want to get to the emails from persons that sent us them, but did not speak tonight, and then I'll take that question. This is from Barry Green, 55E Harbor Beach Road, holder of case number seven, understanding that the Carper family has every right to develop their property, nevertheless, my family and all the families living on what is known as passway have serious concerns, passway could be the Carper's access road. The road itself is a quite narrow uphill road, blind corner at the top, which requires drivers to back down, should meet another driver. Most delivery trucks, such as gas and fuel oil, need to back their way up the hill, since there is no turnaround. The Carper's project is on an elevated, heavily wooded property. Construction will require, will require tree removal and grade work before actual building can even begin. My, our concerns are access to our properties during construction. Even with the foreknowledge of work to be done, there would be insufficient parking along Harbor Beach Road for all passway homeowners, especially if they are in competition with construction equipment and the vehicles of tradesmen on the job. Additionally, there is no way to escape the fact that the type and kind of construction vehicles necessary will do significant damage to an already fragile road, let alone it being dug up for water line access. This all needs to be given serious discussion during the board's deliberations. These, I actually have one, two, three, four individual, four emails from the same individual, I won't I won't read them, but I will indicate that the last email includes photographs of taken of passway sometime during the snow event, which we're making part of the record, and the board will consider. So those are in, we have, that's all the written communication, we have Ms. Martinez, I apologize, what's the question for Mr. Cunha?
No, no problem at all, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cunha, you mentioned at one point that Cedar Hill was not an option because they had an association. Is that, can you speak a little more to that?
No, I heard that there might be an association, so that would, that lot would have to actually apply to their association, I'm assuming. That's just an assumption from the information that you folks have given us. Secondly, it's not wide enough for an access through that road as a town access. So the town would not allow that as a town access as well, it's not wide enough. I'm just, I understand that number 55, as I guess Mr. Nance said, accesses through the rear, it looks like, it's very, very wooded, so I can't tell. But I'm assuming he's accessing that way, but he's accessing on his own property. It's not, all that asphalt is on his own property, it's not going over someone else's. It would seem that the other parcel that's being asked to be developed would have to access a good portion of somebody else's property in order to access Cedar, Cedar Hill Terrace, that was the point I was trying to make.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, then, I'm going to ask for just final comment from the applicant's representative.
Yeah, so understanding where everyone's coming from, clearly, the logistical issues of actually building this lot are what they are, and I could guarantee you, I will relay your message if, to my client, and I don't think, I don't believe she intends to make, you know, an issue with the drive, that's the biggest issue here. As they'll need access through this driveway, so they're, you know, I will relay, and they're going to have to, they're going to have to, you know, be as diligent at taking care of this roadway as possible. Absolutely, I mean, the fact of the matter is, this property has been in her family for, for you know, 30, 40 plus years, I believe, and this is always her intention to build on it. Unfortunately, you know, after the fact, after, after being the last lot in this neighborhood, obviously poses the logistical issues of actually construction, they will, I'm sure, be cognizant of that, and I will relay that to them as well. But other than that, you know, this
I will note that while this is a private roadway, there are other parcels that are, have entitlement to the same passway and share in the cost of maintenance and repair, and I would expect that you would communicate that to the present owner, that they should expect to become one of those participants, an equal participant in whatever that may be, so that it's not a surprise.
I believe she attends, tends to.
All right. Is there, is there anything further from board members, Mr. Burksen?
Move to close and hold.
Motion is to close and hold by Mr. Burksen. Seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all.
Thank you.
Laurie, you're muted. Oops, yeah, sorry. Laurie, is recorded, you're still muted. Would you like me to read it? Mr. DeChant, you're muted as well.
Okay, Casey Erdman, 51 Pullman Oak Road, Blue Point, property is located on the northeast corner, Humphrey Road and Pullman Oak Road, Blue Point. Applicant requests front yard setback variances from both streets and rear yard variance for proposed two-story residence addition. Front yard setback variance Front yard setback variance from Pomanoke Road for proposed covered porch. Permission for proposed conversion of garage to habitable space. Rear inside yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool. Permission for rear yard lot coverage to exceed twenty-five percent permitted, twenty-eight percent.
Mr. Vega, do we have a speaker? Yes.
Yes, Christopher Ang for the app.
Mr. Ang, I can see you. Are you able to hear us, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Let's, um, ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney so we can have you sworn in.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, sir. Your appearance for the record, please.
I am Chris Ang, uh, representative for the, uh, for the owner. Ninety-three Main Street, West Sable, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Ang. Are you, um, architect? Uh, how, what, how are you representing the owner?
Uh, I'm, I'm an architect.
Thank you, sir. What, um, what is your presentation here? The board is generally familiar with the application. We see that there's a a home with a garage that you're proposing, uh, through this on behalf of the applicant to convert and then add another garage addition with living space above. Is that generally what you're doing, what you're proposing?
That's correct. And, and yeah, in, um, yeah, in a hole, that's, that's what we're doing. We're also proposing a front porch and a rear porch.
All right, and, and we're displaying now the survey, which should show for the record. And, uh, not at a, uh, a common shaped parcel, more of an L-shaped parcel. The existing house sat on the deepest part, um, and the additions and the conversions you're proposing are in, are in more the shallow part where there's a little, uh, rear yard.
That's correct.
All right. So talk to us about the, the, the application.
The, the, we're trying to maintain basically the setbacks that are on the property. The, we're not trying to increase any of the, you know, the front yard setbacks or the rear yard setbacks. Uh, the rear yard, uh, if we look at the, um, the corner of the existing house, uh, right up against the existing rear yard, that's ten point nine. Uh, we're trying to keep our, um, our new um, two-story, um, extension at fifteen feet. And also on the side yards and the second front yards, we're really trying to, um, trying to be sensitive to, to this, to the, to the required setbacks. And then as far as the, uh, the pool setback and the the variance that we're seeking as far as the rear yard occupancy, it's the, the rear yard is a little bit unique here just because of the shape. So, um, we feel like anything we put back there, we're gonna be, uh, encroaching on that, 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 um, that percentage for the, for the rear yard. It's just a, a kind of like a unique property for setbacks. But we tried to, try to maintain as much of the setbacks as we could and be as sensitive as we could to the, to the, you know, to the surrounding neighborhood. And, um, try to keep in character with, uh, with everything around, around it. We also, um, took some photographs of some, um, some houses that are in close proximity to this house. And, uh, we just felt like they were a similar size. They did not have the unique property that we have, so like the setbacks are not, not the same as what we're asking for, but the, the size of the houses, I felt, were similar to what we're asking for.
Talk to us about, as proposed, what the size of the house is. Give us, please, um, the dimensions in length and width initially, and then maybe talk to us about square footage.
Sure, um, the length, um, I think it's just shy of a hundred feet long. The width, we're gonna keep the same or shy of what the width is, uh, since we really can't go front to back, we, we, you know, the only place we could do go was the, the length of the house.
So a hundred feet is pretty, uh, pretty long, and from this board's perspective, as we've looked at the homes over the years. We see the proposal here. Are you saying that you, you have photographs of other houses that are a hundred feet or, or?
Uh, I don't think they're a hundred feet, but I'd like to point out that somebody's houses can detach the garage or attach the garage not to have the hundred feet. Included that in that hundred feet is thirty-four linear feet of, uh, the mudroom and the garage. So if we take that out, I, I feel like we're within the, you know, the, the, the width of those houses.
But from a streetscape, that's what you're looking at. You're looking at a hundred feet left to right of this house on Palm, Pomanoke Road. And of the houses that you say, you think that you think closely compared to the width. Well, well, I'll continue with that question. Of the houses that you say closely compared to the width, are you able to describe what the, the setbacks are? And I think the most significant setback that you're proposing to us is this rear yard setback of habitable space with, uh, so, so do any of them come near the, the rear yard setbacks that you're proposing here?
There was, there was not a property that I could have found or that I did find that would have had this situation that the rear yard is actually, you know, um, this close to the corner of the property.
All right. I, I do understand, um, the, the, what you're dealing with in terms of the shape of the parcel. But in developing it originally, I do note that the, the living space of this dwelling, primarily except for a foot or two at the end of the house, was in, was, was built into the deep side of the parcel, which gave it a conforming rear yard.
The, the rear yard existing is at ten point nine.
Yes, but that's for the last two feet of the house. I'm talking about the primary, primarily the, the habitable portion of the house. If it was forty-two feet long, forty feet of it had a rear yard of, uh, conforming or better. And it was just that two-foot section that was ten point nine. What the proposal does, at the same time, it's creating a hundred-foot long houses, and now it's creating habitable, habitable space with a rear yard of the same ten feet, or maybe is it longer? Is it?
Ten point nine feet existing, we're proposing fifteen feet.
Right. So, so what's, talk to us about the conformity of a fifteen-foot rear yard for habitable space. I, I don't think you're gonna find a lot, and I understand it has something to do with the shape of the lot, but it also has something to do with the sheer size of what's being proposed.
No, I understand that, um, the, you know, the existing house where, where the bulk of the house is, you're correct. That, you know, we can maintain this, the rear yard setback very easily. The, we, as far as can, you know, as far as building on the house, we don't, I, I, you know, we really don't have other places to propose an extension on this house.
Talk to me about, um, first, the square footage as proposed of the dwelling.
Sure. Uh, the first floor, um, let me just actually, let me get to my notes. I'm sorry. The first floor existing is, um, a thousand twenty-eight. Um, we're proposing, um, around eight hundred square feet of additional living space. Um, we're also proposing, um, probably around five hundred square feet of garage as well. And with that, we're actually proposing about two hundred and fifty square feet of rear decks and um, probably around, you know, three hundred and fifty square feet of a front porch.
And talk to me about the second story, um, total square footage as per.
Total square footage of the second story is gonna be about the same size as what we're proposing the garage. It's gonna be less because we're actually coming back a little bit, so I would say the second story is gonna be, uh, under five hundred, five, four hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, no, that's not what I asked you, um, just as proposed in total. Because you're having, you're suggesting living space over the garage, so it's going to be more than the first story if we're not including the garage space in the first story. Because you have a second story over the garage, you have a second story over the middle addition, and then the house has a second story. So in total, the proposed square footage on the second floor would be what?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. That is gonna be around a thousand square feet.
It's hard for me to believe that it's gonna be the same because part of the first floor is garage space that you, you're not using, um, in your calculations. And you told me the first story was, was, uh, is gonna be closer to nineteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, because, um, we're converting the existing garage. So, um, and then we're building a garage, so that garage, we're not counting that as living space.
So that's why the first story should be less than the second story.
Correct.
All right. So what, what is the second story then, in total?
Uh, it's good, um, uh, it's about a thousand square feet on the second story.
Well, I, I, I thought that I heard you say you had a thousand twenty-eight existing and you were adding eight hundred, so you're between eighteen and nineteen hundred square feet plus a garage. So if you're eighteen or nineteen hundred square feet on the first floor plus a garage, then you're going to be higher on the second floor, and I'm not sure why.
Proposed, are you, I'm sorry.
As proposed, yes, in total, as proposed in total.
I'm just giving you just the proposed. If it's in total, we're looking at a thousand plus eleven hundred, so twenty-one hundred, sorry.
Twenty-one hundred and about nineteen, so this will be close to a four thousand square foot house.
Correct.
Why, the purpose of the additions is what?
Uh, they, they just, they have a very large family, so they're looking for a lot more space.
So the existing house has how many bedrooms?
Uh, the existing house has one, two, three, and we're proposing two more bedrooms.
So it will be a total of five, and, um, to do that, you have, uh, it was it, then bedroom over the garage and bedroom over the converted garage?
Correct.
Um, and in terms of, you said there's no alternate locations. Um, I'm looking at this area for posed covered porch. Is that not a feasible location for an addition that would include bedrooms?
That's a good question.
I, I mean, putting aside what the applicant would, was, is asking for. I mean, we, we can agree that an area behind the house, which would hold, uh, you're showing us at least a forty-five foot setback, is one of the areas where, um, where that, where these bedrooms or this addition could go.
Yes, you're correct. We were trying, we were trying to, or, um, for the, I guess the, um, trying to centralize all the construction in one area, but I understand what you're saying. We're trying, you know, we could actually build the, the livable area off the back and then the, uh, the garage off of the side, I understand what you're saying.
All right, Mr. Ang. I want to thank you for answering my questions. Are there, is there anything further from the board member, from board members? Is there anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have no speakers.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask the board for motion to close and hold.
So moved.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would.
Case number ten of February tenth, two thousand twenty-one, Ahmad Chowdhury, care of Tracy's permits. Eighty Terry Street, Patchogue Properties located on the South Side Ryder Place. One hundred and twenty feet east of Fowler Avenue, Lake Rock, Oklahoma. Applicant requests minimum side yard variance for proposed one-story residence addition. Attaching existing detached garage converted to habitable space without a permit to the dwelling, creating entire first floor area exceeding the fifteen hundred square feet permitted, fifteen hundred and fifty square feet is requested.
Mr. Chair, I have Tracy Rivera for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Ms. Rivera. Hello, good to see you. I think we adjourned to earlier cases today.
Yes, I, I was listening, so I got the new dates. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get, just ask you to give your attention to Mr. Doyle to be sworn.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Your appearance for the record, please.
Tracy Rivera, Tracy's permits, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York, one one seven seven two. Um, I'll be, I'll, I'll be as quick as possible because it is late and I, I know everyone wants to kind of get finished. First off, I'd like to.
Good. I just wanted you to get to the, um.
I got you. I got you. So first thing we're gonna do is amend the application to request an eight-foot side yard instead of a four-point one.
Does the board have that motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On the revised, uh, amended application, what would you like to tell us?
Um, the owners have owned, owned it since the early two thousands. As it, uh, exists right now, they were paid a visit by Inspector Brian Toehoe from the Law Department prior to COVID that they needed to obtain a permit for their existing finished garage. In the garage, the garage has a full bathroom, a sink area, and one open area. It does appear to me that it was looked at as a, um, a separate dwelling, um, compared to the actual principal dwelling. Once the application goes back before the building department, we will need to, uh, obtain a building permit for a house rental because the owners do not reside there. We are looking to propose an application of a seven by fifteen addition to attach the main dwelling to the attached garage, which we will now be altering to have an eight-foot side yard setback. Um, it's currently a C-zone parcel. Uh, we're eighty by a hundred, um, bum, 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 bum. I submitted pictures and I submitted also, I'm sorry, let me just grab the papers, um, a grant that was granted before the board for, um, uh, eight, yeah, eight Ryder, which is directly across the street. If you scan through the pictures, could you scan through those, Anthony, real quick? I'm sorry. Anyway, the application that was before the board, eight Ryder, was on ten fourteen eighty-seven, case number twenty-five. And that was underneath, uh, BA two-three-seven-seven-nine-two. I would just like to stop at the one, um, with the yellow Hummer, that one. Back up. I'm sorry. Thank you. That is the property directly across the street. That is the application that was back before the board, back in eighty-seven. It was granted with an eight-foot side yard setback for an attached garage and a second story addition. That was application number twenty-nine. So we're looking to be conforming, cut back the garage, um, and, um, that's it. And there's also, I think, twenty-six Carlson, which is around the corner, which has an eight and a half side yard setback. So we're not making a precedent. We're, um, just looking to conform. So any questions the board may have?
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Yes.
Tracy, uh, okay, uh, Anthony, can we go back to the survey, please? And Tracy, uh, question on the garage. So they're going to, they're going to actually cut this garage four feet, cut four feet off the garage, basically?
Yes, it was either that or they were stripping it back to a garage and having no choice on whatever they were doing, so.
Okay, so by, so by cutting it back four feet, um, they're going to take a garage that has been converted, keep it as converted space, if I'm getting this correct, and enclosed, was that, that wasn't a breezeway or was it a breezeway at one time?
It was, it, there was nothing there.
Okay, so they're going to enclose it and attach it to the house where the oil tank is?
Correct.
Okay, and then this becomes all one resident. Now what's, now, if you can tell me the reasoning for it, if you don't mind, but.
They wanted to, they, they, originally, they wanted to obviously keep the four-point one side yard setback, and I told them that's not gonna happen. The board is not going to look favorable upon that. So instead of completely demoing it or taking it out and gutting it, they still wanted to try to keep the habitable space because the house is kind of small.
Okay, it, it, it looks a little small. Um, it is two-story though, and how does it compare in size to the other houses in the neighborhood? Once it's, uh, converted and the garage is added to the house?
More than conforming. That's why, uh, the, one of the pictures that is submitted was the one with the yellow Hummer, which is directly across the street, that the board granted an application very similar to this.
And that one, actually, you said had a second story addition.
Yes, it's actually larger than ours, right there. Yep.
Is this, oh, this is the survey. You obtained a survey for the one across the street.
Yeah, and, and there's actually a copy, I believe, of the CO, which has the BZA grant number on it, which was BA two-three-seven-seven-nine-two, which was, yeah.
All right.
Case number twenty-nine back in eighty-seven.
Very good. And you had mentioned that they're, they don't live there and they're going to be applying for a rental permit. Is that correct?
Yes, I've already instructed them of that. They originally tried to, Brian, Inspector Toehoe told them that they can apply for this conversion on the garage on their own, and once they realized what they were actually getting themselves into, and I visited him at the site, I told him the only way this parcel is being brought into compliance is if they completed to the end, it would have to get a house rental as well.
Okay, and so they, and you said it was going to be used seasonal, so is the house rental?
Oh, no, never season. No, no, there's somebody living there. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I maybe, I just heard. All right, um, so the to- total area is going to be fifteen hundred and fifty square feet, so you're asking for fifteen?
Yeah. Actually, it's gonna be less, because when we did fifteen fifty, that was before the garage was gonna be cut back four feet by like twenty-five. So it'll be underneath the fifteen hundred square feet, which I believe is permitted. That's why it's in parentheses on the, um, application.
Actually, I believe that we could further amend the application, maybe?
Yes, that's what I was.
Perfect, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Um, so are you asking the board to, for, for the motion to amend the application by deleting the request for first floor area exceeding fifteen hundred square feet?
Correct.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Berksen, second by Mr. Kuna, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think I've asked enough questions.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for picking up on that.
Anything further from the board? Do we have any speakers on the application?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any speakers.
Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as amended twice. Type two action. And do we need to put a rental permit caveat in there? Mr. Chair.
It's, it's an interesting scenario because I think what the applicant is proposing is to maintain it's two separate living areas because of they're adding something in the middle and that looks okay. But the fact is, if they don't live there, it's one that needs to be subject to a rental permit and it's a single rental permit for the entire dwelling, not two separate living spaces. Ms. Rivera, you're familiar with that.
Oh, absolutely. I, I actually instructed them of that.
Very good. So, um, so it would need to be subject to the applicant obtaining a rental permit within a reasonable time period. Mr. Kuna, you could define that if you'd like.
Mr. Chair, six months?
That's fine.
Would that be acceptable, Tracy?
If not, we'll have to come back for an extension because they are going to have to cut back the garage and build a little bit and that can be costly and timely. So yes, if we have to, we'll come back to the board for an extension on that. But yes.
Okay. So granted, as amended, subject to a rental permit obtained within six months.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuna, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And this, the, again, the motion will be for a, a rental permit, not a accessory apartment permit.
Oh, absolutely.
Be a house rental permit. All right. Thank you very much.
One dwelling. Thank you.
Case number twenty-four of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, Sean and Stacy Katerly, care of Tracy's permits. Properties located on the west side of Harvey Lane, ninety-nine feet north of Wendy Lane, Ronkonkoma. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair of Tracy Rivera for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. You're still with us. You've previously been sworn your appearance for this application.
Tracy Rivera, Tracy's permits, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York, one, one, seven, seven, two.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Interestingly, you're seeking relief for a pool and it looks like you drew it in by hand, but you picked very specific setbacks. Eleven point seven and twelve point one. So talk to us about how you got those.
Yes. So, um, I was, I don't know if you can see this. I'm going to hold it up. I probably should have scanned it over and I'm sorry. But I was given a plot plan by the pool designer on exactly where it was going to be and what the exact setbacks were. I don't know if you can actually see that. I'm sorry. So that's why I received the dimensions. If you look at the, the closest corner of the pool to the closest corner of the house, there will be a ten-foot setback between the two of them, which therefore gives us that side yard relief of eleven point seven requests and the twelve point one on the rear. I did express to Mr. and Mrs. Curley that it would be in their best interest to basically have a surveyor stake it out and put out where the exact dimensions are going to need to be. So we don't have to come back before the board. I did.
I do have, I do have some issue with the board attempting to impose a setback of eleven point seven feet. I think that creates problems. I think what you should be here for is twelve-foot rear, twelve-foot side and, and have the bill to build.
Okay, that's, that's what you want, Mr. DeChance, and that's what you get.
To me, that looks reasonable. I, I've never seen a request for a point one inch or point seven inches. And I think.
I was just following the plot plan.
I understand that. Is there anything further from the board on the application? All right. If we have no speakers, I'm going to move that the application be granted for a twelve-foot rear, twelve-foot side for proposed pool.
Perfect. Thank you.
Seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I believe, and I don't want to say too soon.
Yes.
That that would be, that would be it. So with the approval of all of you, I suggest that we can go directly to executive session.
Have a nice evening. Be safe. Thank you.
All right. Then is there a motion to resume the hearing?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Board members turning to today's worksheet, page number eleven. Case number sixteen of July one, two thousand twenty, the name of her, Bay, Baynan, says a whatever motion.
Yes, sure. I'd like to grant the application type two is presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Kuna, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries to page twelve. Case twenty-one of February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, in the name of Mercy Center Ministries Incorporated is a board of emotion.
Yes, sure. I'd like to grant the application type two presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Lindsay, second by Mr. Kuna, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to page fourteen. Case number seven of February tenth, two thousand twenty-one, in the name of Patricia and Michael Copper. The chair would move to grant the application as a type two action with standard residential mitigation measures. Maximum square footage shall be two thousand square feet for the dwelling inclusive of the garage.
Second.
Second by Mr. Berksen, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, turning to page seventeen. Under request for grant extension, case twenty of April eighteen, two thousand eighteen, the name of Salvador Aguirre, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of one thirty nineteen is extended for a period of six months to expire seven thirty twenty-one.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries on the same page, request for grant extension. Case fifty-three of January thirty, two thousand nineteen, in the name of Patricia Jack Goddick, does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of one thirty nineteen, to a period of six months to expire seven thirty twenty-one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finally, at the bottom of the page, case fifty-four of January thirty, two thousand eighteen, in the same name, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of one thirty nineteen is extended for a period of six months to expire seven thirty twenty-one.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to page eighteen, case number seven of September five, two thousand eighteen, in the name of Marie Russo, does a board of emotion.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of nine, five, eighteen is extended for a second six-month period to expire nine, five, twenty-one, final extension.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries under extension of time to file covenants. Cases eight through eleven of March twenty-five, two thousand twenty, in the name of the estate of Elizabeth McDermott, does the board have a motion?
Yeah. There, time to file covenant is extended for a period of three months from date of letter.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Under modification of motion, case, page number nineteen, case forty-one of October three, two thousand eighteen, in the name of Jonathan Eck, does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of ten, three, eighteen is modified to reflect approval for a twenty-six by twelve detached shed instead of a detached garage. Remaining conditions as originally approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kuna, second by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries on the same page, case one and two of October twenty-one, two thousand twenty, in the name of Campo Brothers Associates LLC, does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, remove, I move to reopen for hearing on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Mr. Kuna, second by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? The opposed? Motion carries under request to reinstate the calendar, case forty-one of April tenth, two thousand nineteen, in the name of Dennis Bavino, does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is to be heard, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Mr. Lazaru.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Director will reflect that Mr. Kuna's recused, motion carries. Six in favor with one recusal. Finally, board members, no, not finally, under permission to reapply, page number twenty, cases fourteen through sixteen, the name of Rudolph Walls, does a board of emotion.
Chairman, I move to allow, a motion to allow the applicant to file a two-lot land division.
Motion by Mr. Berksen. Second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Finally, board members to page twenty-one, case seventeen of January thirteen, two thousand twenty-one, in the name of Charles and Christina Davis, does a board of emotion.
Yes, for sure. Granted, as presented, type two action.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Berksen, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with that. Does the board have a motion to adjourn?
Recuse.
I apologize. That, that last motion for Charles and Christina Davis, I didn't hear Mr. Kuna recused, motion carries.
Chair abstains.
And I abstained. Motion carries five in favor with one abstention and one recusal. That being said, and at nine PM, does a board of emotion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second ever made, all in favor? Motion carries, see you all very soon.